Hello and welcome back to the committee of the whole for Tuesday, December fourteenth. I'm councillor Armin Hefrich and I'll be chairing this meeting. We're on to item four one, the Brennan Park Fields and Lands Master Plan and.
Good morning, Baron Council. My name is Deb Guest and I'm the acting director of Recreation Services here at the District of Swamish. I'm joined by Sandra Basago, Community Planner, and Dan Pageley, General Manager of Services. I would like to open up with some opening remarks before trying to get over to Basago for taking counsel through the process. So staff are here today to present the Brennan Park Fields and Lands Master Plan, which much like the land and amenities that reside now was built with for with the community for the future. The following flexible blueprint for the future assigns land use, thereby empowering breaks in our community in a way that allows them to plan for future activities while coordinating the other plans such as the real estate and facilities master plan, or master. With council's feedback from May, fulsomely contemplated the stakeholders, staff are seeking endorsement today. We will now have Community Planner Sandra Basago take us through the process, staff to the stakeholders to get us through today. Let's start with an outline slide here. It's a two-part presentation. I'll focus to part A. Objectives of tape and education process that we undertook. So high level council. Two key or objectives for today. Here's our torchy new council. Back in eighteen twenty five, when you first. Sent the other council. And senior door thing. So those overall objectives. But we also wanted to highlight the objectives of the plan. To present. Clarify land assignments and bold and piece the bottom. That is most important, my is that this document able to empower user groups to fundraise and coordinate. Oh, yes. Yes. So the objective of the plan then is to clarify land assignments, but more importantly, to enable user groups to continue and start in their fundraising efforts. So they can also support each other. This will help their facilities and improving their equipment needs and the brand of apartment. So these are the two broad objectives for today. This presentation. He just went over, I give a very high level overview of the engagement process. Many of you, especially those who may be watching and having been part of the journey, they know that this process for engagement and the Brennan Park Fields and Lands Master Planning started back in twenty eighteen. With extensive stakeholder community engagement through meetings, open houses, and also community survey. Also saw the product of that work out today this year and had feedback. So this fall, we need to further engagement to check with user groups. Does the plan still ring true? And there were some key pieces of feedback from council that we wanted to get the feedback on. So I will place some puzzle pieces here from the actual plan. It's important to note that the plan is emphasizing that all the pieces of the community's activities and desires and recreation, they come together in this plan. That's the idea here. So we held three stakeholder meetings with offering basically the same format across three sessions to accommodate user groups because they're busy. And then it's important to know is all input, all dialogue to be prepared when that informed this revised version of the plan. So I'll present now some of the high level outcomes from stable and feedback. This one was a key point noted that's important. Skateboarding originally wasn't really noted in the plan. It was there in text, but it wasn't there visually. So what we did was highlight that, as you can see here, the blue line. The blue line was the center of the map. Now, basically, we've highlighted that the skate park is for beginners. Inside, we improved expanded for that purpose. Child care, childcare space was also an important issue. It was highlighted in the plan at that time. So what we did is following provincial guidelines and farthest for coverage and fencing. But ultimately, where would it go in the plan? So visually, what we did is presented to stakeholders and I should say that stakeholders included internal staff as well. So that I might have left that out. It's important to know that we spoke with operations, with engineering, planning, environment. Parts to identify where could and stakeholders, where could that temporary childcare space go? So we identified two potential options. Again, noting that these are placeholders and that this is a high level plan. Options can be moved, but there was an opportunity to put one childcare temporary modular in the center area. But the need for the big kid X area, most people know that area, and over here in the white. Polygone that you see, this would be the future expansion of the Brennan Park Field Facility. And in the northwest corner, there's not, right now, there's a field there. There's not opportunity to put another childcare option. And of course, in the facility itself, in the future, it will be a long-term childcare center, and that's just built in the bubble at the bottom. So in summary, two potential options for a temporary childcare facility and in the future, there'll be a long-term training structure. Another topic that was raised was this northern ball field area where the playground and the play zone is seen cramped. There's a lot going on. There was reports. We did take this to stakeholders and the outcome was the ball fields are very important. They're very particular, which one of these ball field five in the north. Ball field six even to the south of Brennan Park Facility. They're important. Let them stay and therefore nothing is changing at this, especially at this time, the outcome is no change and in the play zone, we just, the only change you see, we didn't have the original plan for May was that we just structured the polygon to sit over the tree zone there. Another change we made was we brought in the playground, which was sitting outside the play zone, brought it in so it could be a continuous space for playing, picnic, resting. Arts and culture. That was another question that was asked, how does this fit in the park? And the plan does contemplate arts, culture, heritage, and it also fits with the arts, culture, and heritage strategy to incorporate to suspect Brennan Park. Events based campground. So campground topic with a role expected made. And there were some questions here. Is it possible to keep it in the location that it is? What are the impacts of moving it relative to what's what else is available? And in through the agent, we identified that, and this sits with where the plan was originally, that it the land assignment to be in that flood zone B area where it's to be more flexible and it would be targeted to support events. And this slide just is to show that we are new to now acknowledge floodway management zoning in Brennan Park as part of your future about the assignment. So that in the A zone, the blue zone are where structures, buildings are safe to be built to. And the B zone is a little bit more of a itty zone. However, building structures can be built where they need to be open, open in size or oriented such that if there was flood issue that waters can flow through. And the C zone is a more environmental zone. This is where no structures can be built other than the house trails. You'll see that. So in this slide, so this is a composite slide, lots of colors here. It's presenting, I guess, the future dream of what Brennan Park could be. Again, thinking of it as a land assignment, a book brand. Where could the pieces fit? So this is a start. Really, there are changes here other than I just have a few notes here. First, I should explain that it's multi-colors. Sharkshrew's green. So the dog park is an example of that green there. That is a short term, so the next, in the next five years. The green, the fully green, let's call it, that's, you see on the map, is the next five to 10 years. And anything that's blue would be go for 10 years plus. Let's say, the fifteen year break. And just a few points here. It was mentioned to move the washroom that was originally closer to longer sports on the north corner, northwest corner of longer sports to move it closer to the active transportation trail. So I spoke with operations and staff, engineering, we all identified this, there was an opportunity to move it. So the washroom was moved over. And as well. It was noted Henderson Field originally was designed, dotted by over in the sub end of the park and we added that it is a future research area. And also to note here, I did mention earlier that facilities, we highlighted more white to show that it is a place that would be a future hub for recreation, for wellness and childcare. And other feedback from stakeholders, we heard was that below the what, I guess we can focus on the longer sports area, that remains unchanged and that discussed that area with its handling to raise will not be compromised. And in the May twenty fifth session, it was brought up that it's little bit unknown, the circulation planning from the longer sports area and even in the northern area. And so one of those future processes that will go with this plan is taking a traffic flow both for pedestrian and active path and vehicle movement around and in and around the park. And that will help everybody else who works for it today as well. So in all, we felt that we addressed most all of council's concerns. There were a few that remain not so much outstanding, but require future discussion and planning. So the play zone, the location could be reassessed or adjusted, but currently there's at least there's a placeholder and it would be very workable with some land changes there. Pickleball is another area that requires some location assessment and then, as I mentioned, active and vehicle transportation. So far for the future. And that's part of post-master plan. It's part of your detailed planning. Thank you, Mrs. Basago. With council's feedback fulsomely contemplated from May twenty fifth, the community and the stakeholders have a blueprint, which again will empower groups in ways to help them plan for their future activities. With staff, with that, staff are asking for the following endorsement. That the District Swamish endorsed the Brennan Park Fields and Lands Master Plan, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Where did council, I see councillor Race, councillor Race, did he saw?
Thank you. Just, I'm curious about the bike skills mark, which shows up. And I'm looking at slightly different pictures that were on in our report. The short-term goal, one to five years, shows the bike skills are more or less where it is now, next to the parking lot, Brennan Park. But the five to ten over the page does not show it. I'm wondering what the intent is with that particular.
For Chair, the intent is that it is acknowledged in the plan as an amenity with an opportunity to earn amenity that requires upgrade and renovation. And so it is contemplated in one to five years, but that it would reside in in approximately timeframe from one to fifteen years, given that that parcel of land is within the A. So floodway, therefore buildable area. So once, once the community aspirations for the Brennan Park facility had been maximized, that that was the next available area to to consider for facilities and amenities on the overall parcel of Brennan Park Fields.
But I didn't see where it might be relocated to. And the other thing is, we're getting a presentation tonight from Sorka about a significant upgrade that they're proposing. Is that sort of intended to be in a sort of one to five year use period or or should they be thinking about upgrading a different site?
In speaking with Sorka over the past number of days, the renovation proposal that they have listed would be for a renovation for an idea of approximately fifteen years. So that's still, that resides within the scope of the fields.
Do we have any idea where it might be after that?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Councillor Finch.
Thanks, Chair. And I want to focus in on road realignments for a second. The evolution of the road realignments has resulted in less information landing in this version of the plan compared to some of the early stuff like so. And it was mentioned of increased visibility off the highway and off ramp directly to Centennial Way. So wondering what is the thinking in going with less detail on road realignment with this version?
Yes, there was a blue line in the northern area there, but when we engaged with staff, we determined that it was, it was actually a very fuzzy placeholder. There wasn't, it didn't even, it wasn't really shaped accordingly. So we thought, let's, let's take it off. Be very specific that this planning does need to happen and involve the province as well. And so therefore, we left it off, but it's, but it is still there. It is still a task.
Okay. And so then that has me wondering, is staff thinking of repurposing, reclaiming, eliminating that existing roadway off of the highway that goes in between the tennis courts and field five?
So this would be in discussion with the province. At the moment, there were lots of great ideas.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I have councillor Stoner followed by Anderson and Penningill.
Thank you, through the Chair. I'm just curious about the campground. So I appreciate that it needs to be relocated. I understand that. But I'm wondering if staff can speak a little bit to the rationale for maintaining it exclusively to support camping or parking for events as opposed to maintaining it as like a low cost, low infrastructure campground?
Thank you for the question, councillor Stoner. I'm going to have General Manager Dan Pageley in this question.
Through the Chair, the councillor Stoner, in regards to the second part of the question. The current campsite plan right now is event-based and as far as looking at a provision regarding overnight camping, that was not in the scope of the of the current campsite. There is a subcommittee that's tasked to look at additional low amenity campsites in and around the district and we are working with the province to explore more campsite opportunities, but it's not part of the Brennan Park Lands and Master Plan. The campsite currently is scoped to be event-based.
May I ask or press further as to why that is? We currently have a low-cost amenity campground at Brennan Park and will be relocating it to a, and ideally fitting it out to a level that would be able to support events. So why would we not pursue some level of cost recovery by renting it out at times when it's not being used for events?
Through the Chair, staff have contemplated that idea and it's currently not in the operational budget for twenty twenty-two as far as staffing and managing it in that particular scope. We could look at that down the road, but in the upcoming year, it's positioned for event-based campsite and that's within the operating budget for twenty twenty-two.
All right. So in the context of the Brennan Park, Brennan Park Fields and Lands Master Plan, which is a little bit of a longer term strategy. There isn't necessarily any operational reasons why we wouldn't be able to put in some language that would consider that campground space to be more than just event space. Or is there an operational requirement that would limit us or a physical requirement of that space that would limit us from it being event-based versus low-cost camping?
Through the Chair, thank you councillor Stoner for that further question. It certainly can be considered in the future of Lance's master plan. And if it was to be operationalized, we would have to bring that forward to council with a proper budget and so forth.
Thank you for that clarification. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I have councillor Anderson, Penningill, and Elliot.
Thank you. During the recent weeks, the issue of drainage in this area is quite visible. It's easy to experience. There is a pot of water in a corner of the over sports arena and a body of water in the other corner. The whole place is quite challenged for drainage. And my question is, well, first of all, I'll observe that, you know, it has to be an issue and a constraint for locating facilities, building new facilities, significant costs to fix this. I'm aware of the district staff, Mr. Dawson has been actively engaged in trying to solve problems there. But this issue arises for lease negotiations and for lease improvements and for general strategy as to who pays for what and where. So my question is, has staff given consideration to the issue of drainage and drainage solutions as a general issue for the whole precinct? It seems to be a very significant constraint and a future factor for lease improvements and making arrangements for who pays and and it's just such a significant issue and especially with the raising of the lands for new parking facilities and other facilities, it has impacted other areas of the area of the park and not least the campground. Last year, we closed the campground largely for drainage reasons. So wonder if staff could comment on this very large factor of ground conditions and there's going to be significant costs to address in various parts of Brennan Park.
Well, first of all, what's in the topic of the nature process that we undertook, but internally, it would be included as part of the operational aspect of Brennan Park. And hence the floodway mapping that was undertaken through the map and the plan here. And if I may add, this master plan is about land assignments. And so councillor Anderson, very important point, staff would foresee that being addressed in future land agreement processes that staff would, staff and council would undertake with the community groups looking at advancing their work based on these legislations.
Thank you. As a follow-up question, Chair, I'd like to ask one of the organizations, one of the tenants that is hoping to, has hoped for a long time to engage in lease negotiations with the district is the Swamish Development Sports Association. And it is quite apparent from their correspondence and concerns expressed over some time that there are many limbo and the plan does state the wording, it has the words, is encouraged to identify these on a consolidated parcel. Now, there has been some discussion of their use of the parking lot for logistics, the laydown area for transport trucks and machines. But there's also other areas of the southern area that are outside of the placeholder in the medium term rules there now that are used for processing and storage and camping and a tent for training facility. So my question is, for our purposes, council is going to endorse a plan, is asked to endorse a plan, but to what extent are these lines on the map placeholders for longer sports? It's going to introduce considerable uncertainty for them in engaging and planning for lease negotiations as to what to do about these areas on the south end and access to the parking lot. So I wonder if it's just what, what are we setting in stone today? If you could provide the council and of course, state over some comfort on that question.
Thank you, councillor Anderson. The during the January twenty twenty and February twenty twenty workshops with stakeholders. These land assignments were created based on values set forth at the beginning of the master planning process. And so we certainly and respectfully do not want to insert any uncertainty to Swamish Day's longer sports. And we would commit in this process to ensuring that their existing operation would be able to still fulfill the the activities that are so integral to the heritage and culture of that association.
Thank you. I'll just offer a brief comment here that we shouldn't overlook that we have quite a number of nonprofit organizations in the community from the rugby club to rain, rain search and rescue that are quite reliant. The amounts that they receive in proceeds each year from this festival event are significant for those individual organizations, something that we overlook when we think about volunteer legacy. It's also contribution back to volunteer organizations. I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your answer. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Anderson. Councillor Penningill, followed by Barry Elliot.
Thank you. I have a few different questions and different topics. The first one, and I can't remember if we talked about this last time, but when I saw the different user groups that we had been consulting with, I was just wondering what we've done to understand if there are other interests that, you know, may have bubbled to the service that are outside of existing user groups. And the one that comes to mind is cricket. And I don't know if that's something to be considered or if there is even a desire for that there, but I guess I'm sort of wondering, do we know and how do we know or not know that sort of other sports like that, there may be some or may not be a level of interest?
Thank you for the question, councillor Penningill. Through this multi-year engagement process, we have not had actions with permit, although it's exciting to contemplate and show recreational trends in our community.
Okay. And I'm just sort of using cricket as an example, though, I guess, just sort of wondering in our, in our process was our, I guess, our way to find this out was through our surveys. That's how we would have looked to sort of detect that, that interest, the surveys earlier on, or is that what I'm hearing?
Through the Chair. Through the many, the multi-year engagement, staff would have staff have provided the opportunity for community groups to raise their hand stages of the process. As you suggested, a really engagement to the multiple stakeholder meetings. Then community surveys. Craft plan circulation. So it would be our sincere hope that anyone's interest in commenting on the process and the master plan has been contemplated to date.
Okay, thank you. Shift gears to a different topic. The, the plan talks about supporting the equestrian society to create a indoor multi-use space. And I see that's in the, the medium term goals, which would, I think, if I understand things correctly, looking at the maps, give it a five to 10 year lifespan. So I guess it's a two-part question. Is that sort of realistic? And then are we talking about? And then are we talking about a horse-specific multi-use space or the expectation with that this would be an indoor space that could serve groups much broader than just equestrian?
To the chair, thank you for the question. It would contemplate the details of the land assignment would be contemplated outside of this master planning process. And they would be in cooperation and coordination with the stakeholder representing the putting forward the plan. So that would be the time that staff would work with the community group.
I guess if I can follow up on that, I guess intuitively, something with a roof indoor, and maybe I'm wrong, would just, you would sort of need it to last more than five or 10 years to make it feasible. But that doesn't seem, as I read the map, consistent with our 15-plus year plan, which has multi-use fields and lights there. Or are we thinking those multi-use fields might be covered and so whatever's in the five to 10-year would evolve into the field plan for 15 plus?
I see. Thank you for the clarification. There's in the short and medium term goals specifically for equestrian. It gives them the runway to to go after grants and funding and to self-organize in a way that will enable their sport to grow in that location. And so after, when we get to the longer-term goals, there, that will need to be contemplated. There's a bit of cause and effect going on here. In 15 years, we will see where equestrian is. And the assumption is within that 15 years, we will see the demand for field space reach a level at which staff would recommend expansion. And so based on kind of those two variables, we will inevitably hit a point where we see where the community priorities start to lay.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question for now, in the medium term, the five to 10-year plan, the event camping parking space is really internal to the site, which means I think it's forcing, to the degree it's used, cars to drive through the site, probably crossing active transit paths and so on. So I'm a bit curious why we wouldn't think to plan for that much closer to Finch drive so that vehicles aren't driving through the recreation site.
Yes, so in fact, we did discuss with staff general circulation. And it is important, and in fact, that's probably one of the first steps to surely affect the key lenses and also pedestrian pathways and essentially the linkages between all the activity areas. So it's a very good point, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
I do really like the track change document. That was helpful to see what's changed from the last time. I just wanted to point out that Councilor Serra's partner, he's the best there. Thank you. Brought us all to my face. So we, I think we need to be careful about designating things for children versus designating things for beginners. And so I know that there are youth who come to skateboarding later in their life. And so I think we just need to be very careful with our wording that the skateboards actually for beginners and designated such. Even adults learn how to skateboard. So although the return on investment could be a little bit, or you're sure it's a bit. But still, so I think we should be mindful that it's not designated just for children, but rather focused on beginning. So that's one comment. And then my other is, when we talk about these land use agreements, relating to the B C Social Procurement Initiative, that communities are looking at really creative ways to include social and environmental values in any of their agreements that they're doing with partners. And so I wonder if this has had a chance to be discussed with our procurement venture around how social procurement can be part of our land use agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a very good point, and this would definitely fit in the next steps.
And then, you know, given we've had a letter from longer sports, I wonder if there's an opportunity where we speak to each of the groups that will be looking at creating their their sort of longer-term lease. It talks about there's a need to implement a base consolidation, reconfiguration, improvement to the site to allow for multiple functions outside of the longer sports events. But I think maybe we should add wording there that says, while still protecting the event's ability to manage their logistics and preparations. Just to give that sense of security. And I think, is there, do you stop seeing any issues with adding some language around there to to acknowledge that we recognize that it's not just that weekend, but there's a whole bunch of preparation.
That's a good point. And in fact, thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. In the research documents, which were the passion ones of the report, it notes these points. And so it's just some key language that we have.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions here myself, and then we'll go back to Council race. In the report to council, the amount like skills are says 20-plus years. And then in the, in the actual planning documents, we get into the discussion we've been having today, which is around that 15-year horizon, which doesn't feel like a huge discrepancy, but it's discrepancy. So I'm just curious where those, where that timeline sits and which one of those numbers is the, is the one.
I think what my concern is that the mapping is trying to be consistent with 0.5, 5. But I don't think the intent is to be so hard with those numbers. However, the discrepancy could be rectified by just having a conversation with the group.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we've, this particular, in other places in the documents, it mentions the encouraging groups to organize and bring forward things to get their facilities built. And I know this organization has, I really want to, and I'd like to see this be a model if, that we can sort of recapture in other places, so it'd be extra clear if we can on that piece. I was interested to see that in the medium goals is where the court related activity courts, as in tennis courts and and or pickleball courts sit. And in sort of the considerations there, it mentions things like it's protected from wind and so on. But I think it's important, or it's emerging issue, it's a project issue last week surrounding the noise concerns associated with pickleball. And I'm curious how something like that, that's, that's sort of emerging on issue. And maybe this is just a case study for what else, you know, as we add, as we add uses around the site. How is that, or in research around that, and then subsequent changes to signing sort of the ability to change in the, in the, in the plan, if some other piece as well, as well as that requires a sort of a rethink, whether it's the circulation issue like we talked about before, or noise with that.
So this is a very good example, Council, where again, these are lines on the map that can be adjusted based on merchant issues such as noise. So it was a wonderful idea to have all the courts in one area, but maybe there's some uses that don't work. And as it would, that's part of that assessment that has to happen. And this is an example that would probably happen to other activities going forward. It asks to get more detailed into the planning with the user groups on their needs.
Okay, thank you. The under the heading of event camping and parking, there was a support equestrian, equestrians for an indoor multi-use space. And I didn't see that indoor multi-use equestrian space on the map because it seemed in the one comment to be something that was more associated with the washroom, the potential washroom at the northeast corner of the current Swallow J's parking. Well, I just want to make sure that what is that indoor multi-use space, or is it a covered riding ring that is, sits more with their, their operations currently? I just wasn't sure.
Through this process that ended up this fall, we didn't get into that kind of detail with the user group. So it will know that that has occurred to the group. In conversations with the equestrian organization, very little detail. I do believe their intent is to be a covered riding structure.
Okay, it's, yeah, there's just a note of it in the, under the heading of event camping and parking. And it seemed like a weird place for it to sit. And I wasn't, I wasn't sure if that was because it was to be, it's just a clubhouse to be constructed on a current parking lot. Is that to be used for events? Is that how it ended up in that, in that grouping? Sorry, sorry, I have a page number for you on that one.
If this would be the question, Councilor.
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm just consulting with my one second, I can find this. It's between two pages. I noted.
Councilor, is it under equestrian brands or camp brand?
Actually, I think it was indoor multi-use space. So it's, it appears under a question, and then another spot, it appeared under, so on page 26 of our agenda, which is page 21 of the master plan, it appears under the, in the medium-term goals, under equestrian. But elsewhere, it appears as, I mean, that was in the, maybe this has already been addressed with the track changes document, which is anyways, okay, I'm fine if that's what it is. I thought it was, the way I was reading it in one location sounded potentially a clubhouse or something, which is fine. But I just wasn't sure where that, where that sounds. So equestrian covered structure, your equestrian zone is what does it test.
That's what staff believe that would, this specifics of of that would come forward with with the land use agreements.
Thank you. And my last piece here is just a question around the values. In the value section, it says affordable programs, services, any services and programs offered by the district or school mission partners must be affordable. And I'm curious what that means and how that's judged affordable. What regard from the participant standpoint? And then I also have all these pieces also cost money from the taxpayer's standpoint or from a municipal standpoint. So I'm curious how that whether it's a, I hesitate to get into subsidy, like how, how much we're subsidizing for participants versus affordable for the spend, cost recovery. I'm just curious how that space is still.
Thank you for bringing that up, Councilor. In particular, this last session, we focused on adding some missing language on inclusion and accessibility. But included in that is the concept of affordability. And so I think what you're speaking to is the need to actually identify this criteria for what would be affordable for the user. And that's something that we're going to discuss in more detail on the master planning process, but agree that it's important.
Thank you. And then from the, I guess, the, maybe this is that into the required next steps, but the second part of that question was around affordable for the taxpayer to where the investment for sort of future budgeting. And I'm just curious if there's anything in this, at this point, that sort of feeds into that prioritization piece. So I'm trying to understand how we broke out the the different timelines and for the various pieces and their associated cost. Because there's some big numbers in there, so I'm trying to understand this better.
Thank you, Chair. As council is aware, this master plan contemplates private business use or private business opportunities, specifically on two parcels labeled facilities. And the affordability or retention service value was integral to the stakeholders that participate in this when contemplating potentially inviting business to operate. That they the values of affordable program service were entrenched in the land assignments. And therefore were entrenched in the values of any agreement coming forward under access.
And what process does that see in establishing that? I don't want to go on this point too far. I just want to make sure I understand the mechanisms of potential mechanisms of next steps.
And that's a great question. That that process hasn't been endorsed yet, obviously, from council. It is a process that staff with real estate would need to undertake before a sort of public interest would be augmented. I'm going to just look to my colleague in the state, Kizzy, as a big time.
I'm not too sure, Mr. Plum. Is that, is that one? No, no, wait, there. One second, Mr. Plum.
There, I thank you. You'll see, yeah, that's, as we're working through the allocation right now, that's something that we see coming up in the next steps process. That this is about giving us the the way to go and start talking to the church around it, just like allocated. And as we come forward in the future, we're going to be writing proposals, we'll be getting proposals back out of the taxpayer, all that sweet vision, all of those questions.
So we're having some feedback online at work, having a hard time hearing everyone at that desk, sort of being able to lead into that mic a bit more, or there's some levels that we can do in the background. Thank you.
I'll lean in here. Thank you. So, yeah, so as we progress through the process, we're here with the land allocations established. We envision looking to receive the proposals from other groups to potentially build facilities for these types of uses that we want to see here. And as those come forward, we will evaluate, looking at, using these principles, looking at them and then bring to council the proposals that demonstrate to council how the affordable principles might be being met. And I think each one may be a little bit different, each for a little bit of a different wants to it. So we see that each one, we bring a minimal value from affordability perspective and also looking at how they impact the taxpayer. So we see that in the next step, most of those are to be evaluated.
Thank you. I'll leave it there for now. I have Council Reese next on the list, and Barry Elliott. Anybody else want to go on at this point? And we're sorry, just before you go about Counselor Reese, we're having a heartbreak. We're just going to swap the mic out. Folks. People there. So for everybody online, I think. Well, we swap the mic, we'll see if we get better better sound from the table. Here's somebody you can answer this.
Thank you, and I just. Counselor raised the subject of pickleball. And that's one example of. Something trying to fit into this plan, but I noticed that some of the thought was we're putting around where the tennis courts are and I think everybody's aware. Either way across and away from that, we recently resolved it from all the families, so. There's a problem where it is, we don't want to just transfer, look for something that's just a little more remote for a site of that. And when I think about that, and I also thought of Counselor Benfield's comments about cricket and so forth. Some point, you know, this is a constrained site, it's constrained by the highway roads and. Issues and so forth. At some point, we're going to have to say that not everything is going to fit in this site. And so it's a little bit off topic and I'll try to be brief, but I think. Part of the for me, part of the endorsement of this plan. It is more or less a general instruction to staff and. As future councils to to try and find other sites that don't. We're playing with a community that will have or have to have more than one recreational site to accommodate these things. And not just playing fields. Where land is, you know, takes up quite a lot of land, but also. Think about the building West Vancouver Glen Eagles, which is just a building really, but it has a variety of different uses inside for recreation purposes. And so we have to start thinking about that land acquisition is tricky as we all know. But I think at some point, we're going to have to say this is all that's going to fit in this. And we're going to have to start fire up this fire rising these things. I think of the bike skills part. And where that's taking the mayor's point, that's the beginners. Like skills of market of your life, but it is in this case primarily little children. And so there's a whole bunch of other issues that we. Got into a discussion previously, a local location skateboard parks, for example. And visibility is very important for some of these functions or. More so for some than others, so where does that fit? How convenient and so forth, what kind of program are you making? So I think there's really no question in there, except you know, it's that. I mean, just you know, where is it, where is this staff starting to look sort of down the road at some of these other sites and other locations for some of these activities? We need to be there today and might be moved to some other ways.
And thank you for the question, Counselor Reese. What staff are. Looking to right now is having the brown park fields and lands master plan coordinate. With the real estate facilities master plan and further coordinate with parks and rec master plan. Through that contemplate a more broader, fuller picture. Future of recreation facilities.
Thank you.
And the childcare crisis and we made room for childcare. This is a question for real estate, can we put it on E O I A S A P? That's a lot of acronyms to secure that use sooner rather than later, or is there something in this document that fits that?
I'm not aware of any different moment that will delay that, so that's. Sorry too, there is delays, we'll go back to council.
Thank you for that, Mary Elliott, Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thanks, I may just be stating the obvious, but just want to make sure I'm understanding what I'm hearing that. Because what I think I've heard is that in what's here for the next one to five years is pretty fixed, we're we're quite confident in this, this is this is the plan. And then the medium and long term that will inform ongoing discussions, but we're quite a bit more flexible there. And we may end up, you know, entering some agreements or leases or whatever, the next one to five years that. Make some of the medium and long terms a lot more fixed and and maybe a little bit different, but we have some of that flexibility still. Is that the basic direction and what we're saying here?
Yes, Counselor, you're you're spot on.
Do you follow, Counselor Penningill?
No, I just wanted to make sure, just sort of understand how rigid each sort of phase was.
Thank you. My questions around the. I'll go back to the. To circle back to pickleball and. It's noted that there's. Potential considerations should be made for the for the noise and we're hearing that from the community. Currently, as it sits. It sits in the five plus years category. And I'm thinking about these considerations or research around the noise requirements and what appropriate sighting. The most appropriate sighting for these things should be, and I'm curious. Around the flexibility of that. Of those timelines or somebody we've heard from some members of the community that were that the timeline, appropriate timeline for a move of some sort. Arguably could have been in the past, so there's a an imbalance there and I'm just wondering about the flexibility this plan to. Sort of reply to. These emerging needs and hypothetically others should be arrested.
So. Given the activity in our community around pickleball in the last few months, the. It is denoted in short term goals. But with very clear. Staffing to be very clear that more work needs to be done in order to not move. Not create. Problem. And I said, so. Parks and operations staff. Reviewing. Our view of options.
Okay. I'm curious around. Yeah, just. Curious around the around the timelines, we've got a period of time here where the. We're doing this work, which is sort of prioritizing, which is is prioritizing sort of order of operations of things that are to happen. In the that longer multi-year sort of timeframe, but we also have a period of time where it's going to be raining cold for the next while and you think the ball. Problem is going to reemerge from spring, so I'm curious about, or is this something that staff has thought about to the level of. When we could have some recommendations back specifically on that? I was kind of hoping to see, I might see that here, but I know it's a bigger body of work and it was kind of a tail end of the process, so I'm just trying to figure out where we're at.
If. If Mr. Buxton were around the worship right now, I would be deferring to him. And so I will do my best, I also understand that I'm not quite as loud and choose.
There is a lot of.
Right? Mr. Buxton, would you like to take counsel's question?
Sorry, I would have to ask, Counselor, sorry, could you repeat the question, please, I didn't catch it.
I think I had my phrasing perfect the first time and I'll see if I can recapture it, but I guess the the. So the report mentions that there should be some considerations for pickleball noise. And as far as the sighting of an appropriate site, and we've heard in the community that. Someone like that facility moved immediately. It's and I'm just curious when we're going to hear, I was optimistic, cautiously optimistic, we're going to see some more information around that in this. But I understand this is a bigger body of work and sort of that feedback came in at the end. So I'm curious about when we're going to hear if staff has a plan to come back to us with something specifically on that topic. As it feels like it should be one of the next steps out of out of this. And I think the community likes some clarity pre pickleball season as to what's what's happening there.
Well, right now, we have no particular plan with respect to the relocation of pickleball. If that's council's direction to move on that, then we would need that direction, but at this point. I mean, I think there's accommodation for it, there's potential to accommodate it in the plan before you, but. In terms of actually actioning something on in that regard in the short run. Would require specific direction from council.
Okay, thank you. Mary Elliott and then Counselor Stoner. And then just counsel, we're we're looking to. Get to a. An endorsement of the of the plan and we're. About five minutes away from the end of our discussion, so we're trying to move towards a conclusion here if we could, thank you.
I want to give the staff recommendation with an amendment to the language for water sports to protect their processing. Lay down and logistics needs and to change the language around the skate park to be beginners rather than children.
Second by Counselor Reese. Discussion.
I really appreciate the the effort that staff have gone to to incorporate feedback from the community, our stakeholders and from council from last time around. This plan doesn't answer all the questions, but it never aspired to do that. It aspired to give more certainty so that we could begin the conversations to extend leases and create that long term space. I think for me, what I love about this plan is the idea of shared use and flexibility of space that. It we're not just connecting all spaces for one use, we're trying to look for those complimentary uses and the ability for people to share and. You know, I think that is a strategic move. And a financially important move as well, not only for the nonprofits, but but for the district. And you know, just some comments going forward, I think an E O I around the childcare piece should happen sooner rather than later. If there's no constraints to that happening, we know this is a crisis and we should look for every opportunity to create more spaces as quickly as possible. And and we've seen how how some daycare providers have been able to do that when they're given an opportunity to lease land. I think we should discuss with the S L R D about moving beyond just their contribution to the aquatic center and how much of area D is starting to use facilities, especially as they grow. And so that's not a requirement for this document, but I think it's in a strategic order, given the population. That's expected in Britannia Beach and the Tiger Bay is is proposed for first reading tomorrow. And that adds thousands of people. And so while there is a small community center proposed there, I would suggest that most of of area D residents are coming into the district to to recreate and access our facilities. So I think it's important for us to think about that kind of partnership with the S L R D. We don't need a quiet center. And I think it's also important for council to get a better picture on these funding options around the foundation, land use agreements, what it looks like as we integrate this with the other. Priorities in our real estate facilities master plan and. You know, we have someone coming in tonight as a delegation to sort of saying, you know, why isn't this moving faster? And it's it's a challenge because we have all a bunch of other things that we are also trying to prioritize. So so bringing back back in the new year and for the next budget cycle to really understand how we're going to accelerate. The Brennan Park revitalization through non-tax related measures, I think is an important. But I just want to thank all the user groups for what they contribute to this plan, but flexibility, their willingness to bend and be part of what I think will be an amazing increase.
Thank you. I think Counselor Counselor Stoner, sorry, I had you on the speaking list and then there was a woman, do you want to speak to the motion?
Okay, I can turn my question into a comment and but I will start by proposing an amendment. To also include some changes to language under the campground section. So that the second paragraph reads, the campground would be used primarily to support camping and or parking for events and tournaments. Low-cost, limited amenity nightly camping may also be considered in line with the needs identified by future policy planning regarding a camping. Regarding camping more broadly in the district. And if that is seconded, I will speak to it.
I'll second it. Go ahead, Counselor Stoner.
Thank you, I want to put this amendment forward for consideration because I do think it's important that we leave the door open for the opportunity to. Provide nightly camping in this location, both from a cost recovery perspective, if we're going to have a camping facility there, then I think it should be used more than just for events. And also because we've been having discussions with the province for multiple years now to identify a low-cost, low amenity camping location. And we haven't been able to get very far in that discussion, so I think including some language in this plan to leave the door open. To include this site as a potential in those conversations will be helpful in the long term.
Thank you, Mary Elliott.
Chair, I'm not going to support the amendment, I think that. We need to provide significant flexibility, we know our user groups want this for an event, don't believe municipal government. Has any business in the campground business, I think others do it better than we do. I do think there's a conversation to have with our provincial and local partners around. Access to camping, I also disagree with the fact that. With the sentiment that we haven't made progress with the province, I think actually we took a important step forward in our conversations with the province at U C M. And our collaborative table over the summer to address visitor management actually showed. Good progress and created some ideas of where we could move in the future, so I do believe we have the province's attention. And I think we can make progress outside of this present and where it better belongs, in my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor French, followed by Counselor Reese.
Thanks, Chair, I won't be supporting this amendment, we've been here, we've done this, it ain't work. I don't want to go back.
Counselor Reese.
Okay, just speaking on the amendment. I also will not be supporting this, I think one of the things that this process has highlighted for me. Is how critical the allocation of space is and how many demands there are on the space. So I don't blame camping, I wouldn't camp in this recreational activity, I think the land is better used for other purposes. So we'll not support this amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, followed by Penningill. Oh, that's true. Counselor Penningill.
Just wondering if the mover can repeat the the motion, please?
Be happy to, it would be, so in the second paragraph under the camping section. The campground would be used primarily to support camping and or parking for events and tournaments. Low-cost, limited amenity nightly camping may also be considered in line with needs identified by future policy planning regarding camping more broadly within the district. And then it would continue to read, this would be the medium term as the paragraph continues on. So it would allow for that land to be transferred over to another use. In the long term, when those lands are needed, but given that it's already going to be used for events, camping support. The proposal is just to provide the opportunity to use it. More fulsomely for camping, if it's already there for camping for events.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Penningill.
Yes, thank you, so I I will support this, I think. As in the motion, it puts the priority still on event space, which is consistent with the. Initial proposal, but I I don't think it makes sense, given all the the needs that people have spoken to, to leave land. But I, I don't think it makes sense, given all the, the needs that people have spoken to, to leave land sitting idle. The point in the, the motion I heard was that this was low amenity and so on. So I wouldn't expect it would be difficult to pivot away when or if, um, higher demands arise. And, and so for those reasons, I think it makes sense to, um, support keeping this option open.
Thank you, Counselor Penigal. Um, I'll be supporting this, this motion. I, I think it, um, I appreciate Counselor Stoner's wording, which keeps the door open, um, if something that's, that's needed. I think, um, I think this is a, a responsible approach where potentially this, um, the campground could be used for the events and augmented when it's not being used for the events with some, some nightly stays, which is not what we've tried in, um, in, which is a departure from what we've, uh, tried in the, in the past. And the wording is sufficiently, um, open enough that it doesn't commit to, uh, this absolutely needing, needing to happen. But it does keep the, the door open and I think that's, um, that's appropriate. So I'll be supporting, uh, the amendment. So now I'll call the vote on the amendment opposed. But Race, Elliott, French, Anderson oppose motion, so the amendment fails. On the, we're back to the comments in the main motion, uh, Counselor Race.
Thank you. Uh, and supporting the main motion as it was originally moved. For me, um, first of all, I, I do appreciate the work staff and, and public stakeholders have put into this, uh, this process. Simple process, land allocation, but a lot of different uses is, uh, variably tricky. For me, this is a good start. And when I say a start, uh, because I think this is really coming very quickly, that community-wide issue. I am more than just Brendan Park. And I think as we go forward and the community expands, uh, we will find that, uh, some of the allocations that we have today in this plan will have to change. Uh, some of the locations will have to change. I think that's the metability. But I think it's a good, oh, start with our process. I've been supporting this motion.
Thank you. Um, I have Counselor, um, Counselor Anderson, next, and Counselor Fettig, do you?
Thank you. Um, four points. First, returning to the issue of drainage. I'm reminded of our experience in undertaking the Lower East, uh, Neighborhood Plan that we had to take a pause, uh, with staff, uh, undertaking, uh, more work on stormwater management. And I think that the issue is so significant throughout this area. And I appreciate that work is done on, that's been done on Area C identified as a, as a floodway. But I think that the issues for investment and free nap options for land use within this precinct are very significant. And perhaps we may contemplate, uh, talking about a budget line item, uh, in the near future as to doing comprehensive, taking a comprehensive technical review of deep drainage. The issues are that significant. Secondly, as my colleagues have pointed out, there are general community land use planning considerations that have come up in relation to a crushing facility, indoor sports, pickleball, uh, camping, and maybe even parks administration. There are various scenarios for each of these and they may not necessarily be in this, in this Brendan Park precinct. And so we must be looking at a broader land use, uh, recreation purpose of community, a new parks and recreation master plan. The present one, which is version two point O, is now over a decade old. Thirdly, with respect to engagement, I think that the work done this time around by staff will serve us well for a new Parks and Recreation Master Plan initiative in future, that three-point O. And with respect to the Lower Sports Festival and grounds usage concerns, I think that there are many obscure behind-the-scenes functions, uh, in this situation that can elude the best of minds and the best managed processes. And that we shouldn't feel badly any of this about, uh, the exchange that's taken place. These are simply very, uh, specialized, uh, needs and functions. And, uh, it's not a community where everybody's driving trucks and operating equipment as it once was when the Lower Sports Festival, uh, had its origins. Finally, I appreciate staff's offer and Mayor Elliott's initiative in the revised motion to add some language to assure, uh, a continuity of functions that the Lower Sports Festival and grounds operations, for example, among other things, can continue to meet essential needs in future. Thank you. I'll be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, Counselor French, and then followed by Counselor Stoner and Counselor Penigal.
Thank you, Chair. Just picking up on Counselor Anderson's thoughts, the addition of worrying to be a large sports and your sense of security is important to me. The large sports event is key culture and heritage tradition, which I believe requires some reassuring worry inside the plan. Coming into this meeting, I had concerns the plan might negatively impact lower sports. The additional worrying in this motion definitely leaves that concern. I support keeping the, the camping components in this plan purely as a space to be used by groups coming here from out of town to participate in the various events that goes. Pickleball, in my opinion, won't work in the spot that it's currently recommended at. There are other potential locations for pickleball and just one that comes immediately to my mind is the neglected former tennis courts at Don Ross Secondary. And I think we'll see that pickleball situation evolve independently. So not too concerned that it's, um, mentioned specifically in the plan. So high level, I believe this plan will serve us well into the future and support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner, and then followed by Counselor Penigal.
Thank you, Senator Chair. Although I'm disappointed that my amendment did not pass, I will be supporting, uh, the current motion on the floor. Um, I'm happy to see this work move forward. It has been two years of engagement and appreciate staff's continued due diligence in reaching out to our community members, uh, the stakeholders that are affected, and incorporating council's comments, um, that you received earlier this year. I think this puts us in a good position to continue to forward the conversation. I think the, uh, one of the biggest, uh, question marks to me remains, um, the ongoing or parallel work around the funding model. So appreciate that this helps us advance, um, some of the alternative funding models around leasing or some of that space. But, um, more broadly around the foundation, um, changes in fee structures. Um, and I think that's one of the, uh, pieces why I put forward the amendment around the camping is that I see that as a potential, a funding stream to help alleviate some of the constraints here, knowing that we have, um, so much to fund and so little revenue sources. But I will leave it at that, um, and happy to support the motion on the floor as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner. Uh, Counselor Penigal.
Yes, thank you. I, I will support the, uh, the motion. Um, a, a couple comments. I did have some hesitation, just being a little bit unclear initially on, on how fixed the medium and long-term goals were, but appreciate that there is some flexibility there, that this gives us some, some, um, clear, I guess, you know, good values, uh, and understanding of, of where people are at, what the, the current thoughts are. And so I think it's useful to have, uh, some of that additional clarity as we, we plan, plan our, our future and start moving forward in the, in the shorter term as well. I really appreciate the, the significant involvement of, of stakeholder groups. It's also one of the reasons why I had the question about other sports that we don't traditionally consider, uh, here or haven't thus far, just because, you know, I, I think we can presume there, there likely are people that, um, historically haven't felt like it's, it's worth participating. And when you see strong involvement from pre-existing stakeholder groups, uh, those other people can, uh, yet again, get, get lost. And I don't know that's what's happened here, but it just seems to be that's the way things have gone. And, and I think we are all sort of working on trying to address that. So it's not really a comment specific to this plan, but maybe just a, a reminder for, for all of our engagements going forward, uh, things to, to think about. Just to balance the, the strong and positive engagement of, of existing stakeholder groups. Uh, the only other thing I will say is that, um, you know, with pickleball, glad that there is some flexibility to consider, uh, a number of different options here. I, I think one of the things I don't want to get lost, especially with the, the mention of Don Ross, is accessibility to a large part of the community. And, uh, one of the nice things about Brendan Park is it's, it's fairly central and fairly accessible. And so just didn't want to leave that unsaid. Um, that is an important consideration. And, and yeah, there's a lot of things that people would love to do here. So I guess that, that's our challenge to, to sort it out. But, uh, appreciate the, uh, the staff work and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penigal. Um, I'll be speaking, uh, in support of the motion. I appreciate all the work that's, that's gone into this and the, appreciated the, uh, the changes from when we last spoke and the document that reflected that. That was nice to see the track changes. It's always helpful as we're, uh, working our way through these things. I, I think this is a good, uh, I know there's a lot of work, uh, that's been done. So I hesitate to call it a first, the first step. There's a lot of things that got us to here. And then the next steps, um, going forward, I think we're laid out quite well as far as the, uh, the phased approach. Even this phase approach, I do recognize is ambitious, potentially from a funding, pers- perspective, but, uh, that's the, the tough decisions we need to, um, to work, to work towards. So I'll be supporting this motion and seeing no further hands and everyone's commented. I'll call the question, uh, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, I'd like to, uh, while we're still on a related topic, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion that, um, that's, that staff come up, develop some, uh, criteria around citing of pickleball courts, uh, as far as best practices go, um, in the district. So we can compare it to, not only to this plan, but to current citing. And this will inform, uh, that's the information that I need, I would like to see to inform, I'm sorry, now I'm speaking to it. So I would like to see staff work with, uh, policy around best practices in the district for citing pickleball courts. And I'll speak to that in a bit. Second, secondly by Counselor French. Thank you. Um, I think this is an important piece as we've had concerns raised by the, the community around the current citing, uh, location of the, uh, of the courts. I'd like to see, um, analysis by staff, uh, around what appropriate sighting looks like. And then we can compare it to where it is currently, where it's proposed to be in future. And that can help feed into, into future planning. And this is an emerging, um, topic. And, um, with this in mind, I, I think this can feed into next year's, um, budget process, which feels to me the most, will lead to the most informed, um, decisions, uh, as we're going forward. Thank you. Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. Speaking in favor of your motion, uh, find this situation with pickleball to be a classic, you don't know, you don't know. And, uh, what we didn't know has really created some very uncomfortable living conditions for a number of people in our community. And, uh, I'd like to see the district respond as soon as quickly as possible can on, on this to alleviate, uh, the difficult living situations that we face. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I have Counselor Stoner and Counselor Penigal.
Thank you, Senator Chair. I'm hesitant to support this motion because, uh, it was at council's direction that, uh, staff put a pickleball court where it's currently located as per the last budget. Um, that was a request that came forward to council and council decided to put it in the budget. So we are now at a point where we are backtracking on that because staff didn't have the time to do their due diligence on that citing. So I do agree that this work now needs to be done. But I, um, I will definitely support it, knowing that there's a lot of work that's already been done by other communities. So I hope that this isn't a heavy lift for our staff and that we can just copy and paste what is existing from other communities and, uh, apply it to what we currently have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner. Counselor Penigal, followed by Counselor Race.
Yeah, thanks. I'm not sure if, if I'm comfortable supporting this. I, I think I would prefer possibly a committee, the whole discussion around a, a little more broadly on noise and, and that sort of thing. I, I, I'm a bit concerned, uh, that if we pick off sort of one-off, specific sports or noise complaints, we're gonna be taking up a whole lot of council and, and staff time. And, and so to the degree, I, I guess I, I'd be a little more interested in, in coming up with something a little more broad in general and not specific to one specific sport in one particular place. And I don't want to, um, ignore the, the concerns and so on. But I, I'm just sort of worried about treating this as an ad hoc, um, sort of, a, again, I, I'd rather have a, a more comprehensive policy that, that can deal with noise and citing of sport in general. And, you know, to my mind, that's part of the work of the field's master plan is figuring out how all the various pieces of all the sports kind of fit together. So I, I guess I, I'd be more interested in something a little more broad.
Thank you, Counselor Penigal. Uh, Counselor Race.
Thank you. Uh, I'll, I'll support this, but I have, I do have concerns. I start dealing with these motions without any kind of preparation or thought beforehand. There's the question of staff time, sort of budget involved, when my work be done, all the other things that, uh, factor into these types of projects. And so I think it is, it's a hot community issue. I acknowledge that. And we probably didn't even save last year. Not full diligence. And I'll take responsibility for that. I was one of the people that supported it. So, uh, so I think it is important to have some idea, get some recommendations from staff. I don't think we have to, and what we all hear, there's a lot of studies and information that's always out there ways of facts and so forth. And so I think it's more a matter of looking at, trying to figure out where this might locate itself.
Thank you. Um, the, the intent here is to give us, uh, the most information so that we can, we can figure out, we can compare the, whatever staff comes back with as far as the recommendation to its current, its current location and, and subsequently inform where is appropriate. Now, other, Counselor Penigal's point around other, other, um, other uses, other uses haven't generated the, the, uh, the feedback in the community. So I, I think this one, we want to make sure that we get right if, uh, if any changes need to be made, that they're, they're made correctly. So I do think this is an appropriate course of action at this point. But, uh, with that, I'll call, I'll call the question, um, opposed if any, or Counselor, Counselor Anderson, do you want to speak to this? I missed you.
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, I don't have too much more to add. I will be another reluctant supporter of the motion and will simply trust or hope to trust staff with some of the observations that, uh, Counselor Stoner, Counselor Race, among others have made, that we don't need to read, but we all, there's a lot of information that's been made available to us that staff can utilize. So an efficient process and efficient handling this, should the motion succeed.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Oh, Mayor Elliott.
I'm not going to support the motion. I think it should have been referred to the future community to hold for discussion before we cast staff with any action.
Thank you. With that, I'll call the question opposed, depending. Mayor Elliott opposes, oh, and, oh, sorry, and Counselor Penigal. Oppose, motion carries. Thank you. And also, um, next, uh, we actually have a, uh, sorry, staff, let me got a little, we got ahead of ourselves a little bit there. We still have the Sorka topic to discuss.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, the purpose of, uh, this presentation, is meant to specifically speak to council's, uh, motion passed on November 30th, that the correspondence from Sorka dated the 29th, we refer to staff to bring back to the updated December 14th being as part of the Brendan Park Bill's, and it's a discussion. It's the same, it's gonna get us there any moment. So the Brendan Park bike skills facility overhaul project grant information is as follows. The Brendan Park bike skills parks, the intermediate bike skills facility that has reached its end of life, it requires redesign and rebuild to bring it out to standard. The Sorka, uh, total budget proposed is $360,000. Sorka is cognizant of the financial realities facing the district and is requesting 17% of, of the budget equaling $60,000. Sorka will contribute to balance the budget through grants and sponsorship and in kind, uh, and cash donations. The requirements of the grant, along with the seasonal paving window, did take The requirements of the grant, along with the seasonal paving window, did take that this project must be completed in the summer of 2022. Bike skills facilities are common throughout the province, often being driven solely by municipalities. A continued partnership with Sorka to provide these required US support. The further information that has come forward in the last two weeks is that the event does indeed require an overhaul. The grant deadline for the work is March 2023. The lifespan expectancy of a renovated event would be in around 15 plus minus years, depending on ultimate design. And that this this 60K requested from Sorka would come from taxation. And so with respect to the sensitivity of the ask into the 2022 budget cycle and the public and the public debate to date, staff recommend the requests be referred to the 2022 budget process. Thank you. 23.
Thank you very much. Mary Elliot?
Very fine. Staff could tell us how much of anything counts on contingency.
Will we wait for that answer? Do there are other questions around the table and we can circle back? We're going to break staff here. Yep, Councilor is going.
Thank you. Similar question, when I looked at this, I was wondering if the word alternatives taxation is a funding source where that that direction comes from. And did put it on the 23 budget process. Does that really help this particular project, you know, that the grant expires in 2023? So what really has to done for that more or less go next summer?
Thank you, Mary Elliot.
The reason I asked about contingency is that I wondered if we could support a portion of it. Um, contingency that remains in this fiscal year and then refer any balance to 2023. Or given that Sorka has been working on this for a while and we are only talking about it, about it, I'd be left with our other questions for other things. That doesn't sit comfortably with me at all. But there's grant money on the table and it can take a small investment from us to get this project over the line. So by perhaps partially funding the $60,000 request, it gives, gets Sorka most of the way there. They can go for other things in the meantime. And if there is any remaining to be considered, it would happen in the 2023. But I'm not happy that this is, you know, looking at all the in-kind support that's there. This could have been discussed with this staff months ago.
Thank you, Councilor Penningill.
Yeah, thanks. Just trying to understand the phasing of this project. There's, it sounds like some urgency for this year with us providing 17%. There's a grant, but then there's also other funding. So is the plan that a whole $360,000 needs to be spent this year? Or the grant in our piece is a much smaller portion of a broader multi-year project? I'm just wondering if staff have an idea of of, you know, how this splits apart? Is this all a one-year project that all has to be done or or are there there bits and pieces?
I believe that Sorka would say that the project has to be done all at once. However, I'm not I'm not confident in this specificity of it.
Councilor Penningill, you good for now?
Yeah, I I think so. Do we maybe? Maybe this will be a question for this evening, but do we know what amount is outstanding? If we put in our part, then there's the grant piece. Do we know what's still outstanding in terms of funding?
There's still or one has been submitted to staff, there's still a whatever possible portion to be realized within within the budget through grants, in kind of sponsorship donations.
Okay, thank you. And is this a sort of it goes or it doesn't go? Or, you know, if they they fall short on that other fundraising, they'll use up our grant and the provincial one and get as far as they can?
And I believe it would be difficult to they will be moving into the design phase. And so there would actually be rework done to complicate a portion of the project that did not reach the budget and design criteria and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Penningill. I believe we have an answer to Mary Elliot's earlier question, Miss Bennett.
Senator Chair, actually, we don't have an answer, but what I wanted to recommend, given that we're over time, perhaps the show would want to take a recess now, following the recess, we can come back with them.
That 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 sounds pretty good. I have some comments I want to to make as we're still, which might eat up more, more time. But I was curious, part of the project.
Sure.
Yeah, we can move that whole. Okay, let's do that. We'll we're going to put the rest of this discussion over to this evening to pull us back on to schedule timelines. And right now, we're going to roll into, so thank you, staff, for that. And sorry for committing you to some evening time. And for now, we'll go into to recess. We'll see everyone back at 11:00. Eight minutes, we'll curve ourselves back, let's get a deal, two minutes at a time. Thank you.
Hello and welcome back to Committee the Whole for December 14th. We are on to the single-use item bylaw amendment discussion. So I'll turn it over to staff. Take it away, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Jeff Wint, Sustainability Coordinator. And we are here today to talk about single-use item and our single-use item reduction. And so a few of the things that we want to go through in our meeting here today. So I'm going to be updating council on the ministerial order 309 and provide some options to update our existing single-use item bylaw. I'm going to present some of the other items that that ministerial order will allow us to regulate and then ask council for some direction on how staff should move forward. And so to begin with, because there's a lot of things going on in this realm, I wanted to provide a little bit of background as well as some of the things that are going to be happening moving forward. So to begin with, in December 2019, the District of Squamish passed our single-use item reduction bylaw. Earlier this year in June, the provincial government, the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change Strategy released their ministerial order 309 that we'll be talking about in a couple of minutes. In October of this year, the provincial government also released their framework, which will allow them to create regulations and legislation around single-use items. We are still expecting the federal government by the end of this year to release some draft regulations on single-use plastics. Their timeline's been been pushed back, but we're still expecting that draft regulation this year. And we are expecting their regulation to address things like checkout bags, plastic stirr sticks, beverage six-pack rings, plastic cutlery, straws, and then some of the other hard recycle food packaging plastics. And then continuing to look forward, in 2023, Recycle BC, our paper and packaging EPR program here in BC, they will be adding some single-use items and packaging-like products into their into their program for recycling. And then again, in 2023, we're expecting the provincial government to introduce their legislation around single-use items and single-use item reduction. And at this point, we don't, we haven't been given any indication on what items that's going to be addressing or looking at. When we look at single-use items, I wanted to to share how much we're getting in our landfill in Squamish. So this is based on our 2020 waste composition report that we did. We had a special section there just looking at single-use items. So what we can see is if we're looking at it by tonnage, none of them are are huge, a huge tonnage. None of it makes up a very large percentage of our of our waste going into our into our landfill. For comparison, things like organics are closer to 30%. So when we see, you know, plastic bags being at 0.6%, it's not as much. But when we're looking at the the units, so that's how many individual bags or stirr sticks or foam containers went into the landfill, we see that as quite a few. It's a very large number. And of course, each one of those items had to be manufactured, shipped here to be used for for minutes at a time. And what we don't have on this slide is we've recently got some information back from our curbside tune-up. And what we found was about two-thirds of the totes in Squamish had plastic bags as their unaccepted item in those totes. So these are also, a lot of these items are major contaminants in our curbside recycling stream, which I know we've spoken about before. So to quickly review the existing single-use item bylaw, this bylaw was really designed to not only reduce plastic, but to encourage people to switch to reusables. So we've got the the fees on on bags. And then we're also banning compostable and biodegradable plastics through this for straws and bags because they're not compatible with our curbside organics collection system. So we really wanted to avoid having that that confusion. So it's reducing plastics, it's encouraging reusables, and it's banning those difficult materials like the compostable plastics. So looking at the ministerial order that was released or signed earlier this year, what the Ministry of Environment, Climate Change Strategies is saying is municipalities are allowed to regulate some single-use items. And if they're regulated, they have to meet these, this framework. So it's banning plastic bags, it's allowing paper and reusable bags, provided there's fees. Paper bags need to be at least 40% recycled content and have that stamped on the bag. Plastic straws can be banned, there is a requirement for accessible straws. And then the the two new materials that are existing bylaw doesn't address is plastic utensils can be banned or made by request only, and then polystyrene or styrofoam containers, they can be banned. The ministerial order also requires a six-month period after adoption of the bylaw before enforcement, and that's to allow businesses to to use up all their existing supplies so that we're not ending up with these materials put in mass in in the landfill. And we're at least allowing them that single use. So the amendments to the existing Squamish bylaw to bring it in line with that ministerial order would be to enact a full ban on the distribution of plastic checkout bags. It would be requiring the recycled content in paper bags, so that's at least 40% recycled content. And actually having that stamped on the bag or written on the bag somewhere saying 40% or higher recycled content. And then our our current regulation on straws is exactly what would, what's in the ministerial order. So we wouldn't need to adjust that part at all. So these are the amendments that we would need to put in there. So we would need to amend our definition of plastic bag. The minister, or sorry, the ministerial order also requires a definition on on what small bags are. So we would add those two definitions. And then as far as the clauses that we would need to adjust, we would need to remove plastic bags from the lists of items that can be offered or sold at checkout. We would also remove the charge for plastic bags, and then we would add small paper bags to that list of exemptions, which mirrors what we already have in there, but it's just ensuring that there's that size standard and clearing up some confusion that some businesses had around the sizes of of paper bags. So there are, as I mentioned, two other items that can be regulated under this ministerial order. So we'll address first plastic utensils. So plastic utensils, they can be either completely banned, requiring businesses to use alternatives such as wooden utensils. The biodegradable or compostables can continue to be banned because, again, they they don't match with our current curbside organic system. And that's a challenge that many municipalities across the province are are having. So we can continue to ban the compostable or biodegradable utensils, encouraging wooden or other reusable options. When we did our single-use item consultation back in August 2019, there was some discussion about banning the plastic utensils. At that point, the conversation seemed more concerned about finding compostable alternatives. So a lot of that discussion seemed to be taken up by that compostable plastics discussion, which isn't necessarily reflective of how this bylaw would look. And in further consultation with some accessibility advocates, there was some concern about the the wooden and alternative utensils, in large part because they don't necessarily have the same scoop, if you will, in the spoon or fork. So if you're not as steady, it can make it a little bit more difficult to actually hold food on the on the utensil, whereas the plastics tend to have a little bit more form and scoop to them. The wooden utensils can also be a little bit more of a challenge to to use as a fork to stab your food with and and get on there properly. Yeah, that said, to back to that consultation back in August of 2019, there was still enthusiasm to to look at regulating plastic utensils. And if we look at polystyrene foam takeout containers, or what would commonly be known as styrofoam takeout containers, what the ministerial order allows for here is just a complete ban. The alternatives, or sorry, it doesn't stipulate what alternatives would be used. So through education, we would encourage local businesses to use things that would be either accepted in our curbside recycling, like paper-based containers or harder plastics that, again, would be accepted in the curbside recycling, provided they're they're washed out. When we did that consultation back in August 2019, the poly or styrofoam containers were the the top object that people wanted addressed after the items we'd already highlighted. And there was no no negative feedback or perceived negative consequences of banning that. There were some comments wondering why it wasn't already done. So there's definitely enthusiasm in the community to to ban these items. When we look at what disposal and diversion options we have for a lot of these items, we see that paper bags are the most convenient and accessible because they can either be composted if they're food-soiled or put in the curbside recycling bin. All of the other alternatives have either landfill options or depot recycling, which of course makes it a little bit more challenging for people to properly divert those materials. And then with the plastic straws and utensils, they will be included in Recycle BC's program in 2023. But we don't know if that's going to be a depot drop-off or accepted in curbside recycling. So that hasn't been hasn't been decided by Recycle BC at this point. So the motion for council is what we have here, so that the District of Squamish received the report from Community Planning and Infrastructure dated December 14th on the proposed amendments to the single-use item bylaw regarding checkout bags for information prior to considering the bylaw for readings. And staff at this point is scheduled to come back on February 1st to present those amendments for to present those amendments for reading if this motion passes. And then we also have the additional motions. So the first one would be to enact that ban on polystyrene takeout service ware. And then regarding the plastic utensils, we have, we're presenting council two options here. The first would be to limit the distribution of plastic utensils to on-demand only, but also enacting a ban on plastic stir sticks. The reason for the ban on plastic stir sticks, but not the other utensils, is there is readily available alternatives that don't have any negative accessibility impacts. There's the wooden stir sticks, which can be used the same as the plastic ones. And they have compostable, or they are compostable and accepted in our curbside composting. Or we also have the option, or the motion here for council, to enact a full ban on the plastic utensils. And with that, I'd like to open it up for questions or discussion.
Thank you very much. We have, I have Councillor Race to start us off.
Thank you. I'm just curious if we have a sense of where other municipalities are going. And the reason I ask that is, as you were talking, I was thinking about things that I buy. And, and one of them is chicken in the grocery store. And the particular grocery store I go to has, has two different types of containers. And one is the hard plastic, they've, but another brand of chicken is, comes in these foam containers. And it's a nice brand of chicken. And so if every municipality started changing the requirement, then that would force that particular manufacturer or processor to change. But if it's just us alone, we might then be found not to be able to sell it in Squamish. And I'm just curious if you have a sense of is, are the other municipalities going more or less in the same direction on, on not focusing on that one particular product, but just in this, for all of these things? Or are we kind of going off alone?
To the Chair, I should clarify with the polystyrene container or takeout container ban. It is just for takeout prepared food. So raw or uncooked foods such as meats would not be subject to that, that ban. As far as where other municipalities are going, given that the minister's order is fairly strict in, in what it's allowing municipalities to do, municipalities that are wanting to take action in these, these areas are all having to take similar, similar actions. So for example, Metro Vancouver has released some guidance to its member municipalities to, to ban the plastic bags, you know, provide fees for paper and reusables, to ban the polystyrene takeout containers to make the plastic utensils by request only, and to ban the stir sticks. So similar to what we're recommending. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Race. I have Councillor Peddingill next.
Yeah, thanks. Two things. So I understand that with biodegradable plastics, with current technology, it just breaks down into smaller pieces of plastic, and that's why that's a problem. But for the compostable, you mentioned there's not options available to us. And is that because requiring it, or doing it requires a massive operation? Or, you know, could we theoretically invest in a somewhat achievable piece of infrastructure locally or regionally, and then be able to handle these sorts of things?
Through the Chair, with compostable plastics, one of the challenges is when they meet those compostable standards, it's done in a lab situation. So it's done in a, in a perfect environment. Industrial composting facilities, you know, despite what I'm, would like to believe, they're not perfect facilities. There's a lot of different challenges with moisture and heat, where they can't necessarily replicate those perfect lab environments. So that's one of the challenges that, that composters have, is trying to replicate those, those perfect environments. And while a compostable plastic might require a certain sort of environment, other things that are trying to compost might require a different environment. So we're, we're really trying to stretch what, what those facilities are, are able to do. The compostable plastics is definitely an ongoing debate within the province and the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change solutions, as they shift their focus to a circular organic system. They're, they're really trying to look at what the best way to address compostable plastics and, and some of those challenges are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing, just to clarify our, our authority, we now have the ability to regulate, you know, what, what's in your checkout bag. When you're doing your own takeout, what sort of utensils you get. But we can't prevent a grocery store from selling a whole bag of bags or, or things like that. Or if someone has a picnic, we can't bar them from using, giving everyone plastic utensils. Like it's sort of really at the, the point of leaving with your groceries or picking up your own personal food. That's, that's where we have the only authority to regulate. Is that correct?
Through the Chair, yes, that's correct. So items bought in bulk. So a, a pack of plastic bags or a pla, pack of plastic utensils would still be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. I've Mayor Elliott. And then is there anyone else? Just raise your hand if I, if you want to speak on, on this at this point. Okay, Mayor Elliott, take it away.
So we've got the federal government coming into play, we have the provincial government coming to play, we have Recycle BC coming to play. Are we anticipating that our need for a bylaw will eventually become redundant? Because all of these materials will be regulated by either the province or the federal government? Or will we always need to be specific about what's happening within our boundaries? What is the sense that you get in, in understanding those next level of regulations?
Through the Chair, while the, the federal government and provincial government haven't released draft frameworks yet, so we, we can't say for certain kind of one way or another. What it looks like at, at this stage is the federal government will be mostly focused on preventing plastic pollution. So from what we've kind of got through what they've released so far, it looks like they won't be as concerned about that promotion of reusables. The provincial government is a little bit more kind of allowing in promoting better alternatives and promoting reusables. And I think our role as, as a municipality is really going to be in that reusables promotion. And really encouraging, and trying to create bylaws in a regulatory environment, along with education to our businesses and to our residents on that reuse piece. And I, I think that's where regardless of the, the other actions from provincial or federal government, where our role will, will really stay is that on-the-ground promotion of, of best practices and enabling that best practices. Thank you.
And then if, in bringing forward banning the polystyrene or utensils, can we also include in our bylaw the requirement that it must be compatible with either our organic system or our blue bin curbside recycling?
Through the Chair, the minister's order doesn't allow us at this point regarding the polystyrene or the utensils to stipulate what alternatives are used. Through education with our, our local businesses, we would strongly encourage them to find those alternatives that, that will be accepted, so that we don't end up just creating alternatives that are going to be destined for the landfill anyways.
I was just wondering if there was some wiggle room, because instead of identifying a particular material, we could just identify what it needs to be compatible with. And I wondered if there was some, some room to move within that ministerial order, so that we could save you a little bit of time around education.
Through the Chair, as I said, under the ministerial order, unfortunately, at this point, we don't have that, that wiggle room.
I, I do however, think it's a good idea to, to address the styrofoam packaging, and we know people want to get rid of it. The, the utensils, I, I'm certainly open to hearing my, my colleagues' piece. I feel like that we probably should go to an organic space utensil, but allow for people to request an alternative that meets their needs if they have, you know, mobility challenges or, in the same way that they can ask for a plastic straw. So maybe it's a blend of, of both. Anyway, I'm happy to hear from my colleagues.
Thank you. I was curious to see the, the sort of the shift. We, we talked about paper bags in the first go at this, and, and it challenged some assumptions that we had around the, sort of their overall footprint. But I like the sort of the focus on the, the refocus on the recycling or recycled content. So still wrap my head around that, that shift from that single use piece to really getting a little bit more specific with this. But I was curious to see, is there anything around the single use coffee cup? This is something that, that I, has always been on my radar, where at some places you'll get a percentage discount if you bring your own. And the default is that they're going to put it in to go, a, a single use to go. And I'm quite interested in flipping that. Is there anything where the, the default position would be that you brought your own mug? And if you didn't, then it's an additional X amount for the, for the cup. Is there anything here that, that allows that? Or specifically restricts us from being able to pursue something along those lines?
Thank you. Through the Chair, under the ministerial order, styrofoam takeout coffee cups can be banned, but not the paper alternatives. That is definitely, I know an item of interest for a lot of municipalities, the coffee cups. City of Vancouver, not under the community charter. They will be banning coffee cups, I believe, starting in, in January, sorry, not banning them, but requiring fees. What we have locally is a lot of businesses that are interested in reducing coffee cups. So they have voluntarily started to provide discounts or stamp cards or different initiatives to try to encourage their customers to bring in that reusable cup and, and to kind of make it that standard, like you were saying. So just to summarize, at this point, under that ministerial order, we don't have the powers to, to regulate other takeout cups other than styrofoam. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else comment on this? Okay, we're looking for, sorry, in the agenda, we had the one, can you bring up the, the rec, the motions slide for us, please? We had motions. I have the motion in front of me, but I don't have the alternatives. Thank you. So Council, you have the, the initial motion is in our agenda, and then we have these additional motions here. So would anyone like to move any pieces of this? Mayor Elliott?
I'll move the primary motion around the checkout bags, so we can just get that out of the way.
Okay, do we have a second or councillor race seconds discussion?
No.
Okay, seeing as no comments are offered, we'll call the question, opposed if any. Motion carries unanimously. And I'll give, yep, go ahead, Mayor Elliott.
I'll, I'll now go for the staff amend the single use item bylaw to ban polystyrene takeout service.
Second by Councillor Stoner. Any discussion on this point? Seeing none, oh, Councillor Stoner, you'd like to speak to it?
Let's very briefly say that I'm very excited to see this being included. It was a high priority item, and I think it's about time that we include it. Thanks.
Thank you. And with that, I'll call the question, opposed if any. Motion carries unanimously. Mayor Elliott?
I just have a question for staff. So you recommended that we limit the distribution of plastic utensils to on-demand only and ban plastic stir sticks, which is a good idea. So do you prefer that over banning plastic utensils entirely? Because the next motion then says to, to ban them.
Through the Chair, yeah, on that, that list, I guess number, number two and three there, that would be staff's recommendation.
And can you just tell me why you don't want to ban plastic utensils at this time?
Through the Chair, the, the conversation on accessibility and ensuring that people who require those plastic utensils still have access to them, staff feels is an important consideration. Through education, we can continue, continue to encourage people to use alternatives or ideally reusables. But we want to make sure that there's access for people who, who need those plastic utensils. Thank you.
I could, the floor says, I, I, I thought that was just a thought process thing.
I was thinking. But someone else can put forward a motion if they'd like.
Go ahead, Councillor French.
Yeah, I'm happy to move that council direct staff to amend the single use item bylaw to limit distribution of plastic utensils to on-demand only, and that council direct staff to amend the single use item bylaw to ban distribution of plastics, stir sticks.
Thank you. Councillor Stoner, are you seconding that? Okay, and I'd, I'll give Councillor French, you can, you would like to speak to it or?
Sure, thank you. I, I'll start with the plastic stir sticks. Where, with where we are, plastic stir sticks just make zero sense to me. The wooden stir sticks that we use every Tuesday in our coffee cart do exactly the same job. And in my opinion, are way smarter product than plastic stir sticks. And I, I agree with staff that there need to be options for plastic utensils for, for those folks who live with disabilities. And so to take care of their needs, to have those products on demand, I think is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson?
Thank you. Chair, I'd like to make a more general point about the initiative that we're, that is before us here right now. We, we are addressing consumer awareness and education. This is part of the value of what we are doing here. And Mr. Wint has referred to the contamination issue that exists for the recycling totes, and that's not a small issue either. However, the, these materials, to quote from the staff report, "do not make up a significant weight or percentage of the materials ended up in the Squamish landfill, say relative to construction and demolition waste." "I'm regretting that we as a councillor are not allocating sufficient discussion time to construction and demolition issues." "GFL trucks in recent days have hauled away from one site of a larger volume than this council chamber space, presumably going to the landfill, and presumably the developer is simply paying their tipping fees." But this is something we need to address, and it needs to be in focus. "I am also aware of contracts being awarded to transport building demolition waste to landfills in other municipalities." These contracts are being awarded right now. So I think we still lack experience, routines, programs for all of what we're talking about, the, the plastics and, and single use items, but also construction and demolition waste. We're on a learning curve, but we need attention to, a balanced attention to the whole picture. And we're lacking facilities to address construction demolition waste. So it's just that I know that staff are giving this other world lots of thought and attention behind the scenes. But maybe we all need to be sure that we're giving balanced attention to what are the priorities for the landfill and the priorities for potential low-hanging fruits. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councillor Peddingill next.
Yeah, thanks. Happy to support this. I, I guess I'm hoping that this just reinforces what is already fairly strongly the public sentiment that these products don't make sense. You know, recognize that our authority is, is quite limited. So we're, we're sort of doing the best with what we, we can. And take my colleagues' points about the construction waste. I think we did recently pass some, some bylaw changes there and maybe waiting to see how those fall out. If, if there's already obvious gaps, then I would certainly be eager to, to plug the. If there's already obvious gaps, then I would certainly be eager to to plug those. I think that the tricky thing still is is our authority to do so. But I think it's a matter of tackling as many of these things as as quickly as we can. Just one other point, this whole area that we're dealing with here today is an area that I I hear younger folks in Squamish talk a lot about. And there's a lot of climate and environmental anxiety and hopelessness. And although this is a small gesture, I I think it does give some some hope and you know, people relieves a little bit of anxiety when when they can see their local government doing what they can, pushing as far as they can with the tools available to them. And so I think there's some some value in that, too. So I feel good about supporting these. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stoner.
Well, keep my comments short, as many of my colleagues have said everything. But I am supportive of this. I do think the limit to requesting the plastic utensils does sometimes present challenges regards to enforcement, but I think we're tackling that through the straws already. And so I think that this is an appropriate balance moving forward, making sure that that option is there for those who need it. But definitely prioritizing compostable or recyclable alternative instead makes good sense at this point. So thanks to staff for bringing the options forward and look forward to seeing this elected.
Thank you. I'm speaking in support of the motion. I I think this is where we, I think this strikes the the right balance. I mean, the 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 stir stick, the plastic stir stick is such a a beacon of single use decadence of ages gone by. So I think I'm happy with that. I would like to see the actual bylaws adopt similar language to the straws where a the the default utensil would be something that is compatible, whether it's, you know, bamboo or whatever that is. And the plastic is then available, made available or insured to be available for those that that require it. But that gets into specific language of next steps. So we'll we'll have that conversation when we get there. But that's my personal expectation. With that, I'll call I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, counsel, we're, thank you so much. We're now on to our lunch break. We are running about 10 minutes behind, and I don't want to shorten up our lunch. So I'm going to, we'll be in recess now, and we'll come, we'll come back at 10 after 1:00. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
One second, so make sure that we're back. Okay, we're back. We the whole round two for the afternoon session. Take it away, Mr. Russell.
Thank you very much, Counselor Herford. Through the chair, we will get started. Sorry for the slight delay. Today, we are going to address the committee of the hall. We're going to talk about the financial report for quarter three. So within the within the presentation, we talk about the quarterly report, we talk about the structure and objectives, and we also talk about the results. So I'm going to speed through the structure and objectives on the basis that I think people have seen this before, at least people in this room. So there are three sections, operating financial report, special projects, capital projects. In the operating section, we talk about comparison of the core operating areas. And the comparison is done as a percentage of budget. We compare it to this year and to the previous year. And within within that document, there's also an appendix which outlines which cost centers roll up into which core segments. It should be noted that the expenses on this report, and for that matter, on the project reports, are approximately a month behind. So realistically, although this is a month end September report for third quarter, it probably realistically includes all the expenses into August and not necessarily all of the expenses in September. And lastly, the third component of the report, or third and fourth components of the report, is our special operating and capital projects, which again outlines the various projects. And we showed the amount spent versus budget and percent of budget. We show a heat map, gives people counsel and public an understanding of which publics, which projects are on schedule, which ones are behind, which ones are completed, for example. In addition to that, provide commentary on what the variances are, and it outlines what the categorizations are for these various projects. Keeping with that, so no further ado, we'll talk to what is in said Q3 2021 financial report. So the operating results for the general fund, what we would like to stress is that all of the areas, both operating and expense, are trending within acceptable ranges in all areas. We're not seeing anything that's significantly out with respect to what we would be expecting for this year or in comparison to previous years. Should be noted that we are experiencing supply chain delays, that's both in operating costs, but more primarily associated with projects. And we are experiencing supply chain delays and external capacity constraints, which are impacting our project completion dates. So as you will see, as we move forward, we're not as far advanced as we would like to be. And we acknowledge that, and there is a problem. There are there are some things that are in inside our control, and there are some things that are outside our control that are impacting this. And within the utility funds, we'd like to note that the operating revenues and expenses, again, are trending within acceptable ranges in all areas. So with respect to the special operating projects, we would like to note that of the 90 projects, 58 are in progress and 12 are completed. There are a number of projects which which have been canceled and delayed, and there are some projects that are not started yet. With respect to our capital projects, there are 83, 53 are in progress, 20 have been completed. And we have 10 projects that are delayed, canceled, or not started. At this point, I'm going to open the floor for questions and discussion. And the vast majority of our managers are on the line. They will be able to assist in answering questions that counsel may have. I'm also here if you have other questions that I might be able to assist with.
Thank you, counsel. I'll start with Mary Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. I like how you were delegating the answering of questions before we'd even asked a question. That was clever. So I was surprised by some of the how much progress we've made on some of the projects. So I appreciate that some of this is coming from supply chain delays, that sort of thing. But I guess my concern is that this evening, we're contemplating first three readings of the budget. And for next year, we have many projects that aren't going to complete in the timeframe that we thought they were. And so how how many total projects does this add to our plate for 2022 that we weren't able to complete last year? And has that been contemplated as as we built the budget for 2022?
I will I will fire this for Salvo and attempting to address your question. Okay, I'm sure that that will open to other questions afterwards. A number of the projects that we are seeing delays in, a number of the projects that have been impacted by supply chains or permitting delays, some of the projects impacted by capacity, external capacity constraints with consultants, are multi-year projects. So as an example, we take Wanaak Sidik. We've been experiencing permitting delays with respect to that project, but that project's not expected to complete until 2022 anyway. So the fact that it's included and we've not spent the money means that we will then spend additional funds in 2022. So a number of the projects that that you are seeing in the 2021 project plan fit into that category where they are part, say, one year of a multi-year project or part of an ongoing project scheme. So for example, if you were to take another example, active transportation projects, well, active transportation projects, we spend money on every year. So the portions of the projects that are completed this year would be carried into next year and be completed at that point. So on a number of these fronts, although our numbers do appear to be somewhat low at this time of the year, we've looked at at the November year-to-date figures. And what we're seeing is a pattern which tends to repeat itself, which is our fourth quarter is project spending heavy in which that they get everything wrapped up, and they're going full speed come summer, and they just keep going. And if we get good weather and good conditions, they can spend lots of money in the fall. So we think that the numbers will improve dramatically between what you're seeing in the third quarter and what you will see at year end, number one. Number two, do we anticipate that this is going to dramatically impact our ability to complete projects as we move into the 2022 financial plan cycle? No, we don't. If there is a change in the timing of the financial plan this year, obviously, we brought it forward to December. So what we're anticipating is that our managers will be issuing RFPs in January, reviewing the RFPs in February, and starting projects in March. So if they can manage that timeframe, that should dovetail reasonably well with the continuation of existing projects and having those existing projects wrap up in Q1 of 2022. So although there is some overlap, we anticipate that most of the project work that's committed for single projects in 2021 will be completed by the end of the first quarter. And as a result, should not impact their their ability to stay on top of their 2022 projects as they can start their 2022 project process in the timeframe when they're finishing the existing projects. So I hope that answers your question.
But we expect the same, do we expect the same supply chain constraints and the same external resource constraints in 2022?
I think in some areas, my understanding, what I'm reading, is that we're seeing the supply constraint should be slowing down. We should be getting back to a more normal supply chain atmosphere. Businesses, not just ours, but other businesses have been able to make adjustments to the delays in the supply chain and source materials, et cetera, from other sources. So I think that the supply chain issues will be less problematic, let's say. Might still see some price inflation, which has been problematic. But on the supply chain, I don't think so. On the external resource constraints that we're seeing, our consultants not being able to deliver on projects due to their inability to, their capacity constraints realistically, their ability to keep their staff, you know, keep themselves fully staffed, I guess is the best way to put it. That may well be a constraint that will continue into 2022. And I really can't say, and I guess in the private sector, they have the abilities to do different things than we do in the public sector with respect to resourcing and retention, let's say.
So I thought I would see a note in here about inflation. And so I guess what I'm wondering, because we know some of our projects went over budget. But I don't really see a nod to inflation. So I'm wondering if the fact that projects have been delayed is masking the increase in costs.
I can suggest that there have been two or three projects where it's noted that the project has been delayed because inflation in costs has put the estimates over the existing budget. And so basically, they delayed the project and brought the project back in 2022 with with an increase in budget to accommodate the increase in costs. So clearly, that has occurred in some instances. But it's the the true, to try to to try to, let's say, pull out the true impact of inflation through 150 projects is really, really difficult because, you know, I don't see enough of the detailed numbers and and estimates coming back from RFPs, et cetera, to be able to compile statistics of that sort.
No, but you do say that you think our expenses are on track for the end of the third quarter. But on track with the whole budget or on track because we just shoveled a whole bunch of expenses into 2022? And and I guess that's the part that I'm having trouble distinguishing is, are we really on track? Because there's a whole bunch of projects we thought we'd be further along on. So I'm just trying to understand that better.
Okay, so I I should differentiate there somewhat. I think that the on track statement that we're making with respect to the operating results is the core operating results, which do include projects. But to be fair, the core operating results are around 40 plus million dollars in expenditures. Of that $40 million, about 10% is projects. So the projects clearly are behind, but we're saying the the remainder of our expenditure budgets within the organization appear to be tracking on target and on time that we wouldn't anticipate.
I have a few more questions, but I'm happy to pass.
Counsel? Counselor French, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. On the last page of the report is a list of projects. And I recognize all of them and recall having some amount of discussion or knowledge of all. But for the very last one, which has a description of Pia and Pitlochry Active Transportation Project at $57,000 and some change. The this list is is this projects that have already been paid for? Or are these upcoming? I'm not totally clear on that.
I think you're referring to Attachment four or enclosure four on the report. That's our procurement summary. So it would reflect projects for which RFPs have been issued and contracts signed in the third quarter. So I I hope that the names of the sorry, I guess what I'm trying to say, I I would hope that there's a fairly clear line between what was being bought and what project it's associated with. And unfortunately, I don't have that page in front of me, so I I can't comment on that specifically.
Okay, so so with that, I'm thinking maybe this is the speed tables on Highlands Way North, and the project description doesn't line up super well with the project. So is there a staff member who could quickly and easily shed some light on what this project is?
I'm sure there is.
Yeah, hi, Jesse here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Morewood.
Yeah, thank you. Jesse Morewood, Capital Projects Manager. The Pia and Pitlochry is effectively a an active transportation project, one of the one of the few that that we've been working on. It is effectively a new bus stop, sidewalks, curving, crosswalk, so that pedestrians can can cross and get to Pia and and the bus stop there. So we started that project. It's been tendered. It's partially complete. However, we ran into weather issues, and so we're delaying the completion of the project until next year.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor French. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Now that I've noted Jesse Morewood is with us, Chair, I wonder whether I'm able able to ask a question regarding two projects I believe he may be affiliated with. And that is corridor trail. These are items 13 and 14 under master plan projects. And the key word in the description I'm curious about is corridor trail expansions. And a little bit of background to my question, a few years ago, there was a line item in the budget, a little bit differently worded, and the price was a little bit differently worded, and the price was different too. And it was expansion, linear expansions southward to Stowamis Chief Park. And there was considerable community discussion of that because there are many priorities for linking up neighborhoods with trail systems. And so I'm just wanting some clarity as to what expansion refers to with respect to corridor trail. Is it a linear expansion? If you may be able to give some background to those two projects, I take it they're uh, well, they're side by side here. I'm not sure. They're, oh, phase two, phase one and phase two. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the question through the chair. Um, that is a DCC project in that we identified a number of of upgrades um, on the corridor trail that we wanted to achieve um, over over a period of time. And so again, these, that was kind of a line item in our inner development cost charges um, that we wanted to be able to tap in at certain times. Um, as far as the projects this year, they're not ex- trail expansion projects. They're they're effectively trail improvement projects, so they're the first part of that title. Um, for the first one, um, P fourteen portal improvements, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's the lighting project that we're doing between the Adventure Center and Finch Avenue. Uh, the status of that project is that we've, we've basically got all the the underground in and the light bases in. We're waiting for B C Hydro um, approvals permits. Um, we've been waiting for about four months and and we're still waiting. Uh, the second project, the corridor trail improvements, um, expansion phase two is again a lighting project. So we're we're basically upgrading the the corridor trail to an all ages and abilities lit trail. Um, so that's a section just south of Mamquand Road that comes to that. Um, very much the same issue there. We we've done a lot of the underground. There is some more utility and basis that has to go in, but we're waiting for B C Hydro permitting to be able to have the next step. Um, the per- the permitting is needed for the connection to draw from the the B C Hydro um, uh, transformers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morewood. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thanks. Just a small clarification, the Cedar Sky E V Network Expansion. I'm assuming this is the, um, I think it was a B C Hydro project for six high-speed chargers throughout the corridor, if I'm remembering correctly. Uh, i- if that's the same project, I thought we had already been successful. It it sounds like not. Um, so just confirmation, is that the project? And do we have a sense of of one we do expect to know?
Thank you for the question. Uh, Ian Pickett's, Manager of Sustainability and Climate Change, uh, through the chair. Uh, unfortunately, we haven't received um, notification of whether or not we've uh, re- received this funding. So that, so it's, it's put it, put it a year back into, starting in twenty twenty-two. I have reached out to them and um, they've assured us that that we will, we will know in twenty twenty-one. So hopefully any day now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And I do have the right project?
Correct, yeah. It is um, uh, as I actually for uh, fast chargers and sixteen level-two chargers through the community, but spread over four years.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Those those numbers could change with costs, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, my question's a bit more general, I I suppose. Um, Mary Elliott was um, line of questioning was along the same, the same lines. And I'm I'm curious about sort of, external capacity was mentioned. Um, and I I know that there's also, we can also run up against our internal capacity to deal with these external um, entities that that require various levels of of uh, management or oversight or or what have you. So I'm curious about, I I really appreciate having these um, quarterly reports and it helps. I find it quite helpful um, to understand where these projects sit at. Um, but with this new reporting, uh, which I'll still call new because we're early-ish days, uh, and the earlier timeline for the budgeting process, am I right to assume that that this has been helpful in identifying where those capacity issues are going to be and help scale? Um, you know, the the budget that we've been been working on for for the coming year?
Sorry to jump in there on my speedy response there, turned on my mic before you finished. Um, the the answer is yes. Uh, they they have been informative. So for example, um, if you were to look at the numbers of the budget in in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, the operating projects were around four million dollars, give or take, maybe a little less, three and a half to four million dollars. And we hadn't been able, we've been running into internal constraints more so than external constraints. And we hadn't been able to deliver on completion of those projects. So as a result of that, and as a result of of the increased stability of us to to know where the numbers are, um, we were directed uh, through CLT to bring forward a slimmed-down uh, special operating project package for the twenty twenty-two budget. So you'll note that in twenty twenty-two, we have approximately forty special operating projects for one point five million dollars as opposed to roughly twice that number for three point six million dollars in twenty twenty-one. So yes, we're using both the reporting process and the and the additional tools that we have available through the TTP project to assist ourselves and our ability to budget better. So um, when we, when we can see things occurring through the numbers, uh, management's able to use that to to direct, uh, provide better direction, let's say. Executive team CLT is able to use that to provide better direction to our managers.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that explanation. That's along the lines of what I assumed was happening, but I appreciate the uh, the reply. Um, that's it for me, except to note that page seventy-eight and seventy-nine are the same. And I, in the report, there was a duplication of the page and it took me going back and forth a few times to identify that, but uh, keep us on our, on our toes. Um, Mary Elliott, did you want to go again?
Thank you. Um, I'm having difficulty interpreting uh, the explanation, planning to complete in twenty twenty-two. And so there's a few places where it caught my eye is active transportation, which we budget for every year. And we have an active transportation plan, and I feel like that should just roll out. Uh, the other one was transit stop infrastructure improvements. We're always putting a hundred thousand towards that. Only eleven percent was spent as of of September thirtieth. Uh, the water meter installation, that's four percent complete. And and next to all of these, it just says, planning to complete in twenty twenty-two. But I don't understand what that means. I feel like these are ongoing every-year projects. What is it that we still need to plan for? We've had three quarters of a year. Shouldn't they say something about execution rather than planning?
Um, through the chair, if I may, uh, Jesse Morewood again. Um, maybe I'll address those individually. Um, the active transportation um, component, there's been a bunch of projects that we have completed, um, such as Pemberton, um, part of Mamquand Road. So I think that's one of the 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 um, pieces that's being carried forward into next year. Um, so we are going to complete it next year, certainly, uh, Mamquand Road. We started, we ran into weather issues because of the um, challenges with another project getting going on 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 Mamquand Road. Um, there's also a bunch of designing stuff that was started last year, for example, um, Hans Way South and North, which which took some time. Um, so we will complete those projects in twenty twenty-two. Um, I think uh, the update, the quarterly update maybe could have been a bit more precise. Um, lastly, regarding the water meters, um, you know, that that was a tough project this year. We took a long time to get the design um, off the, off the, um, sorry, one second. Sure. My apologies, I must go and there was this, give me some uh, some microphone pointers. Um, sorry, the last project, the water meters project. And um, that project was, we did hope to get it completed this year. Um, our design wasn't complete until about um, a month and a half ago, and so we had to do, go through a tender period. Um, that project has been awarded to a contractor. Um, the contractor has ordered materials and we will be complete that project in twenty twenty-two.
I I would just add, Chris Wickham, Director of Engineering. Um, I I think maybe uh, part of the issue is that we didn't put enough detail in those, in those reports and and we can do better. Um, but just, I I wasn't sure, in your final, final sentence of of the question asked about why, why we'd still be planning, I I guess uh, um, the the language was a little bit loose there, but we're, you know, designing, tendering, and will be complete in twenty twenty-two might, might be more precise.
Yeah, I appreciate the explanations, and I think that's important in our quarterly reporting that that the explanation, this is all about transparency, both to council and to the community. And so um, I don't want to be in a position where uh, I'm trying to interpret the explanation because I know, I know just in speaking with with folks that we're further along on some of these projects. So it's important, I think, that our our explanations uh, reflect that. Um, the other thing um, that I wanted to ask about is why some of the vehicle purchases were so far behind. Some of them are just being tendered now, whereas they were approved towards the beginning of the year.
Uh, through the chairs, Bill from Fire, I can answer for two of those vehicles. I imagine the answer is the same for most of them. Um, where is supply shortage for vehicles? Uh, there are no vehicles for us to purchase right now. Um, it's relating to chips and shipping.
Thanks, Chief Stoner. Um, so just in addition to making sure our explanations are a little more clear next time, um, another suggestion to make the reports uh, more helpful to council is that each quarter we report how many projects are in progress, completed or canceled or changed. And it would be great to have the comparison to the previous quarter in the text, so we don't have to go and search back. So just so we can see that progress throughout the year as it changes, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any, any further questions? Okay, we're looking for a motion to receive. Moved by Counselor Race, second by Counselor French. Opposed, if any. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Shall we take a five-minute recess to get the next presentation set up? Okay, so we're gonna go uh, at one, call a six-minute recess, one fifty-five. See you back shortly. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back to Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, December fourteenth. Um, we're on to item um, item four, subsection four, uh, which is a Squamish uh, oceanfront uh, B C R rezoning. Take it away.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Chair, Mayor and Council. My name is Jesse Fletcher, planner here with the District of Squamish. And today I'm here to introduce an application to reason the lands known as the B C R Triangle Lands uh, to a new comprehensive development one hundred zone to align with the oceanfront sub-area plan. I will also introduce a minor amendment to the comprehensive development sixty-nine zone to adjust the parking requirements for Block B. Sorry. Uh, so staff is here today to ask counsel for feedback on the C A C offer, the civic use proposal, parking on the B C R lands, uh, parking on Block B, uh, the employment area across the oceanfront and on childcare. So the oceanfront is an interesting situation compared to most of the lands in the district. Uh, while the lands are considered within the official community plan, uh, they are specifically considered within uh, the sub-area plan, which specifically contemplates the future development of this land in a more detailed fashion than the O C P does for other land in general. Uh, the sub-area plan covers the entire geographical area of the oceanfront peninsula, which you can see from the top image on the slide. The portion that is zoned C D sixty-nine, uh, that is the entire portion on the lower image except for the pink cutout, um, which was going to be my first attempt at an animation in a while. Didn't work. Apologies. Um, that portion is, so the portion without the pink is zoned C D sixty-nine. And that entire portion is locked into a phase development agreement that expires in twenty thirty-five. Uh, the areas that are not captured by the zoning are lands that were, uh, and so that all, that still are under different ownership at the time of the P D A and rezoning process. Uh, the oceanfront developer has acquired the lands known as the B C R Triangle, and that's the land in pink on the lower image uh, and are now seeking to rezone that land to generally align with the sub-area plan. Uh, so noting all this for several reasons. Uh, the first is that the evaluation of rezoning this land is against the policy context of the sub-area plan, which provides extensive details about what and how this land should develop. Development of the oceanfront has not followed the vision of the uh, sub-area plan to a T. So that, for example, the road alignment has changed from what was originally envisioned. But generally speaking, it does still very much guide development here. Uh, the second is that uh, where the proposed zoning deviates from the sub-area plan and O C P amendment is not usually required unless a proposed zoning did not align with the sub-area plan, subland use designation. Uh, the oceanfront sub-area plan has specific clauses identifying under which can considerations zoning may deviate from the plan. And finally, we're not rezoning this land to the C D sixty-nine zone. And that's because the C D sixty-nine zone is locked into an earlier version of the zoning bylaw that lives within the phased development agreement. Uh, the lands here will be subject to the current zoning bylaw of the day uh, and will not be governed by a phased development agreement. So the larger image on the slide shows the existing zoning of the lands under consideration. The lands are largely zoned I three industrial, but the eastern half of the southern strip is loaned, uh, zoned I five long sort. The smaller image gives you another contextual shot of the context of these lands, uh, vis-à-vis the rest of the oceanfront. With the C D sixty-nine zone lands, uh, they're yellow and the lands to be zoned are in blue. Uh, while those lands are still under other ownership in white. The lands are proposed to be zoned comprehensive development zone one hundred. And when they do eventually redevelop, they will be subject to development permit area one, development permit area two, and development permit area twelve. Uh, this is Schedule G of the Oceanfront Subarea Plan, which designates land use. Uh, they're prescribed land use for the areas, uh, which is a general purpose of the O C P. We ask the applicant to superimpose the land use designations on the parcels being rezoned to help add some clarity. Uh, note that the road alignments here have changed, as you can see. Uh, the lands that are supposed to be rezoned, uh, so they're outlined in black, fall within the Mamquand Residential. Uh, that's a portion to the southeast uh, Civic, which is the maroon portion, and interior residential, which is the yellow portion. Block J is designated civic use in the sub-area plan. Policy identifies civic use designated locations as the ideal area for civic uses, community amenity facility uses, and theater uses. There are three primary locations for civic use on the oceanfront. Staff propose zoning this site for civic use, childcare and affordable housing. No other residential uses would be permitted. The applicant has indicated an openness to site more than the agreed-upon number of childcare spaces at this location. However, consultation with staff experts on childcare indicate that it is preferable to have several smaller facilities than one larger facility. Furthermore, the existence of a large childcare facility at this location precludes the district from pursuing any other kind of civic use at this location. S- staff are specifically seeking council direction in the civic use aspect on Block J. Staff also note that it is proposed that the zoning at this location be permitted to go to twelve stories in the event that the fire department has the capacity to respond to this height. Uh, this language is used consistently throughout the oceanfront zone in certain blocks. The additional height, if permitted, would be used to accommodate an increase in affordable housing. Uh, the D lots are proposed to be zoned to align with their land use designation Mamquand Waterfront Residential, uh, which is envisioned to be a more urban waterfront neighborhood with direct views of the chief. This is intended to be an active, vibrant waterfront environment with apartments and stacked townhomes. The land use designation permits taller buildings with smaller footprints. The land use designation permits taller buildings with smaller footprints. As you can see on the slide, the oceanfront developer foresees these parcels to be joined with existing CD 69 zoned parcels that are currently adjacent. Zoning between the two is very consistent, allowing for buildings to straddle the zones. The buildings that straddle the zones will need to ensure they are meeting the zoning regulations of each zone separately, as use density cannot be transferred between zones. This area of the oceanfront, Block G, was envisioned to bridge residential between the existing downtown and the oceanfront employment areas to encourage a live-work relationship on the oceanfront. As with the previous slide, the developer envisions these lots as being combined with lots zoned CD 69. The notable difference here is the proposed density of G2 and G1 are higher than the adjacent lots. The buildings in these locations will need to respect the prescribed density on the portion of the zone they fall into. The density will not be able to be transferred between the two. There are several incentives written into this proposed zone as well as a reduction in parking. The proposed zone has a height bonus proposed for buildings that are constructed with mass timber at a rate of one meter per story to account for larger floor systems than conventional building systems. Green roofs and renewable energy systems are proposed to be permitted to exceed the height, which would permit the use of solar panels on roofs. Block coverage is reduced for parques at grade that permit public access above the parque, and this isn't to incentivize public access to courtyard space within buildings. The oceanfront sub-area plan has specific language that states that parking should align with downtown standards. Currently, the oceanfront parking standards are the district's higher standards that are applied across the district outside of the downtown. The applicant proposes reducing their parking requirements for apartment use below the district standard, but above the downtown standard. It would still include visitor parking, which the downtown does not. The commercial requirement would be the equivalent of the downtown requirement at two stalls per 100 square meters, where currently the requirement varies from an average of 1.1 to 2.2. The applicant proposes to meet the existing CAC policy and provide 20% of new units as market rental. The applicant would like to provide in-kind parks and active transportation amenities, the types of, the amounts of which are posted on the table on the slide. Staff will review proposed onsite amenities and return to council with recommendations for park and active transportation contributions. The affordable housing portion is proposed to be 10% of new units or 66 anticipated units. Staff have recommended a higher amount, given the size of the project is significant, and there is currently no requirement on the existing oceanfront lands for any affordable or market rental housing. The forthcoming CAC policy is targeting 15% of units as affordable. Other items that staff are seeking to secure include childcare space, employment minimums, a space for a small grocery store, a neighborhood commercial pocket to reflect the location identified in the sub-area plan, community agriculture use in the courtyard of G2, an industry covenant for noise, a no gas covenant, and the CACs. On the matter of childcare, no childcare has been secured on the oceanfront to date. Using the best data available to staff, which is the 2016 census data, we have calculated a need of 97 spaces across the oceanfront and 30 spaces on the BCR land. This is largely the result of the type of housing, apartment on the oceanfront, which typically has a lower child occupancy rate. The difficulty in creating adequate outdoor amenity space to meet requirements is one of the significant hurdles to providing space, which is why the applicant has suggested providing it on the civic block. Staff are reluctant to dedicate the entire block to childcare as it reduces the ability to provide other civic uses in the space. The feedback from childcare providers has also been that childcare spaces above 30 to 50 children provide less quality space than smaller spaces. Staff continue to talk with the developer about the possibility of securing additional spaces across the oceanfront, but the developer has expressed several hurdles, including outdoor space requirements, parking requirements and property taxes, which get passed on to the end user. With the recommendation, staff are specifically seeking council feedback on whether childcare on the oceanfront as a whole should be tied to this rezoning, whether there's an appetite to pursue incentives for childcare, and whether the number of spaces appear adequate at this time. This ties into the civic use recommendation, as staff could through securing the entire block as childcare space at council direction. In terms of parking, staff are also proposing a reduction in parking for employment space for Block B. This is the block that's outlined in pink on your screen. This is the primary employment zone. Current parking standards vary, but the applicant is proposing a reduction to 1.8 stalls per 100 square meters, which is slightly lower than the downtown standard of two stalls per 100 square meters. But it has no impact on the overall provision of residential stalls in the area. Parking policies in the SAP are supportive of reducing the requirement here, and this block does land on the primary transportation corridor into the oceanfront. The relaxation of parking standards in this location allows the developer to construct an additional 50,000 square feet of office space on Block B. This would generate an additional 200 jobs, which would bring the potential jobs to dwelling unit ratio to one to one in a resident-to-job ratio of 2.09. This will require an amendment to the phase development agreement to update the zoning, but does not change the body of the agreement. The amenities and length of the agreement will not change. Change in the phase development agreement is necessary because it is within that document that their version of the zoning bylaw lives. The current zoning bylaw does not apply to the oceanfront. So to inform the community, per policy, the application was posted to the district's development showcase, and two development signs have been posted at the site. Staff have not received any comments or requests for a public information meeting, but given the scale of the project, the developer will be holding a public information meeting at staff requests in early January 2022. Staff will continue working on the project following committee, including working through council feedback with the applicant. The applicant is working to pursue a traffic impact assessment for the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. Staff intend to return to council with the traffic impact assessment results of the public information meeting and with any changes to a committee meeting prior to recommending consideration of any readings. So today, staff recommend that council receive the staff report and provide feedback on the CAC offer, civic use proposal, parking on the BCR lands, parking on Block B, employment area across the oceanfront and childcare, and that council directs staff to resolve any outstanding issues prior to bringing the rezoning back to a future committee meeting. Thank you, and I can answer any questions?
Thank you so much. Counsel, before we launch into questions, I'd like to remind you that staff's outlined the specific areas that we're looking for feed, for feedback, as ever, we're can go, can go past that, but I want to make sure that those are, are addressed, so. Counsel, questions? Counselor Anderson, take it away.
Ms. Fletcher, the report presented addresses the concern of fire department capacity to, to address a fire in a, in a multi-story building, eight stories to 12, for example. But another issue with tall buildings on this property is the liquefaction risk. This is all dredged up Delta silt, gravel and so forth. There's been extensive geotechnical studies of the oceanfront peninsula. Where are we at? Where is the project opponent at in assessing the issue of liquefaction risk for tall buildings? I do take it that they're interested in exploring wood construction, which has a much lighter footprint for foundation needs and so on, but the issue of liquefaction risk is, is, is something I'm curious about. And for you to take away or to address as you may be able to.
Thank you for that question. Through the chair, I don't have an answer to that one. I'm not sure if Dave Marrow is on the call, but he might be able to better answer that, and there he is.
Good afternoon, members of council. Counselor Anderson, to, through the chair. My, I'm unaware as to whether the developer has been investigating how to mitigate the liquefaction risk for tall buildings taller than what is currently allowed under the zoning. I do know that they have done geotechnical assessments for the buildings that are both existing, the new carbon engineering facility and proposed, the presentation center, for example, to assess the, the geotechnical risk. And those risks have been able to be mitigated through standard ground improvement techniques that are, that have been already completed and are ongoing, so. To answer your question directly, I don't know whether they've assessed the risk for higher buildings, but I do know that for the buildings that are currently planned, they can be, those risks can be mitigated through standard techniques.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see another? There you go. Counsel Penningill?
Yeah, thanks. A couple of questions. Do we have a decent map? I'm sorry if I missed it, that lays out height versus location, height allowance versus location. In the report, it looked like significantly pieces of this are currently limited to one story, I, I thought I read, and they're proposing 12. That may not be the whole area, but I, I thought I read in one of the pages that sections were currently limited to one story. And so I'm just wondering if there's more of a complete picture about, you know, do we have pockets of 12-story proposed, or is there sort of one area that's going to be higher, and then the rest sort of transitions down to lower stories throughout the peninsula?
Through the chair, thanks for that question. I don't have a map as part of this presentation. It would be within the sub-area plan, one of the schedules. The civic use block was designated to be no higher than one to two stories. This is a portion of the plan that if the uses are consistent with the vision of the oceanfront can be varied without making an amendment to the sub-area plan. There's a provision in section 7.6 that allows for this. Given that the civic use portion is proposed for affordable housing at this time, staff are recommending a height increase here to allow for that use in this location. Of course, if council has other comments, we can certainly take that back to the applicant.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my other question was understanding this no gas covenant, which, on the surface, I'm quite enthusiastic about. But I, I think the report mentioned something to the effect that restaurants and other food, or sorry, other gas-dependent businesses would be excluded, which to me sounds like the opposite of a no gas covenant, and, you know, my understanding is the gas industries are lobbied heavily to get the restaurant industry to adopt gas, but it's actually not a requirement, that you slightly adjust how you cook, but you don't need it for the most part to cook. And so I'm a bit curious and concerned about how we are defining gas-dependent businesses.
Thanks for that question. Through the chair, the covenant has up and dropped at this point in time. This is the language that was proposed by the developer. What we've contemplated is that we could go in two different directions. Through their early research into leasing, the developer has indicated that there are certain leases who are only interested in facilities that are serviced by gas, food and beverage specifically is what they've encountered. And so the two considerations we've, we've thought about for this covenant would be that it could be at staff direction or discretion, or it is something that could go to council. Or if council does not want to consider that clause, of course, we can bring that back to the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Reese.
Thank you. Just on that point alone, I have had restaurateurs tell me that they insist on using gas. And I went through that with the first phase development up in Whistler, where they actually had to put a propane system in from a common source to accommodate the restaurants, which was ultimately replaced by natural gas when they ran the line up there, so. Notwithstanding our goals, there are some significant industry prerogatives around, around using gas. But that wasn't why I had my hand up. I'm curious about the affordable housing and the proposal to have the entire affordable housing in one building, possibly on the civic block. And I'm just wondering if staff thought about, that to me doesn't seem consistent with the way we've dealt with other parts of the community, where we generally, I think, tried to sprinkle it around. And I'm wondering if there's a reason that staff would recommend that if you are recommending it. Or have we considered spreading around through the rest of the development somehow?
Through the chair, thanks for that question, and I don't have a great answer on that one. It's what the developer has proposed at this time. In terms of other uses that could go on that property, it would be limited to only a civic use, something that would have to come at the district's direction and leasing, in that if it's a community use, we would need to get involved in some way. The affordable units would be managed by, so there there are trade-offs either way. I don't have a great answer for it, other than it's what they were proposed and affordable housing units in, on the oceanfront don't exist at this point in time, so. We're open to the proposal.
Yep. Well, just to come back to that. But when you say that on that particular block we're restricted to civic uses, aren't we rezoning? Is there something that compels us to do that? Can't we, in this process that we're going through now, change that to be whatever we want?
Through the chair, in this situation, because the sub-area plan, it's a land, it's a subland use designation for the oceanfront, this, this specific block falls on the civic use, so they would need to do an, an OCP amendment at this point in time, where we would direct them to if we wanted them to rezone to something other than civic use.
We often seem to amend the OCP when we do some rezoning. Is it, is it, if we thought it was necessary, would that be something that's duly realistic at this point? If we felt we had to change that?
Through the chair, the policy in the sub-area plan directs us to be civic use, so from, from the planning's perspective, we aim to bring land in compliance with the underlying policy, and in this case, it's a sub-area plan. And the sub-area plan designates about 2% of the land overall as civic use. So it's, it is supportive of keeping it as that from a planning perspective. It's a fairly small proportion of the lands overall. However, again, at council direction, we can certainly explore changing the land use designation.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. Any other questions? Maryla?
So I'm just going to blend some comments in with questions, but one of the things that several developers have done is create a 3D model. And I think we're getting to the point where, with this development, given some of the amendments we've made to the PDA, and now this huge parcel of land that we're considering rezoning, and the heights that are being contemplated, and I think it would be useful for us to have a 3D model of what it looks like with 12, eight, six, and maybe a few variations on a theme there. One of the things that I, I don't really understand about the, the civic block is just south of there, we talk about views of the chief, right? We're going to put residential there, and then we're going to create this big wall of a building of potentially 12 stories just up the way, which I would think is still a view of the chief. But anyway, I could be wrong. But I, I think having a sense, council having a sense of what this looks like and its relationship to CD 69 zone, so including the massing that is proposed for the areas adjacent, and getting a sense of that would be very, very helpful in moving this quite complex rezoning along. You mentioned in your comments that we can assume a lower child count because there's more apartments. But in fact, given the affordability issues in our community, we have many more families that are living in apartments that would like to be in ground-oriented housing, but can't afford it. So I think we have to just be very careful about what assumptions we make in terms of how many kids might appear in the oceanfront. I was going to ask. We know transit's contemplated for this area, but can we link the introduction of transit to occupancy of some of these areas? So we're talking about waiving, or lowering parking restrictions for this parcel, potentially lowering for Block B, but that doesn't work unless there's transit. So I'd like to understand when this comes back to another committee of the whole, how that relationship with transit fits in. That would be helpful. I think I have the same concerns as Counselor Race around why we're not co-mingling that affordable housing. I also note that while we contemplated changing the wording for the Hunter Place rezoning about gross floor area and three-bedroom units, the OCP language is actually 20% of units are larger size. And so, I don't know. I would like us to go back to the OCP wording, I think, unless staff have a rationale for, for that being different here. Are we going to suggest that the ownership of the affordable housing gets handed off to our new housing society? Has that been discussed?
Through the chair, it has not been discussed at this point in time.
And this is a timely discussion for this large rezoning? And my other question is, there were, you know, the Sailing Center is designated, it has a spot. It's one of the civic uses. There's an art center sort of idea contemplated somewhere, but it's not clear to me where that is. And so I know one of your questions today is the civic, civic use in parcel J. But I think until I understand where the other parcels are potentially and how this fits together, it's difficult to contemplate specific uses. But I'm not sure childcare should limit what we can do on, on this parcel J. So I'm just, would it be possible to bring it back with a better sense of this, these, these other civic uses that were outlined in the subarea plan?
Through the chair, if I can address the, just provide some context for the child occupancy departments. And then I can address the civic use portion. We're using numbers from the census, which had the occupancy in 2016 of apartment dwellings. At the time, there were much fewer apartment dwellings than there are now. So we know that number will change, but it is the best information that is available to us. And that's how we determined sort of a calculator at this point in time. So we're working with best information available. But we do anticipate that it will go up with the next census. In terms of the civic uses, this one's a little bit trickier. The only other civic use location, there's two. So there's part of the parcel that is south of where the civic use is contemplated here, that is still under other ownership. And then there is a portion that's located adjacent to the oceanfront park. But there's no agreement in place to ensure that ever gets built. So there's no guarantee that anything will happen there at this point in time. And so that's, there was no agreement in the phase development agreement, which is why the civic use piece is very vague. And staff have, have no proposal at this point in time, other than the entire ground floor of the civic use likely should not just be for childcare space. But if we were to pursue something with the developer, we would need some direction from council towards what that might look like. We don't have policy, other than it should be a community amenity facility or a theater in the subarea plan.
But I suppose if I was wanting a big rezoning, that I might want to talk about those other civic uses and designating those, if council had questions about them. I just want to be clear. So when you were talking about childcare, we could still put a childcare facility for 30 children in the civic block and still have room left over. So that's workable.
Through the chair, yes, correct. The larger number of children, of course, takes more floor area, which limits other uses. With 30, it's still reasonable to have, to co-locate another use at that location.
One of the things, though, that we're asking of other developers with large developments is to fit in childcare. And they're doing it on their market-based land. But this developer is saying to us, well, you should take it on your civic block. And I think it's important to be consistent. So do you see in these other zones that there's potentially room? They seem to have large courtyards, some of them, where we could incorporate either additional childcare to what's in the civic block or move the childcare to the other blocks?
Through the chair, we are certainly exploring childcare opportunities in other blocks in the existing CD 69 zone with the developer. And we can certainly explore additional opportunities on the BCR land rezoning. One of the, again, the constraints that the developer has expressed is just in terms of the outdoor space and the indoor space requirements. But we, we are having an active conversation for the rest of the oceanfront lands. And there's nothing to preclude us from having that same conversation on the BCR lands.
And I just want to understand the, the parcade and the at-grade piece. So is it too related, or can you talk about just, do these lots all contemplate sort of one layer of parking below ground? And then the, the actual at-grade is, will be sort of the front door of everything? That's why we're contemplating that parcades don't incorporate, parcades that you can put public space on top of aren't part of the lot coverage? Is that what I'm trying to imagine? They're going below ground so that we can use the top?
Through the chair, in this location with the parking requirements and the density, I believe that they're looking at one, one story of below-grade parcade. And then in some situations, there will be an above-story parcade, which will be wrapped, like we see in the downtown, by buildings. And above that will be a courtyard. Even if the parcade was below grade, it still counts towards lot coverage because it is a structure, which is why they're seeking the exemption from lot coverage if it is activated at grade or above the parcade, which might be one story above grade. And we have worked to ensure that there'd also be public access from the street to those courtyards. And then again, public access on the courtyard secured with a statutory right-of-way.
So some of them wouldn't be at street level? They'd be one level up?
Through the chair, my understanding from the developer at this point is that some of them may be one story up above grade as well. So there would be two stories of parking, one below and one at grade.
Okay, I'm going to digest. Thanks.
Thank you. Did I have Counselor Race? Yep.
Thank you. Well, just on that point, what do we call grade? Because my understanding is today is one grade. The property has to be, generally speaking, filled by something over two meters, I believe. And so there's going to be a new grade. And is the parking below the existing grade? Or is it just kind of above the existing grade, but below the final grade? Does that make sense?
Through the chair, yes, I hope my answer makes sense as well. The parking will be calculated to the new grade, so it will be below the new fill to bring that in. And then, and then the second story, I believe, will be partially above grade, where there is, the rest of the oceanfront, where parking is contemplated to be one story grade. I believe it does exceed the grade by 0.6 meters in some location. But I do believe Mr. Marrow has popped up here and might have a better answer for you.
Through the chair, I'm not necessarily better, but, um, so the parcades would essentially be built slightly above, generally slightly above the existing non-filled grade. There's, there's a lot of geotechnical work and assessment of groundwater tables, seasonal fluctuations in that to determine where the bottom of that parking structure does go. And that also considers some sea level rise. But essentially, if you were to consider the existing elevation of the ocean front before any of the fill is placed, that's roughly where the bottom of the parking structure would be constructed. And then the fill would be, you know, roughly similar to one story of parking structure. So then the finished grade of the road that has been filled would match the first story of the building, if that makes sense.
Perfect sense. That's what I would have done, too. So, but I actually had my hand up for another discussion about the civic block. And we had a discussion, oh, it's been a few weeks ago now, maybe a few months ago now, about the amenity policy and what we might like to see in it. And it hasn't come back to council yet, and so there's been no determination. But some of the discussion around amenities was just more open space. In other words, taking valuable land and not putting anything on it. And so I'm wondering, when we look at this rezoning, have we accounted for green space within the rezoning area? And if so, how much? And the next discussion we've had, which was as recent as this morning, was around recreation facilities in Brennan Park. But different recreation facilities around the district, sort of like little branch recreation facilities of some type or the other. And so I'm wondering if we've considered something like that? Or are there other recreation facilities or community center-type facilities in the oceanfront area? Or is this perhaps an opportunity for one?
Thank you. Through the chair. So to answer your first question, in terms of green space in this rezoning, again, because of this subarea plan, we haven't contemplated green space beyond what the subarea plan contemplated. And in this location, there is contemplated to be a park to the east on lands that are under different ownerships. So a second smaller park at this point in time, which precluded us from looking into an additional park here as well as the public access to the green space within the courtyards. The terms of the second question and civic use, there are, to my knowledge, no recreation facilities on the ocean front contemplated beyond what might be contemplated in the education institution blocks. And that would come at the behest of any institutions that decided to pursue development at that location. So it's certainly something we could pursue at council direction.
I'd like to sort of add my, my voice to the, the need for that physical space modeling. Hard to understand how these things are interacting as the complexities. It's not getting simpler. It's getting more complex as, as we go. And perhaps it is the right direction. But some of the drawings that sort of showed where structures would be in, weren't to the maximum scale of allowable on those, on those, or proposed on the, on the adjacent properties. So I'd like to get an overall understanding of that so we can really contemplate the, the potential sort of cumulative effect of, of that. So, and I think this might be a good time to, to, to do that as some other pieces are starting to sort of crystallize what we're, what we're getting towards. The, the civic use proposal, I would like to see more, this, to me, they're, I mean, it's related to the childcare item F on your, on your list. I would like to see more, and maybe an additional space for the, for the childcare. I know that it needs to all come from, that all of the requirements for that area should really be met in our civic space. The parking, I think, is workable. But the, again, for understanding when the area will sort of become practical, practically serve it, practical to service with transit, I guess, is the, would be one of the, the things to really understand that. And given there was some discussion around, sort of at the beginning, having more parking available because there won't be right away the ability to have the bus down in, in some other discussions that we had in a, in the area. So I think that it's important to, to have a good understanding of the, of the, I guess, the timelines or the certain markers that need to be passed, whether it's a population density of the zone, of the overall area or completion of a certain, a building on a certain parcel. I'm not too tied to which, but there should be a mechanism there clearly identified so we can understand better how that all, how that all fits. And I think that covers my, covers me on these, sort of feedback on these pieces you were looking for. Counsel, I'm looking to, I felt a lull in question, so I'm looking to getting the feedback on these particular items. I'll go with Mary Elliott and then Counselor Anderson and Counselor French.
We talked about in the, the new zoning, allowing balconies to project into the setback. Is that the same issue staff were proposing to bring forward generally as a zoning bylaw amendment? Or is this different? This seems to come up quite a bit. And I'm curious why we're going to allow it here when we're starting from scratch, not trying to fit it into an existing block. So, so I didn't know whether there's just a general push by planning to, to now allow this because it's a better use of the lot, or whether there's a reason for this particular lot.
Thanks for the question. Through the chair, it's a little bit different than the one, the measure that's being proposed in the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw, I believe, at this point is proposed to allow a projection of 0.76 meters, whereas here we're looking for 2.5 meters, with the condition that the depth and the width are both 2.5 meters. The literature to date shows that a balcony should be a minimum of six feet wide and six feet deep to be usable. But we don't necessarily have a regulation to enforce that. And if people are living in apartments, it's good, important that they have access to usable outdoor space. And so there's a bit of an incentive there to allow for that space to be built. But then to also, yeah, encourage to make sure that it does, it doesn't necessarily penalize the indoor space either, so.
But then, in one of our segments, we say, provide usable open space in the form of a patio deck or balcony shall be provided for the resident of each dwelling unit and shall have no dimension less than 1.85 meters. So one, I wondered if that was squared. And also, if that is squared, it's, you were just talking about 2.5. So why is this section saying 1.85? And which dimension is that? That's 40 with four N's, .3.
Through the chair, I might be missing the actual portion here. I have in 40 and, and, and .3, table two, that despite any section of the bylaw, above-ground usable open space is permitted to project 2.5 meters into the setback if the open space provides a minimum depth and width of 2.5 meters.
There's another section on page 102 of our PDF agenda that references the 1.85 meters. Anyway, that's a detail that can come back, but I'm just, I would like a rationale for why we would vary the setbacks when we're starting from scratch, when we just build within your allowed setbacks. And so what are we trading off in order to allow for balconies to project versus just building within the footprint you're allowed? And my other question is, we've been talking a lot about this missing middle housing. And yet, in this big zone, all we're talking about is condos or townhomes. And I wonder if on interesting corners or, or different places, there's an opportunity to include triplexes or a quadplex or just something that breaks up the massing a little bit, adds some interest, provides some options for ground-level housing, for ground-oriented housing, and gets away from the monotone of you either get to live in a townhome or, or a condo. So that's something that I'd like to contemplate. And I wonder if that's been part of the discussion so far.
Through the chair, it has not been part of our discussion so far. So far, we've been working towards the subarea plan. So certainly something we can bring back to the developer.
And then just two other notes related to parking. We're talking again about commercial use being shared with visitor parking. We're talking again about commercial use being shared with visitor parking. I just think we, we're going to need language in there that says the commercial use has to be compatible with when visitors visit home, like we need it to vacate. And when you have restaurant uses that proceed into the evening, you cannot longer share those spaces with visitors. When you have businesses that are open till 10 o'clock, you can't, you can't share. So some sort of provision that makes sure that the overlap doesn't happen, I guess. And then where we're talking about shared parking as well as some car share. I think there's a section that talks about car share. We know from Moto, who's our partner so far, that there has to be a minimum of three cars in a certain radius, or else people don't have the confidence that a car will be available to them. So if we're going to change the parking and waive some of these stalls, then like we need an idea of where they would be and on what lots and how close to the residences. So. Oh, and finally, there was a little sliver of land that says it belongs to us. And so when are we dealing with that piece?
Through the chair, there is a road, leftover piece of road within the area. It has been referred to real estate, who are currently handling the file. And it will return to council at a future date.
Is it okay if we move on, Mary Elliott?
Sure. Monopolize it, I don't know.
Yeah. Counselor Anderson, followed by French, Race, Penningill.
Thank you. Ms. Fletcher, I'll move through A, B, C, D, E. And I'll jump to two additional issues not on your list. I'll try to be concise, starting with community amenity contribution offer. The staff report is focused on affordable housing and rental housing. I think this is a good direction to integrate these, these into the development. I think this is desirable. Falls Creek South, the 1970s experiment in integration of affordable and rental is much in the news lately. And I think that this, this should be considered as desirable. There will be some trade offs. FAR, building heights, parking standards. We, we need to recognize this, but I think that the staff suggestion is a good one. Civic use proposal. There are three things I wanted to touch on. In the language of the 5.4, in the, excuse me, in the policy alignment table, there is, I will quote, "connection to other facilities and activities in Squamish." Another bullet point, the degree to which they complement amenities elsewhere in the community. I think we need to address and advance community-wide planning of cultural facility needs and recreation facility needs. We have done a lot on recreation. We'll later be discussing a development cost charged by law. And there's a good project list there. I think we need to go further so that we are prepared in both of these areas, these civic use categories, for, prepared for questions such as the ones before us. I don't think it's clear at all what, to my mind, what we need and should have here. But we should be, be advising the developer and making decisions ourselves with a community-wide context in mind. The, the arts cultural inherited strategy, I'm a broken record on this, but it does in section six spaces lay out a framework for planning of these spaces. We need to advance that planning. And this will help us in discussions with the oceanfront developer for the civic block. I'm also quite open to alternate, we've just been discussing so far in the conversation childcare and even open space, open to that too. But we need a community-wide, more community-wide planning to help us. Finally, on the civic use proposal, in some scenarios, a facility could be installed there that will have different parking demands than the surrounding neighborhood. And so a traffic impact assessment might, or we might otherwise assess unique, potentially unique parking demands for civic use site. It's inevitable. Any kind of auditorium, it's not just for the neighborhood, or that's something we need to decide. Is this, is this a community-wide function, this facility that we might be contemplating? Or is it just for the neighborhood? That has parking implications. So that it's democratically accessible for Brackendale residents as well, if you like. We need to consider that with oceanfront facilities. And we no doubt are looking at some community-serving facilities on the oceanfront in some places. Moving on to parking for both C and D, I have two comments. Is that we need to continue to do research and evaluation here and elsewhere. I don't think, I, I'm not convinced that we even understand how downtown parking standards that are referred to in the report are going to evolve for us. The downtown is still evolving. And for retail needs, commercial needs, I don't think we have a clear picture. I don't. And I think we have to continue to research and evaluate as we go. A case in point that I've already referred to is a civic use facility. What are the unique parking needs that might be identified for such a facility or, or use? Moving on to employment area, I'm satisfied with the efforts. And already back in, in the, in the, the community planning process, the employment targets were ambitious for this peninsula, which is quite appropriate. But I'd like to point out that there will be some displacement. We're not only talking about what a new employment that's going to be generated here, we're going to lose some. And we are going to be displacing medium industrial from this site. And the report highlights that we've got in a prefab building component company. They have a plant there producing panels for construction, all local market, steel reinforcing company and a concrete forming company. Well, this is all medium industrial. We are desperately short of medium industrial land. So although it's a sidebar, we need to consider this is for, let's refer that to economic development and planning, if you like, that we have a problem here. We're displacing people and there is no answers for those companies. Not any of those three companies probably have an answer as to where they might go to. And they, and in particular, the panel company, they're all local market. They're part of our local construction, circular economy, construction industry. And we're going to, we're going to lose their, they're going to lose their site. So this is also an aspect of employment lands. And in the reference to our policy, we need to keep this in mind too, that bigger picture of what we're displacing. I'll move on to two issues that aren't addressed. And one of them is the industry covenant. That is, you do address it in the report, but not in the A, B, C, D, E. To cite the report, there will need to be registered an industry covenant advising future residents of presence of noise from adjacent industrial facilities. A similar covenant is existing, in fact, two covenants, two different ones elsewhere on the peninsula. Now, this was the subject of four public hearings in 2015. And it wasn't without controversy to this day unanimously. Waterfront industry is not satisfied with the covenants that, that were put in place. Now, at this location, we are further away from noise generators, that is, the terminals and the site B areas, the harbor. And we're, so we may be in a safer zone for neighborhood interface, but it is untested. And I'll just point out that the district covenants put in place only address noise. They do not address vibration, light, dust, odors and other disturbances that other communities do address, like North Vancouver. So that, I think that the covenant is going to be a learning process and one that we need to be consider carefully. And we have two covenants on the peninsula right now, and they're both slightly different. And we have to make some decisions about what covenant we put in place. And definitely we do need some. Finally, the issue of building heights, excuse me. There are, there are. When in 2011 and 2015, we had a zoning package for the oceanfront. And in 2015, a zoning and PDA and the subarea plan. And buried within those documents was a rendering, a 3D rendering on, on, on paper of what the development would look like. It's, it was a small, little illustration that nobody could probably notice. But when that was shown in 2015 to residents of the Stathmus village across the water, they were upset. And to go to points my colleagues have already made, particularly Mayor Elliott, we really do need 3D renderings to show to the public and to discuss amongst ourselves. And so I would advise, finally, that we need to have engagement specifically with the Stathmus community, not just Squamish Nation Headquarters in North Vancouver, but with the community right across the water from the planned eight to 12 story buildings. Because they may not be happy. We not only need to be talking about views of the chief, but we need to be thinking about views from Stathmus to the Tantalus Mountains. And they would be obscured by eight to 12 story buildings potentially. Those are my points. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, Counselor French, Race and Penningill.
Thanks, Chair. I like what I see in A, the community amenity contribution offer. And that's my only thought on that one. The civic use, the idea of having a significant chunk of that being affordable housing is not appealing. I'd rather see affordable housing spread throughout. Parking, agree that these numbers can work only though if transit is well considered. And employment area across the oceanfront, I like what I see there. Childcare, definitely prefer moving away from big childcare. 130 kids in one facility, in my mind, doesn't work and is not at all ideal. And having a number of smaller childcare facilities, I think, makes way more sense. And then a few additional thoughts. I do like the idea of seeking more diverse housing forms, as, as the mayor suggested. Triplex for unit developments. And I'll add my voice to vote for 3D modeling. I'd also like to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Race.
Thank you. I'll try and follow the A, B, C, D, et cetera, just to make life easier for you, hopefully a little bit. The amenity contribution offer, I have some thoughts on it, but I wouldn't want to get too far into that discussion until we've had the policy come back to us, which I understand is being worked on now. And I don't know the timing of that. I'm not trying to hold up the project, but it doesn't make any sense to me to kind of fix a deal now that, that we might change in a couple of months. So the only thoughts that I have is that I don't want to confine the thinking to just cash for this and cash for that. I would look at other forms of amenities with open space and other things that actually came out of that discussion. There was a number of different things, but would not just confine it to cash. So I think this is our opportunity to get some other amenities for the community. Civic use proposal B. I guess simply put, 12 stories of residential, in my mind, is not a civic use. And I would not be happy to lead the charge to amend the OCP to allow it to happen on that particular site. So I think my thoughts on that site is, and others have mentioned it, is this is an opportunity for, and I don't want to get prescriptive, but something for the arts. I think a small daycare is a no-brainer. And, and also I think community recreation facilities, which once again came out of the discussion this morning. And I think we'll be sort of going forward in the future. We're going to be looking at a number of different sites around the district. And if there's nothing else down there for things like a yoga studio or whatever, then that might be the place for them. So to look at things like that. Parking C and D. You know, I'm generally okay with that. But I think what we have to keep in mind is if we lower the parking requirement, and then that generates 50,000 square feet of additional office space, that's a lift. And we want to factor that into an amenity discussion. There, to me, that's a benefit to the, to the developer. And like other benefits of the rezoning, they should be prepared to add something into the project or to the amenities for that. Employment area across the oceanfront, generally okay with that. Childcare, absolutely. Affordable housing, which is actually not a bullet point, but it certainly came up in the discussion. And I'm, again, not in favor of locating it all on one building, particularly on that site or any other particular site. I would, I just much prefer the idea of having it sort of integrated throughout the development. Or accommodate it on other lands in the development, in the oceanfront development. If they want to take it off this site and put it on another site to sprinkle it around some more, those types of things I'm fine with. The housing diversity, which once again is not a bullet point. And the mayor made an interesting point. And it made me think about, you know, if you try to visualize this with some 12 story towers. First of all, I'm okay with 12 stories, assuming it gets through fire issues and so forth. We zoned for 12 stories along the Blind Channel, just to the south of this. And so it's kind of consistent with it. But I think we're going to have to be careful. We don't end up with a wall of 12 stories when you put them all together. The other thing about that is the mayor mentioned some different forms of housing. And I'm not an architect, but I've seen examples, particularly in the lower mainland of developments, which had a high rise that might be surrounded by townhomes, for example. And so there's still value to the developer and the land for the townhomes. In fact, they tend to be quite expensive. But, but it breaks up the skyline. And I think that's going to be important down here. So you don't get the sense of sort of tower next to tower, next to tower. And there is some variety in the, in the roof lines and landforms and so forth. So I think that's an important component. And the rezoning, of course, is when we would want to mandate that. Oh, and the other note that I had about the civic block and the civic use. And it's more of a question, and I don't expect you to answer it today, but who ends up owning it? Does it come to the district like a park? If we put a rec site on it, do we own it? Or who builds the rec site? Or is it just a land use? So there is a discussion around that. Or who builds the, the daycare and who ends up owning it? So if it is a civic site, is it intended to be owned by the developer or the district? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thanks. I think I'm generally aligned with most of the comments I've heard so far, but I'll maybe put a finer point on some from, from my perspective. And also just, I, I am still a little bit unclear about why it's more feasible to put 12s residential with a bunch of affordable at the civic use site versus just going market and so on, why one is easier than the other. And maybe I misunderstood that. So maybe that's an offline question for me to ask or the next time this comes back, just sort of understanding better why some of those things are options and others we don't think are. In general, you know, if we did have some renderings where we could see that the, the massing throughout the oceanfront made sense, then I'd be open to the idea of some more height there, especially if it meant more CACs, affordable units, more childcare, that sort of thing. I do agree that, that I see what's requested of 12 stories is a pretty significant lift. And so I really want to think long and hard about what we would expect to make that happen. For me, given everything we're seeing this year, especially, a true no gas covenant is important. I know that some restaurants will really demand to have gas, but there's lots that, that won't also. And, you know, if, if we, it's a way to incentivize the future. We keep saying we want to say this is no gas. And then we will get the businesses there, they will fill it up that, that don't need the gas. And so then I think we're hitting the mark we want to hit. I keep speaking to younger architects and engineers who say in terms of building energy as well, that this is entirely feasible in six, 12 story buildings. So I, I think for me, that, that's a pretty important piece to hit. I do think there needs to be some more discussion on if this is going to be a civic use, what that use is. I'm a little bit fuzzy on whether the 30 child daycare was considered big or not big. And in my mind, 30 versus 45 versus 50 would be neither here nor there relative to the size you'd need anyways for a theater, for example, an arts theater. And so I'm just having trouble conceptualizing what order of magnitude we're talking about for these things. So when that comes back to us, just a bit better understanding there. For parking, you know, I took some heat for some of my comments about Bailey, which got further misconstrued by some. But I think one thing that sets the oceanfront apart is it is geographically distant, but it will have impacts on traffic and intersections downtown, parking downtown. But because there is that geographic distance, there's a lot more room to make this more of a car free area or a place where you don't need a car. And so, you know, when we look at all the challenges we're facing and all the complaints we get, I think this is an ideal place to be a little more relaxed on our parking expectations and make sure that, along with that, there's discussions on adequate transit and car shares and other things. But I think, you know, whether it's public or private parking, it's really, really expensive. And so we cut the affordability of the unit. So as we're thinking about affordability, this is one place where it's really possible, I think, to try and offer, be one of our only formal options with reduced parking, greater affordability that way. And so I think that is something that should be investigated. To the degree we're doing multi-story parkades above, where parts of it are above grade, I'm just really curious how someone in a wheelchair crutches, even with a right of way, how they get access to that? Is there expectations of working secure elevators all the time? Or what does that really mean? How do people, practically speaking, access these raised spaces? Yeah, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Mayor Elliott and then myself.
I'll be quick. I agree with Councilor Race that the lift on the employment space should be contemplated in the CAC contribution. Otherwise, I kind of want to wait to see what this looks like at the next step in the process. The civic use proposal is a challenge. I'm not sure that I want a 12 story building on the civic block. I think that affordable housing should be spread out. But I do know that we need good multi-use space. I like the idea of outdoor space as well. 30 child childcare facility makes sense. We know that youth are looking for more youth specific places. But I think, as Councilor Anderson said, it, I don't think it's up to the seven of us. I'm hoping the public information meeting will elicit some more feedback around what the community would think fits there. I've already spoken to the parking issue. But for me, it does need to be tied to transit. And I've spoken to childcare. I wonder if there's an opportunity as well, if there's an opportunity because of the lift wanted around B lot in CD 69 zone, if it's an opportunity for us to secure some of the other uses like childcare into the CD 69 zone at this time, to make sure that we can capture about 100 spots going forward. There's some tall buildings proposed closer to downtown, that sort of gateway piece. And the thing that I hear the most is we need a movie theater. And I was in downtown Vancouver last week. And there's a tall building, but the second floor is the movie theater. It's got tall ceilings, but that's where it fits. And I think we should look at a specific zone to make sure that this happens for our community. It still seems ridiculous to me that smaller communities all have movie theaters and we can't produce that for here. So I think that's something that we have to look at in this zone. I'm not sure where else we would put it at this juncture. But I'm going to take every opportunity to see if we can make it happen in this zone. So I suspect we'll have to write that creatively. There'll be parking issues, I'm sure, with that use. But I think we have to be focused on trying to make that happen. You know, youth are looking for things to do. And the number one thing on their list is being able to go to the movies without having to get on a non-existent regional transit system and go to Westman or Whistler. Yeah, I think that's all. And my other comments that I threaded throughout. Thanks so much. This is complicated, so I appreciate us getting a few kicks at the can on this one.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott and everyone that spoke. We do have a motion, and we did hear feedback on all the points. Do, Ms. Fletcher, do you want to take an attempt? I'm wondering how we're going to do this. I think that maybe attract the sort of the changes, attract changes when it comes back to us, the next committee, the whole, is the best, is probably the best way forward. I think you've heard feedback, not just on the points you asked for there. So with that in mind, someone want to make a motion, so I'm just trying to get to that motion again.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
The staff recommendation. And Ms. Fletcher, you, do you think that that's appropriate course of action as far as the capturing the feedback in the next, in the next time we see this? Okay, that's a nod. So Councilor French, you're moving, oh, seconds, sorry. Mayor Elliott moves, Councilor French, seconds. I'm going to assume that there's no comments to keep us on time, and we've all made lots of comments here. And, oh, Councilor Penningill. Sorry, go ahead, Councilor Penningill.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just feeling very sensitive because of some of the parking heat I've taken in the past. So I just reflecting on the words I said, I just want to make it very clear. My feeling is that if there's a lot of parking at the oceanfront, it will cause parking and traffic demands downtown that will agitate some people. But because it is geographically distinct, what I'm saying is if we don't have much parking there, there will be fewer cars downtown and fewer, less traffic congestion, congestion, less parking issues downtown, because the distance is far enough that you're not going to be able to feasibly park downtown, but then live in your apartment on oceanfront. Like a one or two people may do that, but that will not be the norm. And so just to clarify why I'm saying it wouldn't be an issue here where it might be more of a challenge other places. And I appreciate council's indulgence for me to try and clarify, and we'll see what heat I take this time. So thank you.
We'll all be watching with interest, Councilor Penningill. Okay, and with that, I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. So, Council, we're, we're close to time, but we're going to give, I think, five minutes, I hope, is enough. And they'll pull us back, try to keep us roughly on track. So we're going to take a break, and we'll be back at 3:15 for the next topic. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back to the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, December 14th. We're on to the North Crumpet Neighborhood Plan Engagement Report. I'll turn it over to staff. Introduce yourself on the topic. Thank you.
Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Matt Gunn. I'm a planner here at the District of Squamish.
Asia Phil, planner at the District of Squamish.
Today, we'll be presenting the North Crumpet Neighborhood Plan Stage Four Engagement Summary. As quick background, an application to develop a neighborhood plan for the North Crumpet area to the north of Valley Cliff was received in February. This is an OCP amendment application. If the application is successful, the plan would be adopted as a schedule to our official community plan. North Crumpet Plan is progressing through a 10-step process, which was endorsed by council in July of 2021. The process is currently at the end of stage, a step four, in which the public was engaged on technical reports. And themes such as community priorities, a neighborhood vision, recreation, and the environment were discussed. Several government entities have been engaged in this project. Both the Squamish Nation and the Slaywood Tooth Nation were contacted by staff early in the process and have been kept informed. Staff requested direction on how the nations would like to be engaged. The Slaywood Tooth Nation has not participated, but has been kept informed through the process. Squamish Nation staff participated in meetings in March and September and in an environmental workshop in September. Squamish Nation have also provided initial feedback on values to be considered. Multiple provincial agencies have also been engaged, including the Ministry of Transportation and Forest Lands and Natural Resource Operations. Just to end with, there we go. Next, I'd like to review some of the technical findings that have been identified by the project team, the applicants, which forms a major component of the public engagement that we've had to date. First, the slope mapping. The parcel in question is characterized by areas of significant slopes and granitic rock outcrops. Those are the orange and red areas that are steep slopes. And the low valley, which is green, which connects Valley Cliff to Lager's East, the broad area on the right side of the parcel on the screen. Environmentally sensitive areas, or ESAs, were mapped across the subject property. High ESAs were composed of mature forests, riparian areas, aquatic areas, and sensitive ecological communities. These areas were primarily found in the western half of the property and in the valley connecting Valley Cliff and the Lager's East neighborhood. Recreational trails, rock climbing sites, and viewpoints were identified in collaboration with trail and recreational user groups. The environmental, geotechnical, and archaeological analysis were then combined to create a comprehensive land potential map, which is now on screen. Lightly constrained land, which is yellow on the screen, makes up 24% of the parcel. These areas have slopes under 40%, are low and medium ESAs, and have road grades under 12% and contiguous development areas. Moderately constrained lands, which are hatched, make up 14% of the land and have specific limiting characteristics. And highly constrained lands, which are green, make up 62% of the parcel and have slopes over 40% and high ESAs or riparian areas. When the land potential mapping is combined with the informal trail network, we see that the majority of the trail network lies within the highly constrained land. And this does suggest that many of the trails may not be impacted by development scenarios. Step four of the engagement program included a number of activities between August and October of this year. The project team, which led the engagement activities, has made considerable effort to reach a broad range of stakeholder groups in the community. The activities included a project website, a survey, public information meeting, a pop-up kiosk, and environmental and recreational stakeholder workshops. The project team did meet a higher bar for engagement outreach than previous subarea plans through communication with stakeholder groups, both in the neighborhood and across the community. Throughout the engagement events, 735 pieces of written feedback were received. A variety of themes were raised by the community throughout the engagement process. These include a substantial ecological and recreational sentiment for the land, a desire to protect environmentally sensitive areas, an interest in retaining recreational spaces, biking and hiking trails, climbing areas, concerns regarding traffic, including potential impacts in Valley Cliff, as well as challenges accessing and crossing Highway 99. I'm going to delve a little bit into some of these major themes that were raised by the community. The environment was repeatedly identified as the most significant topic of interest during engagement in this step of the planning process. Several themes were identified by residents and stakeholders. First, residents value riparian areas and associated species habitat. There is concern regarding potential impacts to water quality for salmon in the Little Squamish Creek. Groundwater is a key consideration. There is concern around wildlife habitat, wildlife connectivity, and biodiversity that could be lost through development. Green spaces and wildlife corridors should be preserved, and forested areas should be preserved as much as possible. These are some of the key factors that came up from the community when discussing the environmental values in the area. A couple of topics deserve a little bit more discussion. One is the impacts to wildlife corridor and macro level habitat connectivity that were identified as a concern. Addressing this concern is challenging, as the district does not currently have information to support decision making regarding wildlife corridors and habitat connectivity at a macro level in our community. In addition, there is no precedent for requiring a subarea planning process to address this community and regional wide topic. A study of this type would likely require the involvement of local, regional, and provincial agencies and be a substantial undertaking. In addition, the Squamish River Watershed Society requested that the applicant conduct a hydrological study of surface water courses and groundwater drainage and storage to protect the integrity of Little Squamish River and that post-development monitoring be implemented. The project team is open to considering the completion of the study, which was not discussed at the outset of the project. District staff are working on putting together terms of reference, which will be provided to the project team for discussion moving forward. Another key talk, delve into is recreation. Stakeholders, recreation was highlighted, as well as environment, is one of the most important considerations throughout the engagement. Mountain biking trails are highly valued. Stakeholders want to preserve as much of the trail network and recreational spaces as possible. There is concern about the impacts, and that could occur from loss of trails. One of the topics that was raised in engagement was the development of a no net trail loss policy, which was identified as desirable. However, some stakeholders identified or recognize that that may not be feasible in the process. The current trail work, trail network is also quite dense, and some trail development is likely negatively impacting environmentally sensitive areas. Another point that was raised by some of the stakeholders. SORCA did submit a letter to the process that highlighted the Valley Cliff Trail Network as one of the community's best intermediate writing areas. And as such, the development should move forward with a no net trail loss policy, determined in collaboration with SORCA to preserve these important trails and travel connections. With regards to traffic, residents raised concerns regarding potential impacts on traffic, as I discussed earlier, and specifically, potential congestion in the Valley Cliff Road Network, the single access from Highway 99, congestion around the hospital, the school, and along Westway Ave. Stakeholders identified that improvements to road infrastructure was important, and that an alternative access from Valley Cliff to Lager's Lane was desirable, which is something that may be supported by this project. In a survey, the project team did ask the community about desirable housing forms. 394 respondents provided input on what desirable housing forms would be in this neighborhood. 67% did identify single family homes as desirable. 42% selected options for first time buyers. 34% supported cottages or identified cottages as desirable here. 30% identified townhouses and fourplexes, 25 duplexes and triplexes. And then a variety of perspectives were represented in the comments. Some supporting single family housing, others reflecting desire for a broader range of housing forms. Moving forward into stage five, the project team will begin preparing neighborhood plan options. Results of the neighborhood engagement will inform these options, along with district plans and OCP policies, and specifically, Policy 9.4K, which was adopted into the OCP during the recent rezoning from RS1 to RM5 for the property, which did contemplate subarea planning. This policy encourages the consideration of a complete walkable community, missing middle housing forms and employment space. That concludes the presentation. Staff recommend that council receive the report and endorse the proposed engagement plan with any comments that they have. Staff and the project team are open to comments from council moving forward. Topics council may want to comment on include the technical findings, themes identified by the public, and the integration of OCP Policy 9.4K.
Could you remind us of the 9.4K? Is it this, at this point, that's, that's this one? Okay.
Yeah, that is the policy that in the implementing the OCP, we went through a zoning change for this property and rezoned from RS1 to RM5. But as part of that, there was a specific policy that was put into the OCP to help in the contemplation of that subarea planning process.
Thank you for that additional context, Council. Let's, Councilor Race, go ahead.
Thank you. Two things. One, is it contemplated at this stage? In other words, with the potential development of this site, that the road connection from Westway Avenue be made completely through to Lager's Lane? Or is that something that would happen in the future? Is this development intended to? Is this development intended to make that connection? And the second question, well, I'll wait for the answer in the first and come back to the second.
Great, thank you. Through you, are you, Councilor Herford acting as mayor? Yes, okay. Through you, Councilor Herford. The, the project as it stands is investigating the most appropriate scenario for access to the development. It is possible that the development scenarios that are presented and the traffic impact analysis that's underway will identify the need for two connections, one from Westway Valley Cliff and one from Lager's. But at this point, we don't have any idea of what level of density will be proposed. That's what's going to be determined in step five and then step six presented to the community. And so there's, there's a bit of an interplay between the traffic impact analysis and the proposed land use scenarios. I think it's most likely that this, the development will be accessed from Westway and that, that, that access will lead up there. And then depending on how much density is proposed and what the impact of that density is on the Valley Cliff Road Network, there may be a need for that road down to Lager's East. The, if that road access is not required, that there isn't enough density proposed to require that, then the road work that will be done in the, from Valley Cliff up to the development will be such that it could support at a future point that connection down to Lager's East. It will really be up to the amount of development proposed and then the applicant determining a suitable access from their area down to Lager's East as to whether or not that is part of the project.
Thank you. That answers my question. And the second question, it's actually question slash comment, is when we talk about different forms of housing and so forth, sort of coming up in the next year in discussion. One of the things I was thinking about was a couple of weeks ago now, we had a discussion around our housing authority. And one of the goals for the housing authority would be to own developments and own land and own, own units essentially. And I have some experience up in Whistler, for example, where the Whistler Housing Authority does own many units. And some of those, and I know in one case in particular, because I was involved in the development, they received 6.7 acres of land as part of a rezoning. And, and they ended up building houses on it. And those are controlled price housings for reselling. So that is, if I understood the recommendations and the discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago about our housing authority, I think it is one of the goals. And the practical way of getting it is out of large rezonings. And so it would certainly figure into an amenity discussion because there is certainly a cost to that to get a serviced piece of property. But we might consider that going forward, that there might be sites, site or sites that we might want to secure for our housing authority. So that's ownership for us to then go and build affordable housing in some form. And so I'm not going to be any more prescriptive than that. That's obviously got a broad variety of possibilities, but I'll just leave it at that as a comment for the, for the coming year.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Gunner.
Through Councilor Herford, I would like to respond to that. So that is a point taken. Thank you for that comment. I do want to highlight one thing that's important to keep in mind as we consider the amenity discussion for this property. In adopting the zoning where we changed the RS1 zoning to RM5, we also added policy to the CAC policy or a particular line that did state that when considering amenity contributions for this property, the baseline would recognize the RS1 zoning that was there previously. And so if zoning with now that policy and the amenity contribution or the community amenity contribution policy, the amenities would be contemplated in density that supersedes the density that was allowed under the RS1. So just an important contextual piece.
And I do remember that. Actually, what I'm contemplating is that we'll end up with at least part of this area with more density than single family. And so I was anticipating that discussion.
Thank you. I have Mary Elliot next, followed by Councilor Pedengel, Councilor Anderson.
Um, I wonder if the topic of transit has come up very much in the, I know that people made comments about traffic, but one of the difficulties with crumpet woods is that you can't get transit buses up. And, and through that, that development, it would seem important if people are concerned about traffic from this development that we make it more transit oriented. So I'm wondering if that's come up or if that will appear in the, the next phase.
Through you, Councilor Herford. Yep, thank you. So the transit wasn't something that came up in significant numbers or I'm not, yeah, I don't recall how much it came up in terms of the community discussion. But from a staff perspective, at the outset, we did have our transportation coordinator involved in discussion with the transit, the transportation planner they have involved in the project. And so the road network that would ultimately connect from Valley Cliff through the development and down into Lager's East is intended to be designed as standard that can certainly support road buses traveling through. That's been one of the key points that we've raised with them from the start. And I would highlight that should that road come to the development from Valley Cliff and go down to Lager's East, that looping would be a major benefit for our transit network. Creating those loops makes the transit much more viable. And so that is considered one of the benefits of the project potentially. And we've had that on deck as a discussion topic since the start.
Thank you. With regard to the no net trail loss, I thought we had an initiative or partnership with SORCA to look at our trail inventory. And I just wondered if that's ongoing or complete or where that project's at.
Through the chair, I can speak to that one. So SORCA is tasked with managing that project, the front country inventory. And they are in the beginning stages still of setting up the advisory committee. And specifically, they're looking for Squamish Nation involvement, and they feel that that's very important. And so they are trying to get that off the ground with Squamish Nation backing right now. So it's still in the early stages and it's not close to being done yet.
Thanks for that. I did go through the, the summary report, but what I couldn't find when I was reading through that, and I did skim some sections.
It's okay, it was big.
When we talk about options for first-time homebuyers, what does that mean exactly? Because my expectations as a first-time homebuyer might be different than yours or someone else's. So I wondered if the consultants had dug a bit deeper on that and we had a better sense of what that meant in terms of forms of housing.
Through you, Councilor Herford. Yeah, so I, one thing I will say is that the, the survey was designed by the project team with review from the, from staff. And that was an option that was added by the, or that was provided by the project team. I think there's subjectivity there for sure. What I would say is that it's highlighted that there is interest in more attainable housing. And moving forward in the next stage, the project team is where they're going to be designing some options. They're initiating that with some further research. So there's another survey that is going to go out to the community with more detailed questions about housing forms with more specific kind of descriptions of different housing options. So that's coming. And so I think that that was a, I would say that was an identification of, of an intent to be refined in these coming stages.
Great. Because I think, I think traditionally, we've thought that, you know, people move out of their family home and they go into an apartment or they're sharing an old house with friends. And then, you know, maybe they have enough money and move into a townhouse and then eventually a single-family home. But that, that system of progression is really broken. And so I think it is important to dig a bit deeper about what attainability feels like and looks like for different members of our community. And I would also encourage the proponent to think about that for all age categories. So not just young families, but for seniors and people trying to downsize. What becomes attainable and livable at all stages of life? So that's, that will be interesting to me. And last one that I, that didn't really stand out, but is part of Policy 9.4K is employment space should reflect the needs of the neighborhood and community. But it didn't really become a strong focus or theme through the engagement. And so I wonder where that leaves us or will we be asking more questions about that as, as, as the proponent builds out scenarios?
Through you, Councilor Herford. And we have, as part of, in preparation for the development of scenario planning, another piece of work that the project team is undergoing is a, they've, they've looked at retaining a land economist to do analysis of housing need and employment space. And, and the intention there is to determine what would be viable and could be supported by the neighborhood in that area. And so they've provided terms of reference to staff, which we've reviewed and provided commentary on. And I think the intention is to use that study to inform identification of what would be appropriate for employment space. I, I would note, and you know, staff's perspective is that, you know, being a, a location that is further away from our core density areas, there is going to be some constraints on what can be accomplished for employment space. But certainly there's an interest in investigating what's possible. We always want to find employment opportunities. Plus, we want to support that complete neighborhood option where there are services and nodes available. So there, they've expressed interest in, and it was their idea to, to pursue this analysis. And your staff is very supportive of that and looking forward to the results of it.
Thank you. And I, just a comment around that, I think, in my mind, it shifts maybe if there's a road that continues through to Lager's East versus it being the end of the road kind of neighborhood. In which case we might limit that to some walkable services for the community versus it being accessible from, from both sides. And finally, just when we think about space for this neighborhood, we have established this idea that we want neighborhood hubs. So multi-use space that could be used by girl guides or, you know, for art classes in the neighborhood or as a youth hangout on Friday nights to host movie night. So, you know, where is that? It's not clear to me where the central place is for this neighborhood yet and where that hub might be, but I just don't want to lose sight of that.
Through you, Councilor Herford. As part of the survey that's going out for this stage where scenarios are going to be designed, there are a set of questions around amenities or features in a development that would relate to a neighborhood node. So there's further investigation into what the community and neighborhood would be interested in that location. And then the design ultimately of where housing is going to go will inform where that might be located. But it's certainly a topic that's on mind of both the staff and the applicant.
Right, just want to compliment the thoroughness of the report and, and the engagement so far. And it's not surprising the things that came to the fore through the engagement. I don't think that surprised any of us, but I'm glad that we have it and understand those areas of key concern for people from an environmental standpoint. Thanks.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilor Pedengel now.
Yeah, thanks. Few things, the, the slope mapping, is that strictly the slopes or does that include buffers and slide, risk of slides and that sort of thing? Or is it strictly the slopes?
Through you, Councilor Herford. That is slope mapping. However, the applicant has retained a geotechnical engineer to complete a study of the area with recommendations on setbacks and appropriate building standards. So there, there is a study going on to, to address what would be appropriate for development, given the topography.
Okay, thank you. And then on the, the SORCA letter, SORCA is operating as sort of an umbrella trails organization in some context. So was the letter on behalf of all trails users or was it on behalf of just SORCA? Do we know?
Through the chair, I, you know, I don't know the answer to that question. Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question. I know early in the, at the initiation, initial stages of the subarray planning process, staff actually reached out to the various trail user, or sorry, recreational groups, climbing, hiking, biking, trials bike, and started that process of soliciting input on what were key trails, ranking the trails, connections that were important. And SORCA did at that stage, I think, do a little bit of work coordinating with other trail groups. So there has been, I think, some discussion between the trail groups at that initial stage. But I, I don't have indication that that continued or that, that letter represents a coordinated response. But I could be wrong. Unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm thinking roads in particular, what moderately and highly constrained lands means in the context of roads. Intuitively, I might expect that you couldn't put a road in a highly constrained. But, and you know, maybe it's pretty hard in a moderately constrained, but that might not be a valid assumption. So I just want to check does, what the practical implications of, of those designations are, would likely be.
Okay, through you, Chair. Is your question, is the intention of the highly constrained to exclude roads? Or is your question, is there physically the capability to build a road in these lands? Because I will, I will note that lightly constrained lands and moderately constrained lands, one of the criteria or the characteristics are that the road grades of less than 12% could be supported in them. Highly constrained lands did not have that noted as one of the characteristics. But maybe I could get a clarification on it from you about whether it's referencing the capability or the intention.
Well, I guess I'm just trying to understand how to read the map. So I might maybe optimistically, from some people's perspective, assume that highly constrained means it's going to stay natural. There's going to be no roads, no homes on moderately constrained, maybe the odd road or the odd home, but, but not much. I'm just trying to get a sense of in practical terms, what does that mean? Or, you know, you could really do mitigation anywhere. So in theory, with enough time and money, all of this could be developed.
Yeah, through you, the chair. I think those are questions that will be further investigated and clarified in the next stage where scenario development occurs. At this point, there hasn't been work done to say, hey, where, where are houses going to go? And thus, where will the road network need to be located? My assumption with a lot of the highly constrained land, which has high ESA areas or riparian areas, that, you know, a lot of those lands, you know, development of road network in there would be impractical or very challenging. And, and so I suspect the bulk of the road network would, would avoid that. I'm not sure, I can't say at this point whether that's all of the road network, but that is information to come. This, this stage was really about getting an understanding of the landscape and the community's perspective. The next stage will be about, okay, how do we land development or housing in this area that aligns with the goals of the community and the OCP and that. And so I, but I think the highly constrained areas, the indication is that's going to be areas that are much less likely to see impact.
Okay, thank you. And just two more things. This one's a bit more of a comment, I guess. I, I was left wondering and others have touched on a little bit with the housing forms, but also more broadly, what are the demographics of the people that are answering? And so is it, you know, nurses saying, yes, I would like to see a $2 million single-family home here? Or is it a nurse sort of saying, if I had unlimited money, this is what I would like to see. But, you know, given my occupation and so on, more practically, this is what I would want. So, and maybe this is feedback for the next round of consultation, understanding what, what assumptions are being made and, and who is providing the feedback sort of demographic wise on, on a lot of these, these questions would be really helpful to me.
Great, through the chair. That's it. That's great feedback. And I can certainly bring that project team to ensure that future engagement reporting includes more demographic information.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the final thing for me. And then the, the final thing for me for now anyways, is I didn't see anything about the, the Eagle Mountain Pipeline, Fortis Pipeline, which I had understood was supposed to run somewhere through here. And I'm just wondering if that's been looked at or will be looked at, you know, where this could be located so that it's not near any of the possible residential development. And you know, if that constraint has been considered as one of the additional constraints or, or where we are on that.
Yeah, through the Chair. Yeah, there have been, um, some discussion between, uh, both staff and Fortis to understand implications as well as the project team in Fortis. And so I know that that is, is a factor that is, um, in the mix and being contemplated. I don't have at hand, uh, specific details about the, the routing, um, but it's, it certainly is something that is under consideration.
Thank you. I have Counselor Anderson and then myself.
Thank you. I'm going to quote Mr. Gunn from the staff report regarding the road from, or a access route from Westway to Lagers Lane. The applicant has further work to undertake in order to confirm this route could be possible should their land use plan necessitate the additional access route. So potentially this North Crumpet development in itself might, uh, prompt a, a, a need to assess this route. We also have two adjacent large blocks of Squamish Nation fee simple land designated in the long run for residential. We have potential new infill that may occur in Valley Cliff and it may be a future neighborhood planning exercise in the years ahead. We have Scott Crescent, uh, development, 450, almost 450 units certainly will be adding burdens to the Highway 99 intersections. And in addition to this, there's a, an emergency access planning perspective to apply to this road scenario. So in summary, considering this larger community growth context for a potential westway to Lagers Lane route, could the, the study of such a route and the building of such a route or a part of it be DCC projects?
Uh, through the Chair, thank you for your question, Counselor Anderson. I unfortunately don't have the answer to that question because I don't know the ins and outs of the development of the, um, DCC by law. It's something that I can bring forward as a question. Uh, I think I'll take note that you're highlighting that this connection could be very important to our community. And so it may be worth considering, um, whether that is a project that we want to undertake. Is that correct in, in understanding your?
Yes, I am, I am suggesting that there is a community growth context to our valuation of this potential route. And if so, or due to this, uh, might it not be considered as a DCC, uh, uh, by law project list item?
Point taken. Thank you for raising that and certainly something that we can carry forward for discussion both internally, I guess internally with other staff. I do want to take one moment and just point out a error I made in the last response when I said, uh, I didn't have the information on the, um, pipeline routing. I believe in this map that we are looking at the technical finding land potential that the, um, proposed, the, the proposed pipeline routing is the, um, shaded line, uh, that's crossing over from Westway to Lagers East in that image.
Through the Chair, the, the pink line is the current routing for the pipeline and then the really faint gray line that's mostly to the south and west is the future, uh, alignment that Fortis has proposed and shared with us.
Right, thank you, Asia, for saving me on that one.
Another quick question, if I may, Chair. Looking at the traffic impact assessment section of the report, it states that in consultation with district staff and MOTI, there's a refining of terms of reference for a traffic study. And it says here, the study will use transportation modeling data from another district-led initiative that is currently underway to help form an analysis. I'm just curious as to what that other initiative might be, which neighborhood or part of the community?
Yeah, through the Chair, thank you for that question. That is the Gerboli Estates Neighborhood Planning Process. There is a traffic study that is underway to assess the development that could occur, um, over time across the, essentially the north eastern part of the community, pretty much everything from the highway east and Mamquan River north. And so given that there's, um, a fair bit of information coming out of that, the, uh, project team was interested in incorporating that in. And so, um, because that study is, we actually just got in a draft, but that, say, has a bit more work to complete. We wanted to wait till that was done, so we had the best information feeding into this assessment. And that was a mutually agreed upon item. Yeah, that, that the Lagers East information, the development that's occurred there will also be fed into that. But the, the study that was, that they're currently waiting for is the one that we, um, we're undertaking as the district.
Thank you very much. Chair, I'll have a comment a little bit later.
Thank you. I have some notes here. I was happy to see that hydrological survey sort of, um, bubbled to the surface, I guess. But no, I, I'm happy to see that there. I think that's an important piece. There's a lot of, um, it's sort of the watershed of the, of the Little Stomas in that, uh, portion of that area. While we have this mapping up, um, can you speak a little bit about the Westway Cherry Drive access? It seems to be through this, what looks like entirely shaded as highly constrained area. And, um, is that, how major of a crux is that for this development, given it looks like to be quite a distance between, before it becomes, uh, um, transitions back to that lightly constrained area? That looks like a couple hundred meters without, at, at least there.
All right, there we go. Okay, yes. So there is, uh, in the, the access, the preferred access from the, um, district standpoint is to come off, um, the Westway Cherry Drive intersection and move up into the development. The other accesses, um, are, are far less optimal for a number of reasons. But as you highlight, there is a, a crossing of Little Stomas Creek there. And in fact, um, a portion of that land that is, um, identified as, uh, highly constrained, um, is currently under covenant, um, uh, protection from an environmental covenant held by Forest Lands Natural Resource Operations, which was the reason they were one of the government agencies that has been engaged. That it's, it's an older covenant. And, uh, you know, in discussion with, uh, Forest Lands and Natural Resource Operations, um, we've identified a pathway, um, to, uh, address that, that covenant and the environmental concerns, um, aligned with, uh, Little Stomas Creek there. They, the project team has, uh, retained a, a consultant to investigate the environmental values there. They've begun to look at, um, a crossing structure that would, uh, some type of, um, clear span, um, bridge likely that would, um, minimize the impact. And then there will likely be some need for consideration of compensation or, uh, of, of any impact from that access that gets built in that area. From talking with Forest Lands and Natural Resources Operations, they are supportive of this approach. They, we mapped out a process by which we would identify both the structure and the mitigation work, um, by an environmental consultant that would be needed in that area. And so that, that's at the point where we're now waiting for the, um, project team to propose what the structure would look like and what the mitigation work would be. Uh, as part of the investigation, I think they, they had identified that there are, um, there has been, um, previous impact to the Little Stomas in that area and that there is, um, uh, restoration work that can be done that, that is of value and thus could be, um, appropriate, um, compensation work. So yeah, that is one area where, um, there certainly, uh, would need to be some road development in, um, a highly constrained landscape. But I, it will be under consideration of an environmental consultant.
Thank you. I was also happy to see the, um, I'm not surprised to see the, sort of the trails, the trail system and, and the access to, um, to the recreation, um, highlighted as a value in the survey. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. I, I also see it as a potential selling feature, this, uh, of the potential developments once he's at the market. So I'm, I'm confident that, um, that, uh, a good chunk of the, of the trails, if not a no net loss situation is, uh, is achievable. But I'm thinking about the, um, at what point we sort of, in the process, and maybe it's, I, I think earlier the better, we, we really consider the, the access points for these record recreational users that will, um, that already visit the area. And I'm the, that Cherry Drive Westway section has, uh, um, a lot of parking constraints. And I'm thinking just so many parallels to, um, what we see in the, in various parts of Highlands, Top of Perth, for instance. And, um, I think some thought given to providing, um, either a substantive parking area or a few sprinkled throughout that really target these rec users. And, uh, you know, I mean, the user groups that you mentioned that were consulted there, um, are also looking at how it's, are reflecting on how it's used currently. But as you add a more, a road through there or many roads through there, um, will this become a, a more preferred access point for some rock climbing that's currently easier to access some other way or, or isn't easy to access, it doesn't get used? So I, I think some thought around that, um, is I would expect to see in, in the design, in the, the proposals that come back. And I also think that some, that could also include some modification to the trail network to, um, better direct the, uh, the trail users through, uh, whether it's a singular point or certain points, just to make sure that that, um, that use that we know occurs on, on this parcel and adjacent parcels, um, is actually reflected in what's, in what, in sort of the output of this, of this work. So is this the time to be raising that? Is this, or is that more of a, it kind of feels like both, maybe a little bit more of a detailed design piece, but I think the earlier we are, uh, everyone's considering it, um, might be a better outcome. Do you, do you have thoughts on where the appropriate to, or if it's appropriate at all to insert these sort of values?
Yeah, absolutely. The, so as part of the some area planning process, uh, these are certainly values that we want to be considering, considering. I would say that, uh, I, I noted that as we're moving into, uh, state, step five, the project team is looking at, uh, a, a survey. I noted that they have a survey coming up that they're going to present. And one of the questions that they are talking about are what are, what are amenities or facilities in this area that, um, the community and neighborhood is interested in? And that is, um, I, I, as I recall, that is one of the items that is, um, noted as a, as a question in there. But, um, I think it's also a, a good point to have, uh, brought it up. And certainly, you know, given our OCP policies, it's something that's going to be considered as we move forward.
Okay, um, thank you for that. Yeah, I think it really goes to the livability of the future neighborhood as well as, as we know that it's, uh, these pressures can, uh, be detrimental to, to some areas. So we have a chance to get ahead of it here. The first time buyer option, uh, was, or, yeah, that, that language jumped out at, at me. I know we're very early days with the, our, our housing governing, uh, society, but, um, I think that, um, perhaps there's some clarity that can, that's another, um, newly, newly formed society that can, uh, maybe provide some input into, into this equation. And, um, I like Counselor Ray's suggestion with some of the, the land pieces. So, um, I like seeing that stuff there. And that feeds into my, the housing forums question. And the replies didn't really surprise me, but it made me question the context that they were put out in. And I appreciate the, um, I think it was Counselor Peddengill about asking about the demographics, um, associated with that. And I'm curious how that question was phrased, as we know that the phrasing of these, uh, these types of surveys are, are important. So when we're going back out again, I, I think that, um, yeah, I think that the answers and the questions asked are going to have a higher, uh, level of, of scrutiny on them than, than this initial sort of first pass. So I won't dig into what that question was and so on. But I do think that the most context that can be provided should be provided so that we're actually, people are choosing amongst things that are, uh, that they, they better, um, understand what the, what the, the sort of the impact is or the trade offs are of those, uh, of those replies. So I'll, I'll leave that there, but I was a little hesitant to take that at face value. Or do you have a comment on that, on that piece?
Yeah, so, um, in working with the project team in the design of the next survey, um, that was actually, uh, feedback that staff provided that we did feel like that contextual, the contextual piece around questions, um, for housing is really important. So I, I think we'll see that in the next piece. But I also will highlight, um, you know, I'm knee deep in, in a lot of discussion around housing through another project. And, um, I, I think, um, I think we should not be surprised to see, um, you know, desire for single family, uh, continue to, to surface, uh, because I think there's a deeply held, um, feelings around single family, um, that are butting up against these challenges we have with environment, land availability, price. But I, I think we should not be surprised to see people raise that as, as a desirable form, just as there are many trade offs, which is why the context is important.
Thank you for that. The, the road connectivity through to Lagers East is a, is a piece and I, that I think, I agree with Counselor Anderson, it's, uh, I, I think it's desirable. I think to a certain extent, um, it's desirable in ma, to this development, uh, the marketability of the development as far as the commercial, potential, commercial potential, um, given that if we have another entrance point, there's people driving past, maybe it makes it more viable for the cafes and corner stores and, and those sort of services. I do think that, um, we've seen that childcare, um, becomes a viable option in nearly every, uh, every neighborhood. So even if this is a, a sort of an end of the road for a period of time, I still think that there's, um, that it's appropriate to have that, uh, commercial space available for the child, for the childcare, um, not just of this development, but potentially could service the, uh, it's more convenient if it connects through, of course, but, um, but it could service the, uh, the adjacent, um, neighborhood as well. So I think some, I see that as a great potential tenant into something new here. And, um, think, oh, the riparian, when we go to this, like the Lampitit, the riparian areas in the wetlands, you take into account the setback around that when we come up with, when we come up with this. And that's kind of rough. I mean, roughed in each waterway and each piece will have its own kind of constraints. Is that, is that correct? Just want to make sure I'm interpreting the mapping correctly.
Yeah, that is correct. The, um, the breadth of the green areas do reflect those setbacks.
Okay, um, I think, yeah, I'll leave it at that. I'll leave it at that for now and, um, except for the, the transit and understanding, again, goes back to that road piece, understanding where it's a very much, uh, integral part of where we need to be as a community. I'll leave it, my comments there for right now. Counsel, any, I missed any hands? Oh, Counselor Peddengill? And then Counselor Anderson? Was it, yeah?
Yeah, thanks. And just, I appreciate staff's clarification on the, uh, possible, on a possible pipeline route. I just mentioned I've been, uh, it's been, to be honest, worse than pulling teeth, trying to get a, a risk analysis out of Fortis for this pipeline. I did find, uh, no, thanks, uh, to Fortis that find out, uh, they are required to do a detailed risk analysis as, as part of the, the pipeline design, um, along the lines of what we, we've seen out of Chica in terms of risk of loss to life annually. And, and so I would really want to understand what that risk is, what, when they say it's safe or not safe, what their assumption is in terms of risk of, of loss to life. And so for me at, at the moment, and, and partly out of being safe, um, I would consider this area to be highly constrained as well. And it goes right through one of the otherwise unconstrained areas. So I guess maybe a comment to the proponent to really think about when they're talking with Fortis, um, providing, you know, if there's strong evidence that says the risk is low, uh, that we get that shared with us or that they plan a route that, um, probably doesn't, um, run down the middle of an otherwise developable area of this. Cause you know, I would have right now a lot of trouble accepting a lot of residential development right near that, that route, uh, personally.
Thank you, Counselor Peddengill. Counselor Anderson?
Yes, just a final thought to Chair on the, the topic of habitat and Cool Salmon returns. There, there is a number of comments of, uh, folks are concerned and. There, there is a number of comments of, uh, folks are concerned, including Squamish Nation Community people, that Koho Salmon returns, quote, are going down. In fact, it's the opposite. They've been improving for well over a decade now in the Little Stewamas. But this, uh, of course, we want to keep it that way. So the groundwater concerns that have been the focus of, uh, several groups, but in, uh, in particular, the letter from the Squamish River Water Society is entirely valid. However, the point I wanted to also, to, to contribute is that there is also opportunity to enhance access to habitat. Um, and we, the streamkeepers that are working in Little Stewamas see this every year. Uh, the, the, the spotting is heavier lower down the stream and it gets lighter and lighter up above. But there's underutilized habitat and opportunity for enhancement projects. And if you like restoration, and this is not mentioned anywhere in this report, but it should not be overlooked. And in particular, if we come down, down the road to considering habitat compensation projects, there are available projects that DFO could identify. Um, when the diking was put in in Valley Cliff in the seventies and eighties, a lot of habitat and rearing areas were lost. And there is a large project identified near Magnolia, north of the big Beaver Dam, down near the junction of the Little Stewamas and the Big Stewamas. And so there, there is potential for enhancement in the upper reaches of the stream as well as in the lower. And this may become significant if, in case habitat compensation is, comes under consideration. Just wanted to add that to the discussion of the fisheries habitat. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Um, Counselor French?
Uh, thanks Chair. And with the high recreation values we see in this property and, um, recognizing that we haven't, or I haven't heard the phrase adventure hub in any of this conversation. I think that this particular area, uh, is ripe for potentially a number of adventure hubs, um, due to the, uh, trail use, um, that exists in that area. And, and the, uh, demand for that trail used to be maintained. And then, uh, also, uh, trailhead infrastructure generally, which would include, um, proper parking, uh, so that we avoid the kind of scenario we've got happening at the top of Perth Drive. Uh, diversity of the already diverse housing list, I think, maybe a little premature to, to have this conversation, but I want to make sure that it's on the radar. Uh, tiny homes, carriages, how, carriage houses, garden homes and cottages, I think all could work in, in this neighborhood. And I also want to, um, throw in my support for road connectivity from Lagers East. And then in conjunction with that transit service, um, to serve that loop. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor French. Sorry, I remembered one, uh, my one item, then we'll try to wrap, we'll try to, um, conclude here. Um, there is mention of, and, and I remember the sort of, the, any density discussions can be based on the former, uh, the former zoning. Um, I guess it's a two-part question. What, what does the output of a hydrological survey look like? And will that, and is that expected that this would, um, change some of the constrained areas? Um, is it only going to restrict further? Or is it the possibility that it opens, this, this work opens something up? And then I have a follow-up on?
Um, so, uh, this is really preliminary. Um, and I, I actually haven't talked to the project team about this yet, uh, but I've just had some discussions internally with other staff members, um, because it is now our responsibility to, um, put together a terms of reference. Um, so, you know, it, it being very preliminary, I, I, I feel like I should be cautious about, um, how much I say, because the things may change as we, um, evolve the, the discussion. But I think the intention will be to understand the, the groundwater resources and then, um, use that as a bit of a baseline to then assess development scenarios, um, and their potential impact on, on that, um, baseline of groundwater resources and surface water resources and the impact that those might have on the Little Stewamas, um, river. Um, the, the request from, from the environmental stakeholder group was that, you know, we were looking at minimizing the, or, or, um, you know, ensuring that the viability of the river would, uh, minimizing impacts to the Little Stewamas. And so part of that analysis of, um, uh, development scenarios as it relates to, to those water resources will be to try and identify, um, what the level of impact is and what can be done to, to mitigate that impact. Um, so I don't, that's not a lot of specific information. It's, it's a probably an iterative process, um, where there's some work done to understand the context and then some work done to analyze impacts with modifications to development proposals if required to minimize those impacts. Um, but again, this is really, it's, it's, um, it's so preliminary. It, it might need to be integrated with an integrated, integrated stormwater management plan that would be completed as part of, um, future development. And so that may need to be brought forward, um, at this point. But again, these are really preliminary discussions internally on how to integrate that. It's not something that I've worked with in the past, the, this type of, um, hydrological study. And so we're, we're learning as we go in terms of the best way to do it.
Okay. Um, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, just a couple more questions. So the, your just, your last question about whether it would further constrain or potentially open up more developable area, it, it would only further constrain because the, the mapped areas are all the surface riparian areas and the buffers. So those would not be reduced. And the findings would only potentially increase that amount of constraint.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. I was leading into the, the how we're gonna, how staff is thinking we'll score that starting density that was promised in the, in the rezone. Because to me, like, are we only looking at what the original zoning would have allowed in the lightly constrained area for the start of this equation? I'm, I'm just trying to figure, I'm trying to sort of get ahead of, of this piece. Cause I know at some point we're going to be talking about, uh, really digging into what is appropriate density for the area. And I want to understand sort of what we've already committed to and off what formula that was, is, or has arrived at or will arrive at, uh, or will be used to, to arrive at the conclusion. If that makes sense?
Yeah. Um, so in, in the discussion with the, um, uh, representatives of the landowner at the point where we were contemplating the rezoning from RS1 to RM5, we did have this, uh, discussion with them about what they, um, anticipated density from this, uh, development. And, um, that was translated into a unit per hectare, um, figure. Now that, that is a, an initial, um, estimation of, of density. And so, you know, hadn't gone through a, a process of consideration and, you know, development approvals and, and such. And so, um, you know, it may be that that needs to be refined, um, to identify what that baseline, um, zoning is or that baseline density is. But we did have a, an initial number that was in discussion with the applicant of what their expected density was. And that may be a starting point for that conversation. There may be, and likely is going to be more work that needs to be done to refine that, that baseline.
Thank you. I, I think understanding that, um, is going to be, obviously that's going to be a point that we're going to work with, uh, a fair bit going, um, as this moves on to the next steps. But to me, the, the areas that are lightly and maybe moderately constrained are available spaces. And that's where the, that has to play into where the, where that density comes. Cause there's a whole bunch of this that, that in my mind is, is, um, either undevelopable or practically undevelopable. So it shouldn't be considered in original, um, context. So we'll pull that one apart when we, when we get there. But I know that's sort of one of the next cruxes for us. So appreciate the context.
Yeah, I suspect there's going to be motivation on both sides to, you know, pay, pay close attention to those discussions.
Okay. Um, now the motion before us, um, the recommendation is to, uh, accept and provide the following comments. Now we've had about a half an hour or more of, of comments. I'm not going to, um, get, um, I don't think, do you want to take a chance at, uh, at, uh, consolidating them? I know the, the meeting's going to be available for, for playback. I didn't hear anything that really sounded at odds. Maybe that's what we should really highlight here. And you can go through the, the tape otherwise, or how, what do you think? What direction would you like us to provide you at, at this point?
Yeah, through the chair, I have been taking notes, so I'm happy to paraphrase back to you if you want. Otherwise we have our notes. So at your discretion.
I'm going to rely, I'm, I think the paraphrasing might actually shorten what's, what's there. So I think we've had a good, a good discussion here. And I've heard, I haven't heard any, counsel, have you heard any points that are contentious that we need to provide specific, um, guidance on? I think we've heard, um, I've heard a lot of alignment around the table, around the table, a lot of similar themes. So I'm pretty comfortable, um, moving forward just with the, with the recommendation and, the feedback as discussed at the meeting. And we have the, uh, the tape to refer to. So I'm, I'm okay with that. Uh, Counselor French?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor French moves the staff recommendation, um, second by Counselor Anderson. Any further discussion, counsel? I saw Counselor Peddingill.
It was just a second.
Okay. Um, any, any comments this time? We're commented out at this point in the day. Uh, I'll call the question. Uh, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Counsel, we're, uh, thank you. Uh, counsel, we'll give ourselves, we'll give a, we'll do another five minute recess to reset, uh, for our final topic of the committee of the whole. Um, so we'll be back at 4:25 by that clock, which might be different than anything else, but that's the one that I'm running off. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back to Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, December 14th. I'm Counselor Armin Herford, and I am the acting mayor, and I'll be chairing this remainder of this meeting. Um, we're onto item, uh, four subsection six, development cost, uh, charge bylaw update. Um, and I'll turn it over to, it looks like Mr. Buxton to do intros?
That's, uh, that's correct. Thank you, Chair. Uh, counsel, um, this afternoon, we've got the first look at the resulting information that's come out of the review of the, uh, development cost charge bylaw. So we have Sean Hefner from Urban Systems, um, who will be doing the presentation. But, um, we've gone through with our consultant, the assumptions, the baseline data, um, projections that comprise the model. Um, so what you're seeing today is the first, the first sort of iteration of that based on the substantive review that's been done. We're not seeking approval of those rates today. Um, we're simply seeking council's approval to go out for public engagement with those resulting rates. Um, we also won't be going into the model. We're looking at the outputs rather than the, the inputs or the technical processes, how those numbers are, are achieved. If, if there's a wish to go through that at a future point in time, we can certainly try and schedule that. But today we're looking, um, at the outputs and whether or not we're comfortable going to public on those. So with that, I will pass it back to Sean, and he can lead us through the presentation.
Thanks very much. Thank you for having me. Um, just wanted to make sure, can everyone see the presentation? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear the presentation. We can hear you, but you're a little faint. But I think we've made some adjustments here. So let's try again. So mic test.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we're good. We're good. Continue on. Thank you.
I could just talk really loud if, if needed. Just thought I'd increase my volume. Um, yeah, thank you very much for having me today. Uh, you know, as Gary said, we're going to be talking about the development cost charges. And, you know, we're really at an interim place where we'll be sharing our draft rates and, uh, yeah, looking to go towards a public consultation with these rates. So, um, just introduce myself. I'm Sean Heffernan. I'm a development finance specialist with Urban Systems. Um, yeah, I've done a number of, uh, DCC, uh, programs over the years and in a lot of different communities. Um, and yeah, tonight I'll just be kind of walking through kind of where we've been focusing our energy in the last couple of months. And, uh, yeah, some of the kind of key elements of the program and where we are kind of going into, hoping to go to all the consultation here. So just a quick overview of tonight's presentation. Um, we're going to do an overview, kind of a little project background, do a quick overview of DCCs. And on the last presentation, I was able to give a quick kind of DCC 101, uh, but it was a pretty condensed presentation. So I'll just be touching, um, touching on a few other key points prior to jumping into the DCC program development. Looking at the current program, the draft DCC rates, have a high level comparison of DCC rates with neighboring communities. There'll be a couple, um, notes on other considerations and as well as next steps, and then hopefully some time for some questions. Um, so project background, uh, the district's current DCC program was updated and reviewed in 2020. The current program is based in, on a three-year phase in period. So the actual DCC rate will fully come into effect in 2022. District's current, uh, program is based on a complex, uh, Excel financial model. And part of the work that we were doing was to kind of take this model and, and simplify it a little bit and streamline it and, and, you know, really focus on the important, uh, inputs. And, you know, we've been hired to undertake this DCC program update. And we're four months now. So just a quick overview of, uh, what are DCCs? So their fees, which help communities recover the costs for Austin infrastructure needed to support growth. Are they based on a benefit or pay principle? And that is, um, based on the, the idea that if those benefiting from future development, uh, will pay for their fair cost, their fair share of infrastructure. It is regulated by the province, uh, through the Look Government Act and the DCC Best Practices Guide. And there's, within that, there's a lot more detail. Um, and then the best practices to review the DCC program on a regular basis. So minor updates every kind of one to three years and major updates every three to five years. Um, this process is, is a major update to the DCC program. So the philosophy of DCCs are, you know, first of all, to foster fairness. I'm sure there's equitable, uh, sharing of cost of infrastructure and how that benefit is distributed between, you know, the existing users and, and future growth and development. Ensure consistency. These are, these are generated in applied and fair and consistent manner. Uh, it's minimizing the financial risk to the district. This is our cost recovery tool, but you know, they're an important part of, um, maintaining good fiscal sustainability, um, ensuring certainty for the development community, a clear policy framework. So DCCs, you know, came out of the need to have, uh, you know, a certainty for development and to what the cost of that infrastructure cost sharing is, uh, you know, without the developed cost charges, the approach would be, you know, largely negotiated, a lot more uncertainty. It's promoting transparency. So that's something we can talk about a bit more. But, you know, what we've brought to you today is, is really the technical inputs. So there's the, kind of the technical components of the DCC program based on engineering information, staff inputs, master planning, uh, and the work that we've been doing. And then there's the, the opportunities for counsel to, um, you know, to adapt and adjust the DCCs. So we can, uh, get into that in a bit more detail. And, you know, showing that timely processing of development applications. As you know, this is, um, you know, been a key focus of the province as well. And, and DCCs support that by, you know, I mean, consistent approach to cost sharing infrastructure. Uh, DCCs are paid one of two times in legislation. So they're either paid by applicants for subdivision approval to create single family development sites, or they're paid by applicants for building permits to construct multifamily, commercial, industrial and institutional development. So legislation is clearly, you can really only collect DCCs at one of these two times. So how are DCCs currently collected in the District Squamish? So that's subdivision for single detached dwellings, sort of per lot, per dwelling basis, um, and a building permit for, uh, single family low density. So, you know, for existing lots and for small, um, single family lots, as well as medium density townhouses and apartments, uh, commercial institutions, industrial. So currently all residential uses are charged DCCs on per lot, per unit basis, with the exception of high density multifamily, which are charged on a per unit basis. So one of the recommendations coming out of this process was to, um, look at the units and units of charge. And, uh, you know, through our, our experience and, um, to review the program, it was identified there may be some advantages to estimating charging residential high density apartment uses on a unit basis rather than per square meter basis, to be consistent with other residential uses. Um, in our experience and, and, you know, having implemented many of these programs, this is typically easier for staff to estimate the type of DCC charges rather than kind of looking at any building footprint and trying to determine what is DCC eligible and what components are or not. Um, you know, it's simply based on the number of units. Uh, this will also make it easier to track the amount of DCCs collected. And importantly, to the DCC credits based on the numbers built. Uh, this may also help to incentivize greater variety of multifamily unit typologies. So, you know, currently, uh, you know, there's been an incentive to build small units if, if it's on a per meter square basis, whereas, um, on a unit basis, there's, you know, it's the same price for two or three bedroom versus a studio. So, uh, it is It is a bit of a sentence and that may be a more equitable approach. In that sense too. In the sense as well, like, my multifamily units tend to have similar impacts on infrastructure regardless of their size. Larger units charged higher DCCs on a per meter square basis may not necessarily have that significantly. That much of a significant high impact on infrastructures, say, one bedroom, so. That's just some of the rationale behind that, so just wanted to get that background, so that's one of the changes that we've looked at in this program. So on to kind of how the program was developed. So as I noted, there's the technical components of the DCC program's development. So we look at the growth projections, the total project cost. So we work through the master planning, review the previous project list and then, you know, from there we develop a, a project list and. Project costs. Each project has what's referred to as a benefit allocation. I'll explain this a bit more in detail in. Slides, some future slides here, but essentially that's the relative benefit of a project between. New development and existing users. So some projects are going to have hundred percent. Like benefit to future development because it's only benefiting a new growth area. It's a hundred percent driven by growth. Some projects like upgrading an intersection or upgrading a water main may actually have benefits to both existing users and. Future growth as well. So those projects have what's called a benefit allocation. It splits out kind of that benefit between the two groups. The assist factor is the point of council policy. So the blue is just the focused technical inputs. In legislation, what the province has done is it's created a tool referred to as municipal assist factor. And this is the mechanism by which council can choose to adjust the DCC rate. To, to, to basically increase the assist factor to lower the DCCs if they feel that it's needed. What the province has done by doing this is they don't really want. You know, manipulation of the technical inputs to kind of get to a rate that you want to see. The assist factor is, is the most transparent and the preferred way of actually establishing a rate that is differently than what the program suggests. So what we've done is we've carried forward the current assist factor of one percent and if council feels like rates are too high. We'll suggest that the assist factor is the tool that can be used to do that. This essentially is, you know, a subsidy to the development industry. Increases the portion of the overall program that's paid for by the local government. And paid for by Squamish if it decides to increase the assist factor. I'll note that for council's purposes, this is factor can be varied between different infrastructure categories. So you can have a different assist factor for transportation or water or drainage, but you can't vary it between land uses. So you can't have a different assist factor for, say, commercial or industrial. So that's the equation that kind of basically leads us to our DCC recoverable costs and the DCC rate. So just a quick overview, so growth protection timelines, so it's based on twenty-year time horizon to twenty forty-one for growth. The DCC program development project lists are based on our new developments occurring in the next twenty years. Where the new services will be required, master plans, the five-year capital plan, as well as staff inputs. And the project benefit allocations are based on, again, master planning. You know, the benefit of project to existing versus new development as discussed. So various reports and plans are utilized to establish the growth rate. The growth rate from the previous DCC program was reviewed and updated. There were some changes made to this and to accommodate. Future residential, commercial, industrial, and industrial growth. As well as staff inputs and current, you know, development permit applications and basically. What current trends occurring in the district. How the projects were identified. So again, DCC projects are based on location, timing of where new development is occurring. To support the growing population, i.e. services will be required in these areas because of growth. This was developed by reviewing the previous programs, determining if any projects remain uncompleted and were to be carried forward. And to basically review the existing DCC project list for relevancy. And then looking at the master planning as well, see if there's anything that should be on the list that wasn't. And then also staff input based on kind of in-progress or anticipated development applications. Because not every master plan is, is going to be brand new and there's, you know, new information that is used to take the DCC program. And of course, you know, big task in this was making sure that the projects were vetted for eligibility according to. So again, the benefit allocation, I just gave a brief description of this. It reflects the benefit of each project to the existing community and new development. Is used to calculate the portion of capital cost attributed to new development. In the DCC program, it currently ranges from forty-three percent. So these projects are shared between existing and new growth and projects that benefit only. So I provided this example in our previous presentation. You know, you take the hundred fifty meter millimeter water main. It's near the end of its useful life. Future development requires an upgrade to two hundred fifty millimeters. It's a doubling of capacity. You know, this could be seen as kind of a fifty-fifty benefit. That's just a really simple example. And typically, the way benefit allocation works too is looking to kind of the current population and the benefiting new population in the future. So how much growth is occurring over the next twenty years and, you know, what relative percentage of that is that to the current growth and the current. The current users of the infrastructure. So again, the municipal assist factor, the local government requires assist future development. So although this is required by legislation, the amount can be set by council and can vary between one percent, least amount of assistance. And ninety-nine percent, which is the most. So essentially. By increasing that one percent assist factor, you could reduce the overall cost of the DCC. Money would come from the local government and. So most communities in British Columbia, slightly municipal assist factor between one and five percent. It's important to note that this can be different for infrastructure category. But any municipal assist given by a local government must be made up through non-DCC revenue sources. So if you were to increase municipal assistance factor. You would need to pick up that loss revenue through non-DCC sources in order to make the reserves. So essentially, what we presented to you today is a full program. If you were to increase that assist. You'd be kind of reducing the amount of money coming to the program, so it's important the district would make up that money, make the reserves full. That would allow the program to be implemented. As it's designed, as the projects are. So this is just a kind of overview of the DCC process. So we've discussed kind of the inputs to date. In the projects and capital costs, benefit factors, estimating the growth. Today, we'll talk about the assist factor and basically we're here with presentation council draft DCC rates. Going forward, we're open to conduct a stakeholder consultation on the draft DCCs. Look for three readings in the DCC bylaw, at which point, when the bylaw receives three readings, it will go to the ministry for their review and approval. Takes about six to eight weeks, at which point, once approved, the bylaw can come back to council for a fourth or final reading and adoption. So the current DCC rates effective on September first, two thousand and twenty-two, so this would be the full implementation of your current DCC program. Sets a single-family low-density rate of about eighteen thousand eight hundred fifty. Apartment rate eighty-three. Dollars per square meter, townhouse rate of ten thousand six hundred dollars and the commercial rate of one hundred and eleven dollars. So current DCC rates are, have been phased in over three years, but starting September first. These will be the rates in place and these will be the final DCC rates until the new DCC bylaws updated. So here are the draft DCC rates. They're based on a total program cost of approximately hundred and sixty million dollars. We can see that transportation makes up a large portion of that, seven, seventy million dollars. And this slide is important to remember that, again, development cost charges is not developer pays, developer shares. So there are projects in the program that can benefit both existing users and future development. So within the proposed DCC program of the hundred and sixty million dollars, approximately a hundred and twenty-five. Two million would be paid for by developers through DCCs and the other thirty-four point six million would come. From Squamish taxpayers who are non-DCC revenue sources or gas tax until that exists. So basically, going back to the assist factor, so what this assist factor would do is it basically takes costs from this. Side of ledger of the DCC recoverable piece and shifts it over from this full responsibility. So that's a way to think about it. So currently, the breakdown is seventy-eight, twenty-two percent. Between paid for through DCCs and then local government responsibility. Um, so these are the draft DCC rates. Within this, there's been some slight adjustments to, to the rates based on. You've kind of single-family and. Understanding the impact of suites, there was a slight increase to the proportionate rate for single-family. So overall, the proposed changes are fairly minor, ranging from a high fifty percent for single-family. To, to actually industrial experiencing a small draw. And then within residential, some modest increase between kind of one and eight percent. Yeah, so the total proposed DCC for single-family would be twenty-one thousand six hundred. For small lot, it'd be sixteen thousand six hundred, townhouse, ten thousand seven hundred residential units. So we used comparison theory to kind of convert from per square, per square meter to per unit. So this, this would be based on kind of an average kind of one thousand square foot unit. Just to kind of, you know, put a kind of a bar there. And so that would be kind of if you were to build a one thousand square foot unit in the previous program, plus seventy-one hundred. Seventy-six hundred. Commercial increased slightly, five percent to a hundred and seventeen dollars. And institutional increased from ninety to just under a hundred dollars against industrial increased slightly. So we've got some comparisons here and DCC should not be a pick and number game, but I know many councils are interested just to kind of see where. They line up with the neighbors. So here we've, you know, picked a number of comparative communities, either through geography or similar contexts. And you can see from the single-family rate, the proposed Squamish rate is currently kind of in the, the middle of the pack, maybe the upper middle. Previous rate was kind of in the middle of the pack as well and. Of course, the lower middle, so it's still below Meadows, Cholwack and Port Moody in this example, slightly above Vancouver, Gibson, North Van. So, yeah, most, the kind of the, the middle of the pack here is around twenty thousand dollars, so Squamish rate that. That, so small lot, single-family rate would be the second lowest, so if we were to fit that in, it would come in right between Pemberton and Naimo. And small lot is actually. For the apartment rates, you see that Squamish, both current and proposed are in the lower end. Of the, the DCC spectrum, they would be just above Pemberton would be the only lower community. And the last time they updated their DCCs was in two thousand and thirteen, so that's another consideration that a lot of these DCCs actually. You know, they start to age and they're actually kind of get out of date. That's why sometimes they can be. See the ones that have been updated more recently tend to be higher of all. And that is a reflection of the changes in the cost of land, costs of infrastructure. I think it's, it's basically getting more expensive to construct and that's translating to higher infrastructure costs and higher DCCs. So for commercial development, both Squamish proposed and current are both on the upper ends, just ahead of Gibson's. Yeah, so the current rate, the previous, the current rate is, would be the highest in the comparison group and the proposed rate would be slightly higher. And not, not too much higher than Gibson's and Naimo, but again, you know, as we go down the list. Shows it's pretty towards the top. And the same is true for the industrial DCCs as well. So the current DCC program again is actually a bit higher than the proposed DCC rate. Which would be, which means at the top of the list, just slightly above Port Moody. So just some other considerations for council as the DCCs are actually not applicable to all properties. So the Local Government Act identifies conditions where DCC exemptions apply. Those are for buildings of public worship. Where no infrastructure is required, so if there's no services being received, then DCCs would not be paid. So if you're, if you're not receiving, never will receive a sewer service, then you wouldn't pay a sewer DCC. That kind of thing. So that's kind of towards the limitation. Building permits under fifty thousand dollars, so council can actually increase this if they wish, so, you know, if you have a minor. You know, increase, you know, in a building and they're, they're adding just a small addition and it's kind of a, you know, a twenty thousand, twelve building permit. Then it doesn't trigger the DCCs. So this can be increased by council if they wish. It doesn't imply so residential units that are under twenty-nine square meters, so this would be a, you know, like a three hundred, you know, square foot micro suite. But council can increase this to be higher and then it. This is our recommendation. It does not automatically apply to developments with less than four units, however. Council can include these with charging bylaw and that would be our recommendation as it is for all communities. So essentially, it's a weird point in legislation that, you know, excludes. I think it's meant to initially exclude smaller developments, but it tends to just exclude duplexes and triplexes. So we recommend that you actually, you include these charges in your DCC bylaw. So under the Local Government Act two, the district also has the ability to waive or reduce development cost charges. Or certain classes of eligible development. LGA is very clear here that it can only be for not-for-profit rental housing. For-profit affordable rental housing, small sub-visions designed to result in low greenhouse gas emissions. And development designed to result in low-end. Each of these things would be established through what we recommend, a separate DCC waiver reduction bylaw. That would basically define what, what we mean by not-for-profit or for rental housing or for-profit for rental housing. Definition would be created and it would identify kind of the proportion of DCCs that it would actually pay, so you can say not-for-profit. Pay fifty percent of the current DCCs, if it means a threshold of being five percent below C M H C or something like that. So you could generate bylaw, this, we recommend doing this separately from the DCC bylaws. It can be a council bylaw, it can be amended and updated as needed. It's part of your DCC bylaw, then it needs ministry approval every time. Change or adjust the DCC reductions. So an amount waived again, like this, this factor must be entirely recovered from existing development, is this taxpayer general revenue on DCC sources. And also note that once the DCC rates come into effect, file adoption, less than effective data set later, there's in-stream protection. Or for development. So legislation provides one-year in-stream protection for new DCC rates beginning from the date of adoption of the DCC bylaw. And this is basically protection for in-stream applications. Those are being defined as applications that are determined to be complete. And with application fees paid, so that's something that, you know, we can work with staff to find a bit more, but essentially it'd be complete. You know, development application resoning, you know, building permit applications and that would, you know. Be given a one-year kind of grace from paying the new DCCs, so that it may become grandfathered under the. Current DCC rates and given a year to complete the building permit. So again, the current program has been phased in over three years, finishing in two thousand and twenty-two. In-stream protection would have ended after one year anyway, so there's no longer in-stream protection just because your rates are being updated. To here. And yeah, it's recommended that the, given the one-year in-stream protection, that if you were to update the DCC bylaw, that new DCC bylaw would not be faced. Especially as the change is quite minor compared to what would be. Implemented September twenty twenty-two. So just over next steps, one-one factors in development really charged, as far as those, these are generally in the middle. Low-end comparable residential rates and the higher end of non-residential rates increasing between fifteen and one percent. That's negative one percent. It's lower. You know, the DCC increases are lower comparable to changes in housing and cost since previous updates. So since, you know, since twenty nineteen, there's actually been a really substantial increase in the overall cost of land and infrastructure. So that's an important consideration and that, you know, transportation represents the greatest proportion total DCC program about. So our proposal is to begin sharing the draft rates and engaging stakeholders in the community. The DCC best practice recommends consulting with key stakeholders and development industries, part of the DCC update. The DCC best practice recommends consulting with key stakeholders and development industries, part of DCC update. We've identified at a high level, Urban Development Institute, can you all builders association, real estate boards as well as active developers. So we're with staff. Generated a list of key stakeholders to consider with DCC review. The district's website will be used to provide information on the DCC products to developers as well as the general public. Notice will be provided also provided through key stakeholder organizations, target developers working in Squamish. We're proposing to have this development information session via Zoom in January twenty twenty two. So there'll be information on the website and survey for information for general public as well as a opportunity to attend a proposed kind of information session. So just a quick overview of next steps. So today's kind of our council update. Again, stakeholder engagement posed for January. Probably towards the end of January two. And there we'll prepare the draft background for by law. If the rates and feedback, once that's refined, we'll bring the final council presentation to council. And if if they approve and give three meetings, it'll be submitted to the ministry for their review endorsement. Once they've approved the by law, it'll come back to council. Thank you very much. That's the presentation. I'm happy to kind of go back when needed, but if anyone has any questions like
Thank you very much. I have Mary Elliott to start off the questions, followed by Council Penningill and Council Anderson.
I have a couple of questions. So in the charts where you compare to other communities, you know, Port Moody is miles ahead in the single family. Like by far the highest rate and then Chilliwack, which seems to exceed everyone by quite a lot for the apartment. And I'm wondering, why do we have those kinds of outliers?
So I can go back to the slides here. So Port Moody and Chilliwack here.
Moody and the single family rate and then Chilliwack on the next slide for the apartment.
Yeah, it's much higher. So I Chilliwack overall has has high residential rates. You know, here they have a portion that, you know, transportation seems to make up a large proportion of their program. So as it does in Squamish as well. So I think with that, the way the they've created their DCC rates and the way the proportional difference works, essentially that transportation impact is is a lot higher than the other services. And because that's higher, the way the kind of relative benefit of that service works. It creates, you know, not a large variation between single family and apartment rates. So their costs are based on their infrastructure needs as well. So Chilliwack and Squamish are different communities. That's why it's it's not a pick and number game. Every community has its own unique infrastructure needs and requirements. And, you know, things play into that quite a bit. So the type of development, the level of density, geography, those all factor into the infrastructure that needs to be paid for as well as the amount of growth. So if you are a community that is typically greenfields, more dispersed, you're going to have high infrastructure costs. If you're infill and concentrated, your infrastructure is going to be cost shared against more users. So, you know, there's, there's a wide reason why that could be a a large variation between that. So I don't know offhand, but, you know, there's a number of factors that would play into that. Those are just some examples. So I can't speak for certain as to why Chilliwack's rate is the way it is.
Okay. And then I know that economic development and planning, we're working with a land economist to do pro formas around our employment space. But I was surprised to see our rates for commercial and industrial so much higher. Especially at a time when we're trying to preserve and increase the the jobs per capita. So I'm I'm curious why our rates are so much higher versus other communities.
Yeah. So, I mean, again, it comes back to the the cost of infrastructure. There is no I should put it, there's no manipulation in the data. It's it's just you've got the project costs and you've got the total growth. So within that, you've got an amount of commercial growth identified and amount of infrastructure is needed to service that growth. So essentially then the benefit commercial receives from future infrastructure is divided amongst those lands factored into the overall DCC growth estimates generates that rate. So part of that is is thinking about the types of infrastructure, again, the costs and how commercial actually impacts that use of that infrastructure. And so the rates and the equivalency factors that kind of contribute to the distribution between rates is again taken for master planning. And that would kind of take an average of every commercial use you could you could think of. This is best practice within DCCs because you could have, some commercials have a really big impact. You've got something about shipping, big trucks. You're actually having a lot more impact on that infrastructure or you could have something that is you know, more like a hotel for water, for example, would use a lot of water, you know, may not have as much impact on on other services. Versus something like a warehouse, like a furniture store, may not consume a lot of water. May not have a big impact on on water services. So the the factor that creates the distribution between those is taken from engineering best practices and it creates basically a holistic average for commercial uses and its impact on those infrastructure technologies.
So I guess to our staff, did we run this through our pro forma model with these new rates?
Through the chair, that we have work with dev to do in in the coming weeks while the consultation is ongoing.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
Just going to say, sorry, just to interject, like proportionately, when we look at kind of the impact of you know, roads, for example, like at the proposed rate, you know, how that's actually distributed. This total twenty one thousand dollars is distributed between different infrastructure categories. And roads isn't having as significant as it. Because your roads program is very high and has very high influence on this rate, that's why commercial rates in Squamish are higher. So, you know, in that comparison too, it's related to high road costs. Versus other communities which may not have. So that's from the distribution.
I think the if if we're concerned about the commercial and industrial rates, there are two options, one of which is to adjust the assist factor on those on that category of of projects or to strip projects out. But we've been through the bylaw and stripped out projects that we thought were beyond the beyond the time or unlikely or less likely to be of of benefit. So it's really looking at the project list or adjusting the municipal assist factor if we want to try and bring that rate down.
Yeah, and that's really the preferred mechanism of the ministry because if just removing projects doesn't, you know, take the cost of those projects out of the you know, it just moves it to a different place where it's not able to be recovered through development cost charges. Those projects are needed and the list that we've created is, you know, what is required to fulfill the infrastructure objectives of Squamish over the next two decades. And that's why the assist factor is created by the province and it allows council to make that contribution. And it's it's more transparent that way. If we're taking projects off the list, they just kind of go to another funding source essentially or general taxation. Whereas this miss missle assist factor very clearly shows that, you know, if you're going to increase transportation assist by ten percent, we know that's the subsidy to the development industry. We know how much it costs. It's easy to track. Finance can take that money that's been reduced and move it back into the DCC reserves to keep them all, to ensure that the program is implemented as it's needed going forward. So that's the purpose of that tool. And the other tool to reduce DCCs would be the DCC waivers and reductions by law. So that's where you could potentially choose something like a not-for-profit affordable housing, for-profit affordable rental housing and and create a waiver reduction to reduce those overall costs. I will clarify again too, that you cannot change the assist for land use. You can change it for infrastructure category. So you can't, you know, make industrial lower or commercial lower, but you can make transportation lower or drainage lower or their services. So if you were to, you know, assist a certain category like transportation, the impact would be a reduction to that category. So for commercial, that would probably have a bigger impact on commercial than than say, single family.
All right. So if you increase the assist factor for one, you increase it for all across each category.
No, you you can all you you, I guess, yeah, depending what you mean by category. So if you increase it in transportation, for example.
I do it for everybody, single family homes, apartments, commercial, industrial. I can't just do it for commercial or industrial. Okay, in the list of DCC projects, I just want to move on because we've had a long day. Our eight is listed as Lager's Lane, but it's not clear to me what part of Lager's Lane. The downtown part or the Lager's east part. And so we could improve the description on that, just so there's clarity in in the DCC list. That'd be great. Thank you.
I'm ninety nine percent sure that's south of Pemberton, Mayor Elliott. But we will clarify.
Thank you. Are you okay for now, Mary? Yeah, okay. I've got Council Penningill followed by Council Anderson.
Yeah, thanks. And just on this waving thing. So I understand we could waive, for example, not DCCs for not-for-profit housing. But I take it the impact of that is you effectively have to decrease the assist factor then throughout. Because the project doesn't become any cheaper because you waive those costs. Am I correct in that?
Hey, you you you're confusing two things. The waiver and the assist factor are two separate things. The waiver is a complete exemption from paying the fees from from having to pay DCCs. And that that's limited to very specific instances that are outlined in legislation. So for affordable housing or low impact development, environmental impact development.
Yeah, no, I understand that. But so you you waive the DCCs for affordable housing. The cost of the project is unchanged. So the remaining developers or the existing taxpayer somewhere in there has to pick up that that slack. And I assume that that has to be the existing taxpayer that picks up that slack.
Okay, that's correct. So by increasing the assist factor, we're creating a waiver reduction in the DCC for a certain type of use, that money has to be made up by a non-DCC resource. And it's the objective to keep the reserves whole. So the program can absolutely be implemented as it's needed. If you're not doing that, then you're always going to be under collecting your DCCs and you won't be able to build anything on the list, which is, you know, frustrating, I think.
Okay, thanks. And and I guess maybe just a comment for me, some of the the outputs of the model are non-intuitive to me at this point. And so I would appreciate some opportunity to dig a little, just to get a bit better understanding of some of the assumptions, but I'll leave it at that for now. Thanks.
Thank you. I've got Council Anderson. Then we're going to, and I've got myself on the list and we'll attempt to rapper wrap this up as as in a timely fashion. But go ahead, Council Anderson.
Yes, Mr. Heffernan, I wonder if you may be able to put up your industrial rate comparison between municipalities. Thank you. Now, at the top there for Squamish, we see a very heavy presence of the gray in the in that bar. That gray for roads. Now, when I look through the project list, I see there's twenty three odd road projects there. And at least a half a dozen are truck route or in in particular intersections within or connecting to the business park. Would it be too crude to draw a line between or make that connection between what I see in the project list associated with commercial industrial areas or uses and the presence of that gray in that bar line? Is that too crude to draw that connection?
Yeah, I mean, there's a connection, but it's it's a little more nuanced than that. The roads program is cost shared amongst all uses, not just industrial. So, you know, those costs are are distributed between all uses. There's going to be benefits to to all users too. You're always going to have some projects that benefit more users, one user more than another, right? So the DCC kind of takes the sum of the parts and and kind of you know, harmonizes that a little bit into to simplify the rate that makes it easier to implement. You can create specific area DCCs for certain areas that receive a lot of infrastructure in particular, but we've we've always recommended against that because you really you create a program, it's very challenging to implement. When you start partitioning it too much, you have a challenge where you actually generate enough monies in each reserve to to actually complete projects. Time. So by taking this wide approach, you're able to generate everything to one pot of money. It gives you flexibility to spend it where you need it. If you start petitioning it out too much, you you get into a situation of too many pots of money. Some are under collecting, some are over collecting, and it becomes really challenging to You spend a lot of time entangling programs designed like that.
Thank you for that caution and and orientation, Mr. Heffernan. My next question is for perhaps your Mr. Gutten Buxton. And it, I'm looking at the specific projects in the project list. And I see that between twenty twenty and the twenty twenty one list, one project's been removed and that is the pedestrian bike highway overpass near Cleveland. But there are two others that are retained that I I'm curious about. First of all, the new highway access between Gerbaldi Way and Depot Road, and you can just confirm or or whether that means or refers to another connection between government road and the highway between those two Gerbaldi, Gerbaldi and Depot. I'm I'll just jump to my next question, Mr. Buxton, and that is Catamole Creek Bridge. Are we really still considering a Catamole Creek Bridge? It is identified in the subarea plan for the oceanfront, but it seems that there's been some rethinking on that. But are you comfortable with retaining that? Do you advise that we should retain that Catamole Creek Bridge in this project list? Thank you.
And thank you to the chair. I think the first one is the Doward intersection on the highway. I don't think it includes a connection over to government road. The second question with respect to Catamole is if we don't build a bridge there, the alternative is another bridge. So either way, those DCC funds will fund some form of structure to provide a second access into the oceanfront. So I I recommend it stays.
Thank you, Chair. I'll have a couple of quick comments.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the orientation with this. It's really interesting. And actually, the slide you have up, I have a a question about. I noticed that in Port Moody, they don't, oh, can you go back to that slide you just had up? Sorry. Yeah, just interestingly, in Port Moody, they're not collecting any water. It looks like just a sliver of sewer and is that because would, I mean, I know that some of this is hypothetical, but when I'm looking at the rates, the comparison is great, but also where those funds are going, you know, the the park, the park funding, the portion made up of parks in West Vancouver on this graph jumps out at me and it and I think it was Port Moody had a huge park contribute contribution elsewhere in the, so I'm just curious where the sort of those those weightings change so dramatically because I can't see a situation where it just doesn't cost anything to hook up your water or sewer to your new development. And yeah, I'm just, any input there?
I I know the answer, Sean.
Sorry, Gary knows the answer.
Port Moody's on metro water probably is. It'd be a regional system, not a not a municipal system.
So then, and would that be captured in some sort of regional DCC in parallel to this process and that make it even higher than it's represented here?
Potentially, yes.
That's right. So so, yeah, to Council Herford, like the Port Moody's water is captured in that orange bar, which is on the regional DCC. So that's where it receives its water from the region. So it might actually receive wastewater from there as well too. So that's this for comparison purposes, it's just paid for through a different mechanism.
Nope, that's that's fine. It to me is more the park piece that jumped that jumped out at me. And does that mean that we're not in in my, like in in all of ours, I don't see a huge portion for parks. So how does that get captured? Are we not pushing hard enough for additional park space in our current master plans? Just seems like this is a something that we see in need in the community. It's it's called out in our strategic plan. I just don't see it represented here. So yeah, I I and that's an anomaly that jumps out at me on these these comparisons. So.
Yeah, that's a good off. Yeah, that's a good observation. And, you know, through the chair, like, the park DCCs are currently not charged for non-residential uses in Squamish. So, that is again based on the kind of benefit or pay principle. So some communities have taken an approach where the non-residential users will pay for parks. Currently, Squamish doesn't charge parks to commercial, industrial or institutional uses. Can if it would like. But then again, it's trying to connect back that tangible benefit to service. So right now, parks projects are being paid for by residential.
So can you pull up the comparison, I think it's one previous slide or something that had the residential piece?
So you can see Vancouver, West Vancouver as for commercial too. So here's.
Squamish proposed, okay, it has that park, that park element. Okay. Yeah. And the Port Moody one there is also an outlier. Look at that park contribution for them. And I think, okay. I think I'm getting my head around where these are. And I would expect our green line to be bigger just in the general compare, in the general comparison of, but, but I think I understand where we're at. So, okay, thank you for that explanation. Also, I saw the timeline for sort of the next, the next steps, but then there's that gap between when potential readings would be and approval. When would this come into the output of this actually come into play? So would be, is it, we're talking, like, taking over in September 2023? Is that the right phasing? Or when does this come into play?
Yeah. So that's a good question. So basically, you know, the timeline is, you know, we've got the stakeholder engagement draft, the background report and bylaw will bring it back to councils and through readings. Unless that, that can happen fairly succinctly. That's something we could be looking at in kind of early spring of 2022. Then the ministry does its review, which is a bit of a, you know, it can take, like I said, sixty-eight weeks, sometimes longer. And then they send it back for forth and final reading. At that point, if you adopt the DCC bylaw, it can come into effect. So you could have it adopted prior to September 2022. You could have it adopted basically as soon as the ministry sends it back, which could be late spring or summer, depending on their timing. But then, then you'd have some developments that still have that in-stream protection for one year. So that's kind of one of the slides I kind of brought up there. So that's in legislation. So if it is a completed application that has paid, you know, paid its fee, then it is kind of, it will pay the previous DCC rates for for up to a year, they have to complete their application process and finalize it. They would pay that then.
Okay.
So, but for new development would come in as fact as soon as the.
Okay. Thank you very much for that context. With that, I don't see any further questions from, from council. I'll entertain motion. We're just looking for a motion to to accept the proposed development cost rates for information and authorized staff to proceed with stakeholder consultation. Do I have a mover? Councilor Anderson moves, seconded by Councilor Race and comments, Councilor Anderson.
Yes. Mr. Heffernan, in your slideshow, there's a step notice to be provided through key stakeholder organizations. In another slide, or if not the same slide, you list key stakeholders as being the Urban Development Institute, Canadian Home Builders, Real Estate Board and active developers. I'd like to suggest that there's one more category of active stakeholder that is in fact named in the provincial DCC bylaw review guidebook, if I'm not mistaken. And that is chambers of commerce or our chamber of commerce. And that our chamber of commerce has within its membership industrial, commercial and institutional members. So that covers ICI in that, that the other named key stakeholders in your list there really are more oriented toward residential development. So I'd like to suggest that we deliberately include our Squamish Chamber of Commerce in the list of key stakeholder organization to be contacted. Thank you.
Council, any other further comments on this? Council French, sir.
Thanks, Chair. So for me, I'm relying on expert guidance on this issue, but not something that I'm super well-schooled on. So the work on this presentation is appreciated and the staff report. And I'm looking forward to hearing the feedback from the public consultation process and specifically the thoughts of those who will be responsible for paying these fees in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. And with that, I'll call the question opposed, if any. Motion carries unanimously. We have a, thank you very much for the presentation and all your work on this, both of you and your teams.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me.
Motion to terminate, Council French, seconded by Council Race. Comments? I'll call the question opposed, if any. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And sorry for running a little late, folks. Did what we could.